Good evening. The October fourteenth meeting of the City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Saffordin.
Here.
Councilmember Revel.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Haraqaris.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. And Councilmember Wen, or not here. And Mayor Biss.
Here. We have a quorum here and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations. So first of all, as many in the community may be aware, there has been moved to acquire St. Francis Hospital from the Ascension Group by a medical group by the name of Prime. I think many people have a lot of thoughts and perhaps questions or even concerns about this. And so with that in mind, Representative Gable and I will be hosting a meeting where representatives of the hospital groups will be available to answer questions. That meeting is occurring tomorrow from noon to two here on the second floor of the Civic Center in room 2404. For those of you who don't know, the mechanism by which mergers and acquisitions like this are approved is pretty heavily regulated by the state. And so this is the right window of time to really get our questions in before anything has been decided. So that should folks determine from that process that they have strong opinion, there's still plenty of time to advocate. The next item on my, on my list is a recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I want to thank Director Ogbo of the Health and Human Services Department for working with us on this. The city of Evanston recognizes the designation of October as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In October of 1987, the first Domestic Violence Awareness Month was observed. And by 1989, Congress designated October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This is held throughout the month of October as a national effort dedicated to raise awareness about domestic violence and the signs of abuse. Every October, victim advocates, professionals in the field, survivors and their loved ones, including communities, come together to reject domestic violence and celebrate the progress that has been made to stop the epidemic in our communities. This is the time to uplift survivor voices, their needs, their experiences, and to provide additional resources to continue to combat this public health issue. By acknowledging the reality of domestic violence, we can work towards ending domestic violence and creating a safe and healthy community for all people. And I just want to end on a really sobering note. The Health and Human Services Victim Service Unit responds to nearly 600 domestic-related calls every year. So lots of, lots, lots of work to be done there. Next is the Public Health Day proclamation. Whereas the Evanston Health and Human Services Department is celebrating 150 years of public health service, the first Evanston Public Health Board was established in 1874, notably prior to the creation of the Illinois Board of Health. And whereas, as a state-certified entity and the second-oldest health department in Illinois, HHS continues to be a leader in public health efforts in the region and is one of only a few municipal health departments in Illinois. And whereas, the past 150 years have been filled with success and progress, including challenges in response to pandemics, epidemics, disease outbreaks, and preventing public health threats. And whereas, the department has established a variety of public health programs for the community, including but not limited to: control of infectious diseases, immunizations, maternal and child health, food safety, water safety, public health inspections, air quality, dental health, lead poisoning prevention, preventive health screening, reduction in tobacco use, vector control and surveillance, health education, emergency preparedness, and abatement of public nuisances. And whereas, the department's work also extends to and encompasses social services through the provision of services such as general assistance, victim services, ombudsman programming, and workforce development. And whereas, advances in public health efforts over the years have resulted in increased life expectancy, improved behavioral health, the eradication of smallpox, reduced motor vehicle accident deaths, increased vaccination against polio and other preventable diseases, reduced tobacco use, and improved maternal-infant care. And whereas, the department continues to stress the importance of public health in the Evanston community via promoting health, preventing disease, limiting health disparities, and promoting healthcare equity, now therefore I do hereby proclaim each October 24th as Evanston Public Health Day and encourage all citizens to celebrate the successes of the Department of Health and Human Services and to reflect on initiatives that we can all take to improve public health in the city of Evanston. And I believe Director Ogbo and perhaps some from his team are here to receive this recognition.
Good evening, it's the City Council. Ike Ogbo, Director, Health and Human Services Department. This year marks 150 years of the Evanston Health and Human Services Department, where we've provided great services to our community. It's a department that was established in 1874, which is the second-oldest health department in Illinois. Chicago is the first. But we proceed the Illinois Department of Public Health by three years. This proclamation is an acknowledgement of the services that we have provided. It's just not a designation of a particular day for public health, but it's a designation and an acknowledgement of the earliest and the latest services that we have provided. I think it is a way in which we can acknowledge, respect, and also take a look at the contributions of public health in Evanston. Inasmuch as this proclamation is directed to the Evanston Health and Human Services Department, I also want to acknowledge everyone who has supported the Health Department over 150 years, previous mayors, our current mayor, the current City Council members, previous City Council members, the community at large, our residents, businesses, and also our healthcare systems. So this proclamation is not just for the Health Department, but for all of us, because we're part of the history of 150 years of the Health Department providing services to our community. So thank you, and on behalf of the Health and Human Services Department, thank you again.
Thank you so much for all your important work, which is, I think, often work that is, happens without a lot of notice and very quietly. But I think we are living in a world now where the public has an elevated appreciation of the life and death nature of the work you carry out on a daily basis. So thank you. The next two proclamations have actually both been kind of presented elsewhere, but I just wanted to make the community aware of them in this format as well. I actually, just this afternoon, had the privilege of participating in the first annual Indigenous Peoples' Day powwow that was held in the ETHS Field House. It was organized in collaboration between the Mitchell Museum of the American Indian and ETHS. And it was a really wonderful occasion. I want to thank Councilmember Haraqaris for joining as well. And I read the proclamation there, but I think just for emphasis on today, Indigenous Peoples' Day, it's worth at least sharing with you the kind of key portions of it. So, "Whereas the United States government, the state of Illinois, and the city of Evanston honor Native communities' inherent sovereignty and unique status as sovereign tribal nations. And whereas, the city of Evanston is dedicated to cultivating and sustaining partnerships with the city's indigenous institutions such as the Mitchell Museum of the American Indian and Northwestern Center for Native American and Indigenous Research, to preserve and promote Indigenous voices in Evanston and beyond. And whereas, we are committed to ensuring equity and investment in the future of the city's Indigenous residents and pay tribute to the strength, vibrancy, and immense positive impact of today's Indigenous peoples in Evanston and across the nation, now therefore I do hereby proclaim October 14th, 2024 as Indigenous Peoples' Day." Additionally, the final proclamation is relative to October 2024 being pro-choice month in Evanston. And similarly, there was an event that occurred a few weeks ago. And I think several members of council, I know councilmembers Kelly, Nusma, and Haraqaris were there. And forgive me if I'm leaving others out. You know, I think this is a time, not only because of recent Supreme Court decisions, but a variety of events occurring on the national, national stage, where there's tremendous, tremendous concern that many of us share about the future of women's reproductive rights and bodily autonomy. And so I think it's, it's appropriate for us to issue this proclamation. And again, having already, having already presented this to another group, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I do, I do want to share some highlights. "Whereas Governor J.B. Pritzker signed HB 4664, a reproductive rights and gender-affirming care omnibus bill that protects healthcare providers and their patients from legal attacks by neighboring states and expands healthcare access and options across the state. And whereas, the bill protects Illinois providers and their patients, thousands of whom have traveled to Illinois to access essential reproductive healthcare, now banned in their home states. And whereas, the act also strengthens protections for families using assisted reproductive treatments like IVF or surrogacy. And whereas, reproductive justice recognizes the intersecting impacts of race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, gender identity, sexual orientation, and other forms of marginalization on access to and outcomes of reproductive healthcare. Now therefore I do hereby proclaim October 2024 as pro-choice month and call upon individuals, communities, organizations, and government entities to observe this month with appropriate activities and events to defend the principles of reproductive choice. Among the events were the third pro-choice rally in March held by the Evanston Voices for Choice Coalition on September 21st, 2024." That concludes my announcements and proclamations. The next item on the agenda is the City Manager's public announcements.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Clerk Mendoza. We have a couple of updates on our City Manager announcements. First up, I want to invite Deputy City Manager Sanchez to come up and give us an update on 909 Davis Street, our relocation to the new City Hall location. It's a massive undertaking, and Karina has been leading the charge shortly after she arrived here in July. So, thank you, Karina.
Thank you, City Manager Stowe. Good evening, members of the council, Clerk Mendoza, and Mayor Biss. My name is Karina Sanchez, and I'm the Deputy City Manager for the city of Evanston. Tonight, I'm happy to bring an update report on our move to 909 Davis. I do want to commend the staff that's been working on this the last couple of months. They've been working very hard to create and design a space that will be worthy of all of our colleagues, our elected officials, but most importantly, our residents. And during this time, we wanted to make sure that whatever we developed would stay within the allotted budget that we have from the tenant allotment that was given to us. And one of the things we noticed is that in order to have a successful move, the best way to approach it was through a face manner. And the reason that we're doing this is because there were a couple of things we wanted to achieve. One of the most important things is we didn't want to disappear overnight from the Civic Center. It was very important for us that our residents got used to the new location. So by doing this in a face manner, we will maintain presence here in the Civic Center while different offices are moving in. And if any resident were to come here, we can redirect them. The second thing that was very important for us in order to save money is that we would reuse and refurbish some of the existing furniture that is already at 909 Davis. A move like that alone is saving us $1.6 million on the low end. That's a cost that we did not have to take on by using the existing furniture at 909 Davis. And we will also be taking some furniture from here in the Civic Center. So our move will begin in the first quarter of 2025, and we expect it to take over several phases. But by the end of the first quarter of 2025, we expect to be fully moved into the new location at 909 Davis and be operating from there. The first group that will be moving is what we're calling our customer service area, which will be the first floor. The third floor is going to be where most of our offices and apartments will be located because of the size of that area and also some of the work that we're going to be doing. That move will happen over a couple of phases. And the last group to move, which is one of, I think, where we're doing some of our great work, is on the second floor. And that's where you will find our council chambers, our mayor's office, state representative's office, our clerk's office, as well as other departments as well. And the great thing about 909 Davis, and I know a lot of people are excited, is because of all of the benefits that we will have there. Our staff will not only have a collaborative workplace, but we will also have access to contemporary amenity spaces. The current owner is working on a new conference space on the sixth floor, where staff can go to either have meetings or even pick up coffee. So it's going to be a great place for staff, and will also serve as extra space if we need to meet with residents, or as an overflow room if our council chambers has a big meeting. One of the great things that I think staff will be very appreciative of is all of our safety features there as well. We will have security present during business hours, but all of the offices that are not public-facing will only be accessible through a key card that staff will have. And we will also be in full compliance with all of the ADA and fire code standards. So that is great. And we heard from our community, and it's very important for us that when our visitors go, that they are not charged for parking. So they will all have access, as well as our employees, to free parking in the Maple Street Garage. And one of the biggest amenities, I think, which I personally am very excited about, is the access to public transportation. 909 Davis is located right between the Purple Line and the Metro Line. So I think that this is one great amenity that a lot of people would appreciate. And as we move to 909 Davis, the legacy of Lorraine H. Morton is very important for us. And I will let City Manager Stowe provide an update on that.
Sure, thank you, Karina. We wanted to share really good news that we had recently reached out to Mayor Morton's family and asked the family their thoughts on us carrying her name with us to our new location. They were very enthusiastic and supportive of that. So our proposal is to call it the Lorraine H. Morton City Hall. We think City Hall is a better reflection of the operations that will take place at 909 Davis. And as many of you may know, there's now a beautiful new mural of a young Lorraine Morton along the wall on the metro station immediately adjacent to 909 Davis. We hope to have more of a formal celebration of that mural in the spring after we move him permanently. Thank you. Any questions for Karina about 909 Davis Street? Next up, City Engineer Biggs is here to give us an update on Civic Center relocation, community engagement, as discussed earlier this year with the council.
Thank you, members of the City Council. My name is Laura Biggs, I'm the City Engineer. So earlier this year, we did meet and do a presentation to City Council to talk about what we wanted to do in terms of public engagement for the relocation feasibility study for the Civic Center Police Fire Headquarters. And at that time, we received direction to pursue it in sort of a three-part way. The first being that we were going to do a general poll of the community. Anyone who wants to can participate in it. The second would be to do a statistically valid survey, where we would really be trying to look at a very specific cross-section of demographics of city residents in order to really try to understand what the average city resident is thinking. And the third would be through some targeted listening sessions, where we could gather information from different community members who chose to come and participate. So to that end, we have the, the basic poll is live through this link slash QR code. This will be posted and sent out with e-news tomorrow, so that anybody who wishes to take the survey can do so. The targeted statistical survey will be sent out within the next week to selected community members who are being asked to participate in that. And the third item, next slide please, would be the listening sessions. We've actually scheduled three or four. We scheduled the fourth, but it conflicted with some budget sessions, which we did not want to do. So we're still rescheduling the fourth, but we will be having those. And our listening sessions will include two in-person English-speaking sessions, one in-person and hybrid Spanish-speaking session, and a fourth one will be a virtual meeting, which still needs to be scheduled. So we're really looking forward on getting this information and feedback and wrapping this up by the end of the year.
Thank you. Any questions for Laura? If not, I want to say thank you, Laura. Thank you, Karina, for your hard work on both of these.
Councilor Kelly.
So will there not be any general town halls where people can attend and bring up questions? Or is it all going to be just very controlled with the, with the selected targeted polling? I mean, will there be any just meetings that people can attend and hear each other's comments?
So the four listening sessions are those meetings?
So there'll be two, four online listening sessions?
There will be two in-person that are for, that are just given in an English-speaking format. There will be one that is translated, that is an in-person and hybrid meeting. And there will be one completely virtual meeting. That still needs to be scheduled.
Okay, so just so I'm clear on this. Okay, so one in Spanish that's open to everybody in Spanish-speaking. And then how many in English?
Two in English, plus the virtual session would also be in English.
Okay. Okay, and those, we don't have those dates, but we will have those soon?
The virtual session is the only one we don't have the date for. We will have that shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura, I appreciate it. Next up, we'd like to welcome our Parks and Rec chairperson, Shevick, up to the podium. She has an update on Parks and Rec from their board. Welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm Ellie Shevick, Chair of the Parks and Rec Board. I don't know this thing. Okay, that's my next slide. Thank you so much. Thank you for bearing with me, first time speaking at council, nice to see you all. I became Chair in April of this year, and during that time, I re-looked over city ordinance, I re-looked over our bylaws, and I kind of said, our board is not really talking about what we need to be talking about. So I've kind of deep dove with Partnership of Director Thompson, and she welcomed a lot of the different divisions through. So this is kind of just a little update of things that I found that I'm not sure that council is aware of, or the general public is aware of about Parks and Rec. So we're going to talk about the different departments. We're going to talk about the green space study that we're still waiting for a final version of it, but we got a draft in June. There's a few little points that I wanted to bring up regarding that. We're going to reflect on the 2024 CIP. I didn't put a whole lot for the 2025, because I know you're going to get a presentation on that later, but just some words about that, and then looking into the future. So currently, Parks and Recreation is across multiple departments. I know we are not a park district in Evanston, we are a Parks and Rec department. So naturally, we have a lot of different departments with their hands in helping us with that. The Parks Recreation Community Services Department is responsible for special events, recreation classes, and community services. Public Works Capital Improvement is responsible for large park overhauls, public outreach and installation. Currently, that's managing the consultants and contractors doing that work. Public Works Greenways is responsible for the routine playground maintenance, lawn care, beach combing, flower care. And Facilities is responsible for maintenance and upkeep of all the community centers. No one is really directly responsible for playground equipment replacement. I really think council, last year you guys budgeted $1 million for playground equipment in 2024, just as replacements, not the giant park overhauls that might need power lines buried or soil is different. This is just straight, this playhouse is broken, we can replace it with a new playhouse, and it'll last us another 15 years. So even though we are there, are those the new departments, no one is responsible for just playground equipment replacements. And as of today, no dollar amount of that million dollars you budgeted has come through the Parks and Rec Department. Trying to go quick, because I know you guys have a lot, a big agenda today. So this is the Parks and Green Space Strategic Plan. I believe the, we have not had an opportunity to meet with the consultants. There's one more meeting that they have in their contract, and they've chosen, staff has told us that they'd like council to meet with the consultants. So I'm just urging you all to pay close attention to this draft, and we'd really love for you to be able to ask good thoughtful questions in regards to our parks. These are a few little points that we pulled across from it. So we have more parks but less acreage. We have more parks than the average community in the nation, more parks than our peer median. But we have five acres per 1,000 residents compared to nine acres of our peer median. I thought it was really interesting that 98% of the survey respondents visited an Evanston park in the last year. So your residents love parks, and we use them heavily. We found in this study that what we have needs help. 79% of our parks are in poor or very poor condition. It's a hard percentage to swallow. We have 53 playgrounds, and 40 of them haven't been updated in the last 15 years. So industry best practice, playground equipment lasts about eight to 10 years, 15 if you want to stretch it. So in my mind, I see this number, and I say, wow, we got to start taking out equipment. Otherwise, it's going to be a, we're opening ourselves up to maybe some unsafe equipment. On a positive note, we found that we're reaching community. We serve a wide range of residents through extensive recreation options. It says 26,711 residents registered for programs in 2022. So out of a community of 78,000, we had 26,711 using our Parks and Recreation classes. So reflecting on the 2024 priorities, the Legacy Park, we, we supported a five-year replacement for the Legacy Park Plan. We had slated Fitzsimmons, Cartwright, Filbrick for Design for this year. I know we've had some staffing issues, out-of我们的control issues, some, I don't know. But those ones aren't getting done, but we are constructing Laramie and Independence this year, which is great. Thinking about legacy parks, I, I'm sure you've all heard that term, the parks that haven't been updated in at least 26 years. So I asked, we have 11 of them identified, and I asked, well, what about Park Number 12? How long ago was Park Number 12? So I asked for the list of all the park updates, and it turns out that eight more parks are going to fall in that more than 26-year age range next year. So we started with 11 that are over 26 years. We're going to add eight more to that club. By the time our five-year program of updating those parks, there'll be 12 total additional parks. So we're going to have more legacy parks by the time we finish dealing with our first 11. We'll have 12. Yes. We spoke about the Great Park Dog Run, that also, again, staffing, a lot of things didn't get done this year. The Ecology Center renovation, I'm sorry, is in full swing. Then Park Field House, finally, I think is getting done this year. And again, that equipment, playground equipment replacement. All right. 2025 CIP priorities was kind of continuing our 2024 projects. We were presented a presentation of CIP proposed for 2025. Most of the projects are just carried over from 2024. Again, I think that's being presented to you later today, so I didn't want to go into detail now. But just to have a more productive conversation in future years, it would help to have kind of an estimated budget of what council sees that their investment in CIP parks-related would be. So we can help prioritize what parks are most used or what community centers need more love than others with a, with a confined budget in a long-term planning spreadsheet for park improvement and redesign. We're kind of just going off of little bits of information as a board, and we want to, we want to serve you as a board, truly. We're here to help rack our brains and go through all the hard details so that we can give you guys a recommendation. So looking to the future, how can we align with best practice? Greenways has already committed to a second yearly playground inspection. Currently, we're just doing one in the fall. We'd like to continue with ADA improvements in public spaces. I know we're working on our bathrooms that are already existing to bring them up to ADA code. We really need to stop and think of how we redo parks. We've been talking, some of the board members, and I've been listening, talking to other municipalities, seeing kind of, can we do it in a smarter way? And I do think there's a lot of good options out there. There's playground equipment companies you can call and say, we have $500,000 and we want to redo this park, give us your best options. And they'll design it for you and give you the options. We can bring it to the public. They have teams that can install. So if truly we're having a hard time finding staff, we still need to get the parks updated and moving. I did speak with Greenways about maybe what it would cost, what would be needed to bring the work in-house for installation of playgrounds. It's not something that that division has done just once for Raymond Park equipment, and it does need a lot of staffing and equipment. So it's more details to work through, alternative options. I just think that there's a lot of I just think that there's a lot of talent in this community. And I think we have a little untapped resources with maybe ETHS, maybe Northwestern, maybe students that want to do some kind of design work or community members that are willing to pitch in. We see what happened with Penny Park. We think that a clear ORB chart, if multiple divisions are involved in overseeing parks, just to make it really clear cut of who is responsible for what parks duties. And then a more robust plan to address our legacy parks. So again, a lot of our parks are beautiful, but they're, they're old. It's something that really needs time and attention, and we, I think we can do it without spending a million dollars on every park, based on communication with other municipalities. Thank you.
Councilmember Esma.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Shevick. Appreciate the presentation. Couple of quick questions. Peer communities where you were, we were benchmarking our acreage of parks and number of parks. Who are those peer communities?
That's a great question. I'm going to try to pull up the Parks and Green Space study. Again, it's, it's just a draft form, but they did mention it in there. I'm sorry. I should have had.
I don't need the list, but are these communities in this neck of the woods? Are we comparing ourselves to, you know, Connecticut and New Jersey and?
It's pretty mixed. There's a few communities in Illinois, some are in other states. It's similar size. I know Oak Park is one, I think is the closest peer community. I can pull that up for you. Is that okay?
It's not the same list that in the Finance and Budget Committee, we have defined five or six peer communities that we're benchmarking our.
I think there's 12 of them that they used on this one.
Different list, though.
Probably a different list.
All right, thanks. Then, next question is, how much more money do you think we need on an annual basis if we are really going to bring our parks up to where they need to be? And, you know, how much more would we need to maintain them at that level? Understanding you're not the engineer or parks planner, but feel free to ballpark.
That is a great question. I just, just in the findings, I mean, I'd like to go back to my Parks and Rec Board and create some little subcommittees to deep dive into some more formal investigation of how we can redo things a little differently, just as a scope. Like, I, I met with Ridgeville, and they said they're budgeting $60,000 for their playground. It's outside the Ridgeville home, Ridgeville Park House. And then you think about even, like, Laramore is not a, not a huge park, but it's not tiny. What is it? It's 6,000 square feet. We're at, what, 1.4 million for that park right now? It's, I think it's less of throwing money at the problem and more of rethinking how we do things, truly. I appreciate the robust budget that you guys have given. Again, it's, the million dollars was there. And we gotta make it work for us.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Kelly.
One, I just want to say welcome and thank you for your work. Certainly, in my time on council and even my time as City Clerk, this is the first time, I think, we've, certainly in the last eight years, that we've received this kind of presentation. So thank you for stepping up and doing that. Two things. I would love to see that list that you have of all, you don't have to give it to me now, but if, if, if you can email that to me or if staff can email that, I'd love to see the list of the parks beyond the 11 that we've discussed here. Because I'm sure, you know, some of them in the Eighth Ward, and I've had residents recently reach out to me about the tot lot at Callan and Brummel, which is a priority of mine to see.
Is that Dobson Brummel Park?
Dobson, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's on the list for the next year.
And, well, there's two of them, but yeah, so that's, that's also one of them. The, the only thing I want to leave with is, I'm glad you're in the position, and, and I would love to see this iteration of the Parks and Recreation Board be a bit more focused or continue to be focused and even step up its focus on equity as well and to ensure that as we're going through and looking at our legacy parks that we are focusing on, that, that we're adding some consideration about parks that are in underserved areas and hopefully, in some cases, prioritizing those parks to ensure that, you know, folks that may not have that third space is often have the resources that they need to decompress and enjoy the outdoors. So that's.
And I, I just want to mention that the Parks and Green Space Study does identify neighborhoods or certain parks that, that might meet that underserved community. So I hope that staff and council notices those too and, and I agree with you.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, and thank you so much. Really appreciate the presentation. I think it's really important that we all hear this and understand just how rundown our parks are as we make decisions on how to allocate funds, whether we want to spend money on a 15-year lease for temporary use or maybe we need to invest more in our parks, but in a way that's reasonable. So I appreciate your willingness to do sort of that deep dive also on your committee and really look at costs and how we can do things more effectively, and also push to have that a long, a long-range plan for our parks so we don't end up in this state where we have so many parks that are so run down. So that's, that's really appreciated. And can somebody respond to the, the question or that was pointed out about who's in charge of playground equipment? So how does that, how do we resolve that?
Playground equipment replacement is the responsibility of the Bureau of Capital Planning, which I am the leader of. So technically, I am the person who is responsible for playground equipment replacement.
Okay, so we allocated, so we haven't replaced any this year, or how is that?
So again, we've talked about some of our staffing shortages and per last year's directives about really trying to reduce consultant use and bring stuff in-house, we tried to address playground equipment replacement accordingly. And we actually did start doing some pretty serious work on one of the projects, Twigs Park, which has two playgrounds equipments. That public engagement is scheduled in the next month to begin discussion about that playground equipment replacement. But it was sort of an experiment, and let's minimize our consultant use, which really didn't work out for us. So I think one of the things that our lessons learned from this year, this, this concept of doing annual investments like playground equipment replacement that is targeted is a new concept that we are learning as we go. And what we learned is that if we have limited staffing, then we really need to use strategic use of consultants to leverage our staff into really being able to accomplish a lot more and be more effective. So to that end, I think that we now have a better plan for next year on how we're going to tackle things.
Okay, thank you. And what is the one inspection a year? Does that mean like, can you maybe, if you could speak?
I will refer that to my colleague.
Good evening, members of City Council. Noel Redd, you're against Public Services Bureau Chief. That is one, one inspection that we perform in the fall. We review the entire equipment, look for any deficiencies, so we can schedule the repairs in the winter.
So, so just so I understand, are there any other just sort of routine checks on parks? Or is it just like, are we really?
It's a one formal inspection, but there are routine disinspections as staff is within the area. Now, we've committed to a second inspection that's going to be taking place in spring or the early summer.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. And again, I do really, you know, I've heard frequently of high costs. Sometimes we seem to be spending a lot more than what I'm hearing about in other parks, the square footage and sometimes much more elaborate and involve parks at far less. So I do appreciate, you know, your willingness to do that work also, to help out and, and all the members of your committee. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Saffron.
Yeah, sorry, and Noel and Laura will sit down, so I apologize. Or here's a question, and it kind of goes to your point about that we need to clear ORB chart. And, you know, at the end of the day, like, the ultimate goal is for the users to have enjoyable parks. So Laura, you're in charge of like replacement, that's the big stuff. But in terms of repair, there's a swing that's broken. That falls under no? Or explain how that works. I do think that there are opportunities to capture some efficiencies in how our parks get approached. And so help me understand, like, you'd be in charge of, we're going to replace something entirely?
Yes. So capital improvement tends to be investments that are at least five years in length and cost at least $25,000 to implement. So if it's a minor repair, we're replacing a slide or repairing a swing, that is typically done by our maintenance staff, which is in Greenways in the Public Services Bureau of Public Works. But we work together, and if they reach sort of a critical mass of like, wow, this project's bigger than we can handle, then they will either throw it to us as part of a, we have a Parks Contingency Fund where we can make emergency repairs out of that that's built into the capital program, or they will stabilize it and we will put it into next year's budget for the capital program.
Okay. And just as an example from this year, at Cartwright Park, we had overlap there. I mean, Cartwright, we're going to talk about, and that's obviously a legacy park. But the playground area where the woodships are was taken over by pretty aggressive weeds that required. And I, I watched them working, like, Greenways went deep to get rid of the weeds. But, and this may not be a fair question, so if you don't think it is, just call it, and I'll stop. But how can we maximize the long-term planning to minimize the amount of short-term emergency stuff like that that needs to happen? And going forward, like, how do we coordinate that better? Because like, what should have or could have been a six-hour project to remove the weeds ended up being a three-day project because of the depth of the, for lack of a better term, park cancer that had been created that was a result of our, and our, the council, I'm not blaming you, our failure to invest properly in our parks on a longer-term basis. Where, I don't know, let me get to my question. It's not fair. I mean, like, where's the intersection there? And like, how do we, how much stuff that Laura is in charge of makes the stuff that Noel is in charge of easier going forward? Because at the end of the day, like, an eight-year-old just wants to play in a well-maintained, safe park.
So first of all, I want to say, the City Council has already really begun supporting doing things differently with our park system. It's just that we're sort of in the first year, and we did have some staffing challenges, which we are now working to alleviate. I have a, we posted a landscape architect, which was a new position. We've done several interviews in the past, and it just hasn't worked out. I have an interview tomorrow of a landscape architect candidate. So we are continuing to work on getting in person, which would really help us with some of these projects. But the, the answer is that ideally, the work that Laura does makes a big difference to Noel and what his staff is able to accomplish. But we work together pretty closely as we develop the capital program. They're telling us, the, the Greenway staff is in the room, telling us what their challenges are. In fact, I would say the single biggest driver of our capital program does tend to be maintenance in most cases, certainly in the Parks Capital Program. The maintenance staff is in touch with what needs to be fixed, but they're also hearing a lot from council members and 3-1-1, what the community is concerned about. So they bring those to us during our planning sessions for the CIP, and that has a lot to do with how projects get prioritized. When we have a situation like this, Cartwright was on the program to begin design. We're slightly behind, but we're planning on issuing the RFP for Cartwright to hire engineering services in the next month.
Okay. And the car is just an example from my ward that obviously I walk past every day. But I mean, even, you know, like, if James Park Baseball, and I talk to you about this all the time. If the James Park baseball fields aren't playable on August 20th, 2024, because of rain on August 20th, or August 19th, 2024, it's not because the Greenway staff didn't really work hard on August 20th. It's because decisions weren't made on August 20th, 1987, that, that improved the likelihood of those fields draining. And I, I want us, and I, it's a larger question that's, again, maybe not a fair one, but like, how do we make sure that, you know, on August 20th, 2034, our parks are in structurally better condition so that whatever department, Greenways or its successor, Robots, or however it works, like, can get the parks usable and functional more quickly? You understand what I'm saying? And like, how do we work together holistically to aim towards that objective? Because I think ultimately, that's, we're all sort of victims of plans and improvements that weren't made long before any of us got here. And how do we ensure that in the future, they look back at what we did now and in the next few years favorably, rather than like, oh, they continued to ignore things or they shied away from making investments, et cetera? Like, how, how, what's a process that makes that work better?
So I think one of the things that we are moving towards is, we have these legacy issues. We definitely need to deal with them, and in those cases, the parks, every amenity is in very bad shape. So we talk about our partner communities, maybe like, they can do a park so much cheaper. But often, when we dig down into that and follow that trail of comments, when we talk to our partner communities, they were really just doing a very limited change-out, one piece of equipment or just looking at something very specific. They weren't going in and trying to make the park entirely ADA compliant while they replaced all the playground equipment and also resurfaced courts and did all sorts of things. So that's, that's what we're doing in the legacy parks. But what we need to do is get to a place where every year, we're doing court resurfacing. Every year, we're changing our playground equipment. A court needs to be resurfaced on like a 12-year cycle. Playground equipment is more like a 15-to-18-year cycle. So to wait until everything's just bad doesn't make sense. We want to get every playground on the 15-to-18-year cycle, and we're not there. But we can't go from doing one park a year and two spot improvements like we were nine years ago and actually like we did for several years while I was City Engineer, until this council made a lot more of a commitment to investing in our parks. We can't go from zero to 60 degrees or 60 miles per hour in just a year. We're trying to do a ramp up. We're doing some lessons learned as we go. But seriously, if we're going to have 80 parks, then we're probably going to need to spend more money per year long-term than we are currently spending. And our challenge for that is right now, almost all the money that we spend on park capital improvement comes from debt issuance, which, as a community, we don't really want to increase because of the impact on property tax. So that is a challenge.
And I guess that's the underlying question again, like, this was supposed to be a ton in the presentation, but like, what serious investments, and not, this isn't one for you, I mean, feel free to give an answer, but like, I mean, it's for all of us to think about. What serious investments can we make so that we get to the point where we're doing these lower-dollar change-outs of equipment in the future, not these super-large structural problems? You know, how do we address those and then get to the point where we're making these lower-dollar change-outs later? And that's a question that requires some long-term planning discussion, so it's not like an answer right now question. But, because I, that's the issue, is that everything gets too critical and then costs a lot of money. And then, like, we talked about it at the previous meeting, you come up here and say what it costs, and everyone's like, oh, my God, that's crazy. But like, it was foreseeable. So like, what foreseeable, and again, not a question you have to answer right now, but like, what foreseeable things can we do now so that in the future, our parks are in a better baseline state that allow for the types of easier, lower-cost change-outs that our neighboring, or peer communities, whichever, I don't know if they're geographically neighboring communities, are doing? That's something to think about. And if I'm at five, I'll quit.
Just as a quick technology interjection, you were literally at five, so you're not, you weren't over, but the beep didn't beep. So if the people who know how to make the beep beep can fix the beep, that'd be great.
This also normally shows this, and it is also not lit up, so.
Okay. Well, this is just a cry for help to the world of beepologists. Go ahead, if you want to respond to the question.
I mean, the short story is that we need to switch to annual investment and figure that out, which we are trying to do, but we're still in a process of ramping up. And it's going to take us a few years to ramp up. And at some point, if we're really investing all we need to do in parks, we would take over the budget. The truth is, we have that issue with facilities as well. So we need to probably address some funding issues long-term. That would be the single best thing that we could do to moving towards being able to really maintain our parks and facilities.
This time, no one wants to speak for a first time, so we'll go back to Councilmember Kelly with three and a quarter minutes left.
Thank you. Do we, with regard to the annual check that's done?
Thank you. Um, do we, with regard to the annual check that's done, is Greenways does that? Is that, so I'd just be curious, um, is there a checklist that you, the inspectors have for each park?
There is a checklist that, uh, that they go off of, yes.
Okay, great. So like if I wanted to see, say for Leahy Park, um, just to make sure everything got checked, like when I was there and I saw some issues, I could, I could see that. I could see that list and what was checked and what needs, um, okay, terrific. Thank you.
At this time, still no one's asked to speak for a first time. So we go back to council member Reed with also three and a quarters minutes left.
Yeah, uh, to the point council member Kelly, uh, just made and to the great points I think council member suffered and, uh, raised. I think one of the things we can, uh, do, I think there's going to be some proposals later on that'll help us with this. But, um, outside of that, I think one of the things we can do is be more transparent with this. So I'm curious. Our deputy director of public works just disappeared or I can't see him now. Oh, there you are. However. Is, uh, is this checklist and are these lists of our legacy parks and where they fall? And all of the information that we collect associated with that, is that available anywhere? Can residents check that out? Can I?
I talk about legacy parks almost endlessly, so I would imagine that information's pretty easy to find. The parks checklist has not been available. It's been a tool that we use.
Yeah, that is a tool that we, we use, but it's not public facing at the moment.
Maybe that's something that Parks and Rec Board can look into and getting that data and maybe there's a webpage so residents can go see, you know, the condition of their parks and, um, help, help us figure it out. So I would encourage the Parks and Rec Board to, uh, look into that. Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick point of, um, like I said, a lot of the things that haven't been going through the Parks and Rec Board, this is one of them. Like we, we FOIA'd the information of the inspection. Um, I hope that we can be more cohesive going forward though. It's looking like we're, we're moving in that direction. So.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, lots to talk about here and lots of work to do. We are going to go off, um, the printed sequence of the agenda at this time. I want to skip ahead, uh, to item HS1, resolution 50-r-24. Uh, would anyone care to make a motion on this item?
I move approval of HS1 resolution 50R-24, approval of an honorary street, uh, street name sign designation.
Second.
Council member Reed moves approval of resolution 50, uh, sorry, council member Hadekakis moves approval of resolution 50-r-24. Council member Nusma seconds. Is there any discussion? Council member Reed.
I'll, I'll just jump in and, uh, Mr. Mitchell, and you're, uh, the principal of Haven, uh, while I was at Haven. And, and I don't think I'm the only person here. Maybe, maybe I'm the only person here now. Maybe that, that's also the case where I know council member Burns as well. Went to Haven and you're the principal. So I, I just want to say thank you for your years of service, uh, to the Evanston community. In fact, I think you were either the principal or the, uh, gym, uh, teacher when my mother went to Haven Middle School as well. So, um, you know, that shows how far back your service goes. So thank you.
And, and my son.
Council member Sufferden.
Sorry, uh, Mr. Mitchell, and I just couldn't let that pass. You were a gym teacher at Haven when I was there. You were an excellent influence on so many people. This is a well-deserved honor. If anybody deserves to get put to the front of the line in a packed agenda like this, it's you. Uh, congratulations.
Any further discussion? Well, I didn't go to Haven, um, but I could have used a better influence during my gym classes. So I wish I had. Uh, and I want to thank you to all your service to the community, including to this city organization itself. Uh, and so thank you, thank you so much. And congratulations. And with that, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Council member Nusma.
Aye.
Council member Sufferden.
Aye.
Council member Revel.
Aye.
Council member Reed.
Aye.
Council member Hadekakis.
Aye.
Council member Kelly.
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the resolution is passed. And there are a number of people here who would like to, uh, speak, uh, to this, uh, this honor. And so I'd like to ask, uh, former council member Fleming, uh, to be the ringleader and, uh, help shepherd the group up, please.
Uh, good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Sicily Fleming. Um, I won't speak long. I wrote the material that you had a chance to read. I will tell you that Mr. Mitchell is my uncle, so I'm pretty biased here, but he also has given decades of service to the city. Um, as you mentioned, gym teacher, principal at Haven, he's on the parking record board now. He's been the track coach at ETHS, I think 30 some odd years. He lives in a house that his father and grandfather built. They were builders in the fifth ward. And I would dare to say he has built many lives here in the city, people who are here now and people who are not here. So I think it's well deserved. Thank you for recognizing him. There are many speakers here, so I'll let the mayor decide how to call you all up if you signed up. But if you can just stand up if you're here to support the street naming for my lovely uncle, that would be great. So there's a few people here. Um, you can decide how you want to call them, but it is more than well deserved. Thankful that we can do this while he is still here to see it. Um, he has lived on that block his entire life. The only other request I have, if there's a formal council member privilege, is if you can put the trash can back at the corner of Emerson, no, Church and Hartree. If you pass by at like four in the morning, he's picking up trash, usually with a little trash grabber. There was a trash can there. It's gone now. So he's doing it and taking it back to his house. He would love a trash can back there. It's a very small request, but he cares a lot about his community. He's picking up trash every day. So that would be an amazing topper to the street sign. How do you want to call the folks?
Just have people come one at a time.
All right. Who's coming? Come on, first.
Hello, um, my name is Ryan Rice. I am a senior in high school at ETHS on the track team.
Hello, I'm Jeremiah Simons. I'm a junior at ETHS on the track team.
So today we just wanted to talk about our wonderful coach who has helped us so much for the past few years. Me, for me personally, uh, he has given us so many opportunities with wonderful coaches that can supply us in our every need, whether it's hurdles or jumping or long jump, high jump, whatever it may be. He supplies us with the greatest coaches that you can think of. I also want to thank him for use of facilities. We have a great fieldhouse track. And when we need access to things like a pool or a weight room, he is very accommodating and is great with communication so that we can use those things.
Uh, I just wanted to talk about how Coach Mitchell, as well as a great coach, he also has like one rule. One rule is show up and you work. If you show up and you work, he'll give you a chance to do anything. He helps guys like myself. For example, my freshman year, who wasn't the fastest, become one of the greatest guys on the team or one of the best. And how he has helped a lot of guys go on to go run in the Olympics or at state. And even those guys that don't maybe do both of those things are, become great men in the future.
I want to thank Coach Donald Mitchell Senior for the great past few years and, um, congratulations.
Hello and good evening, members of city council, honorable mayor Biss, city manager Stowe. Um, it's good to be home for one. And I'd just like to say that I, I really want to thank this body for honoring such a, a magnanimous, uh, individual. When I'm, when I was a young man and I, I moved over in the fifth ward and I was going to Haven Middle School, I was stopped abruptly at a party and it was from Mr. Mitchell and who told me, y'all know you're not a member of this school. And I, and, and Ms. Gentle told him, no, he enrolled today at 3:30. And so I remember him, those, my, those light admonishments, uh, from Mr. Mitchell. But more importantly, he always would cultivate us. He always encouraged us to do more and to go forward. And so I'm thankful for the seeds that he planted, not only in myself, but in so many other men and, and, and young women and other individuals in our community and how he has a, a, a love, a distinct love and passion for community. So for that, I'm grateful. I'm honored to be here with you all tonight and honored just to say a few words, um, to promote this individual. Thank you so much, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you, city council.
I can't decide if I should face you or you. So maybe you should come up. So everyone can talk to you too. Right?
Would you, yeah, come stand with me. You can read my, good evening. My name is Roberta Hoesmuller. I've been a resident of the sixth ward. Since 1996, I'm the proud mom of two graduates of ETHS, class of 2016 and 2018. And as soon as I heard from Sicily that the city was considering this honorary street name for Coach Mitchell, I knew I wanted to come and speak up and support this vision. I have known you since 2012. I've known you 12 years since my oldest son joined the cross-country team. He would come home with pearls of wisdom from Coach and it made him feel like such a part of ETHS as he made the transition. Coach created a demanding but warm community with high standards and great respect for these boys. And my son appreciated both the structure and the positive ethos of this team. In the final weeks of his senior year, he was asked to choose one person by his, uh, senior English teacher who had most impacted him during his four years of ETHS and to write a thank you note to that person. And he wrote to Coach Mitchell. I don't know all of what he said, but, um, to paraphrase his words, he thanked him for providing guidance and rules. He told Coach that the rules that he gave at, uh, cross-country were rules that he carried with him throughout the day at school at ETHS and that he would carry them forward. And he has, I can attest, he now is an educator himself and a coach. He coaches chess, not track and cross-country, but he's still a coach. Um, and he wrote something that he submitted to council. So hopefully I'll forward that or I'll forward that to you, Nathan wrote. But his favorite rule, the one that stuck with him, if you like what you're getting, keep doing what you're doing. If you don't like what you're getting, you gotta change what you're doing. So I approached Coach, I have a second child. My younger son was in seventh grade. I knew he would want to run too. But my younger son has cerebral palsy and epilepsy and he ran with adaptive sports clubs, but he was really excited about running as a wild kid. So Coach here has years of experience coaching and developing young men. And it would be so understandable if he was set in his ways and he had kind of a rigid program. But in fact, you are just the opposite. You see every new experience as an opportunity. You look for the positive, you look for growth and you start from this position of respect for every single student's history, experience and possibility. So midway through the first year that my younger son was in cross-country, I saw Coach at a race. He gave me a huge hug. He thanked me for giving him the opportunity to coach my son. He said he had learned so much from coaching my child and he was incredibly grateful. Now I want you to recognize that he was thanking me for sending him a child that had a diffuse and catastrophic brain injury, who has ambulatory spastic quadriplegia and has a seizure disorder. He volunteered to learn about this child's issues and to do whatever was needed to include him as part of that team. He even came to his eighth grade transitional IP meeting when he moved from middle school to high school. So, so a lot of people and a lot of people in our community understand and support inclusion of students with disabilities in a variety of programs. But what really sets Coach Mitchell apart is that his brand of inclusion recognizes both the special needs and the special talents of every individual. He did what he did for every other young man. He helped our son develop his strengths and his talents as a runner and as an individual and as a contributor to that team. He treated him the same way he treated every other student on that team. And that, in my experience, is really rare. So for his devotion to the young people of Evanston, for his years of cheerful and brilliant service to our community and all he has done to support all the young people he has coached and educated. For these and so many reasons, I just stand in support and gratitude of this opportunity to share my story. And I hope you guys will grant, well, you already have granted it. And so I'm looking forward to celebrating. You gotta invite me and let me celebrate. Thank you, Coach.
City council, Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, for, for honoring Coach Mitchell. I'm Chris Lovatino. I'm the athletic director at Evanston Township High School. And, uh, I had a lot to say, but I know that the time is limited tonight. You guys have a long agenda. So I, the thing that I just want to highlight is when I was a sixth grader at Haven and I heard several people say they also attended Haven or had kids there. That very first day, I learned what school spirit was by listening to Coach Mitchell do the Haven clap. And I'm sure if we, uh, encouraged him, he could get us all up in a, uh, a Haven clap here, but we'll, we'll, we'll save that for the festivities itself. But I always thought that that was school spirit and that he was the, the epitome of school spirit at Haven. And then when I became a coach and ultimately athletic director at Evanston, I, I realized he was really the spirit of Evanston High School. And what I've come to learn about Coach Mitchell over the years is he's really the spirit of this community of Evanston in all that he does, uh, for the youth, for adults, for community programs, like he is our living spirit. And so it's wonderful to see that his name will go up on the street, that he truly cleans himself every morning with a hand picker. As I'm driving by, I see him picking up trash and putting it in his bag. And what an incredible role model he is for our kids. So thank you very much for recognizing the spirit of Evanston and Coach Mitchell. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Um, my name is Julian Mitchell. Um, my family is not here today. I didn't know if this was getting passed or not, so I didn't expect to speak today. Um, but no, seriously. My grandpa has been my grandpa for 23 years. He's been my coach for like five or six. And I just want to say, um, I'm, I'm very appreciative, um, for you guys and obviously for him. For since like middle school, elementary to middle school, even to high school, even to now. A lot of people just come up to me and just like, oh, your grandfather is, uh, Coach Mitch? And I'm just like, yeah, he's just like, you guys don't know what he, what he's done for me. He's, he's truly changed my life. Um, and at first I used to, you know, walk around and just be like, okay, like cool, like whatever, um, as a kid. But now I definitely see the weight that the Mitchell name holds because of him. And, um, I'm definitely, definitely appreciative. In high school, um, I was a track athlete. I wasn't, I wasn't a student athlete. I was a track athlete. Um, and he made sure to reiterate to me, it's about being a student first and an athlete last. Obviously me being in high school, I didn't listen. I was just there just to run and, uh, just win. But now, um, I've definitely, um, taken the things that he's instilled in track and became a better, um, young man because of it. So I'm definitely appreciative for you guys and for him. So thank you.
Mayor, city council. Thank you. For those who came to speak on my behalf, thank you. Mrs. Hoesmuller, um, Aaron was a dream, changed, uh, my whole way of coaching. Structured me differently. Um, he makes the statement. Attitude equals effort. He had a great attitude, great effort. Never finished last in a cross-country race. We were racing new chair and somehow he tripped. And the team members were going to come to his rescue and then, and jump on the new cheer team. But what he did, what Aaron Hoesmuller did was got up and passed the guy who had tripped. And so that's the way his attitude and his effort backed that up. Uh, Mr. Norman, uh, tremendous adult. As a, as a student at Haven, I could see that he was going to be special if he could get there. And he's, and he's gotten here, uh, just, just a wonderful, wonderful human being. And he's going to be able to, to work with the youth and the young people here. Coach Lovatino, uh, at one time I was his boss. Now he's my boss. See how things go full circle. And, uh, uh, he's just great, great to work with. We talk about, uh, Haven and, and, and the community and stuff like that at our meetings. We never really talk about cross-country track. We always talk about, about. other issues, but he's doing a great job over there. The great job that my students, I don't have my hearing aid in, so I didn't actually hear what they're saying, but the fact that they're out here on a school night, talking about the coach who whipped them good today, whipped them good, and they could stand up there and say something. And then, of course, my niece, Cicely Fleming, who always looked after me. When she would come over and visit, and we'd have family dinner and families downstairs, you know how family visits. I'm upstairs looking at the football game by myself, enjoying it. Cicely would come up and check on the old man, make sure I'm all right. She was that type of niece that always checked, always called, always pushed. And I appreciate her for that. And so, once again, thank you. Don't try to be quick. They always talk about people touching people's lives. But people touched my life. All of this, all of those teams, all of those graduating classes from Haven, they all touched me more than I touched them.
Well, congratulations, and I don't think the meeting's gonna top that. The next item on our agenda is communications from the city clerk.
Just quickly, we do have an email from Nathan Holtz-Muller in favor of 50-r-24, email from Michael Lor, who's asking for the city council to not commercialize the use of Harley Clark Mansion, and another from Fiona Martin-McCarthy, asking to not propose to, to not support the current two proposals and to support the community, like House and Gardens proposal. Additionally, I want to take some time to let the public know that early voting starts on the 21st of October. And it's from the 21st of October to the 26th of October, voting will be from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. October 27th would be 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. On the second week of early voting, which would be October 28th through Friday, November 1st, it's 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We're pretty lucky here in Evanston to have extended voting hours. And Saturday, November 2nd would be 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Sunday, November 3rd, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And the third week would be November 4th with, from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And then, anyone who has questions about the election, whether it be the current presidential election or the municipal elections, you can email the clerk's office at elections@cityofevanston.org to ensure that you are filtered through our many, many emails that we receive every day. If you're looking for your mail-in ballot or if you have questions about the election, we will respond promptly as fast as possible through there. And then, to make things more fun, filing for the consolidated municipal elections for 2025 also begins on October 21st, so you can't miss either. So those would go from October 21st through October 28th, and filing will be in the clerk's office, not traditionally as it has been in room G300, because if you go down there, you will see the DMV and not the clerk's office. So come up to room 1200 here at 2100 Ridge Avenue, Evanston, Illinois 60201, just in case you don't know where we are. And we will be open for extended hours. So we will be open from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM to follow the Illinois Board of Elections filing hours. And then, just so you know, you can only file at the Evanston City Clerk's Office for the mayor's race, the city council, the city council members' race, which is Ward 1 through 9, and the city clerk's office position as well. So I know there's been some confusion on whether or not people can file for district, the school district positions. And we will work with local media to ensure that people know where they file for each of those positions, although the school board races are not in my jurisdiction. And if you have questions for the consolidated elections, please, again, email elections@cityofevanston.org, or you can call our office directly, 847-448-8189. And then additionally, we have questions on the 311 app currently where you can find what's on your ballot, if you're registered to vote, your mail-in ballot location, if it's been sent to you. So if you open your 311 app, you can go through any of those self-service prompts and be able to search where you are on the voting for all of your voting information. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public comment. There are, well, looks like about 23, 24 people signed up for public comment after the, after the folks who were speaking in support of Mr. Michelin have already gone. So that means everyone will be given a minute and a half. We begin, as always, with those who signed up on this sheet, beginning with Vanessa Frost, who will be followed by Celia Cardino, and then Will Hain.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. I'm here today as a resident of the eighth ward who participated in the participatory budgeting process. And PB Evanston was a great success with over 2,000 residents participating and submitting over 1,200 project ideas. Evanston also achieved the highest, second highest turnout rate for PB in the nation, which demonstrated just how much our city and community about being involved in the decision-making. Despite this success, the city currently does not have a sustainable plan in place to continue PB. I believe this is crucial for the future of our community to keep this process alive and accessible. I urge the city to create a long-term plan for participatory budgeting so residents can continue having a meaningful role in shaping our city's future. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope you will support the continuation of PB in Evanston.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Celia Cardino, who will be followed by Will Hain, and then Lucio Jimenez.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to speak this moment from my heart. When participatory budgeting started in 2022, for many people in our community, this was something new for the city. Ordinary people to come to the city council, it's not easy for them to do comments or propose ideas. So what PB did is basically opened an opportunity for many ordinary people that doesn't come to these meetings to share their voice and share their ideas on how the city should invest $3 million. So thank you to each of you who said yes for PB in 2022. Each of you opened the doors for all those people to come to participate. And the benefit of this project is that all these ordinary people felt welcome in this process and their voices. And not only, it goes beyond PB. It's not only the idea collection, it's also educating many of our members in our community how to make decisions, which is not easy, also face the challenges between them. When they come, they share their ideas. They also committed to be budget delegates, and all of that is transformative for all of them. I know my time is running, so I hope you consider that PB is coming for 2025 in the city budget, and I'm encouraging you to check the PB report, which was a lot of work and detail into this report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Will Hain, who will be followed by Lucio Jimenez, and then Rodrigo Martinez.
Thank you. Try to make this quick. Evening, everyone. My name is Will Hain. I'm a lifelong Evanstonian, also here on behalf of PB Evanston. Just to share a little bit of my own testimony and the potential I see in it, just for context, any numbers I give are from the final report available to the public on pbevanston.org. But to start, so my time with PB started a couple years ago, around this time when I got an email about upcoming idea collection meetings for how to spend ARPA funding that needed volunteer facilitators. I have loved community organizing facilitation, so I figured I'd check it out. And then, over the course of the next 12 meetings, I got to hear 382 unique people from across all wards come together, generate over 1,200 ideas, and I got to learn more about the issues affecting different residents in a way not possible via other civic engagement processes. Needless to say, the experience stuck, because from there, continued to be a volunteer facilitator with the Housing Committee to generate two affordable housing, their two affordable housing subsidy and rent utility systems proposals. And in that time, what I got to see was everyday people from every facet of the community, each with their own perspectives, coming together to broaden each other's horizons by listening and learning from each other. I got to see fledgling organizers who felt they might not know enough to help stepping up, coming out of their shell. There's our beep beep. I'll try to wrap this up, to do what they can to get things done. And I got to see people with wildly clashing personalities and points of view, building bridges to accomplish a common goal. And all this is because they generally wanted to make their city an even better place, and this process gave them a chance to feel empowered to do so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
The next speaker is Lucio Jimenez, who will be followed by Rodrigo Martinez, and then Jaime Avila.
So we're collective here. Couple of us, Rodrigo and Jaime. If it's okay, if we can, my speech is a little bit long, so if we could bring it together, they're willing to give up their time.
They'll have to do the speaking, but you can all be there together.
Okay. So, good evening, Mayor Bis, City Manager Stowe, City Council members, Clerk Mendoza, and everyone here tonight. My name is Lucio Jimenez, and I've been a proud Public Works employee for over 20 years. I started in the forestry department and currently serve as a crew leader in Streets Department. I was born and raised here in Evanston. My parents, immigrants from Salva Tierra, Guanajuato, Mexico, came to this country to escape hunger and give their children a better life. Growing up in a Mexican household, we were taught the value of hard work, to let our actions speak for us, and to cherish our family and culture. Like many first-generation Mexican-Americans, I was also taught to stay in the shadows, to be quiet, and just work. Yet in school, we were taught something different, that we were all equal, and we all have a voice, and through that voice, we can make a difference. I'm here today to speak out about an unfortunate divide plaguing our Public Works Department and other departments. Recently, there's been a push to fill open positions, and while many of us have gone through the hiring process and advanced based on our skills and merit, there's a disturbing slander campaign targeting Latino employees. Comments like, "They must have been given the answers to do so well," and questions such as, "Who do you know to get this job?" have been directed to Latino employees, including myself. There are unfounded accusations that Latino management is setting up Mexicans in other departments to fit an agenda. These comments aren't just hurtful, they are meant to undermine the hard work and sacrifices we make to be the best we can be. In my case...
Why don't you hand off to the next person? There's plenty of people to fill the...
In my case, my hunger for knowledge comes from knowing the courage my parents had to leave their home in Mexico to give their children a better education. I promised never to let their sacrifice be in vain. That's why I stayed after hours, started early, and worked to develop the skills needed to be a leader. I sought out guidance from the people with more experience and took advantage of the same learning opportunities offered to every Public Works employee. Through my own efforts, I rose to the position of crew leader. But instead of being congratulated for my promotion, I've been met with suspicion. People have even sent emails to the Law Department accusing me of benefiting from favoritism. One email stated, "Attached documentation supporting the favoritism which occurred when filling the Streets crew leader position." These accusations are not just aimed at me. I've seen this happen to other colleagues, Latino colleagues. It seems like whenever a Latino is promoted, instead of being celebrated, we are investigated and devalued, like we can't possibly be capable of success on our own. This has to stop. We Latinos in Public Works are asking for fairness. Give the job to the most qualified person, the one who performs best in the interview and demonstrates their ability through merit. We are not asking for special treatment. We are asking for equality. We are asking for the baseless accusations to be investigated and addressed so we can end the racial divides that poison our work environment. As of 2023, Latinos are the third-largest demographic in Evanston, and our population has doubled over the last 20 years. We have been a part of this community since the 1960s, and we will continue to be a part of its future. We are your neighbors, your family members, your constituents, and your workers. Together, let's strive to keep the hiring process fair and ensure that the best person gets the job, because that's not just the right thing to do, it's the smart thing to do. I leave you with a quote, "And whereas a governing body, it's important for us to carefully consider the positive impact of Latinos in Evanston's culture and success, we must wholeheartedly renew our commitment to providing opportunities that will ensure the accessibility of the American dream for current and future generations," end quote. Honorable, September 23rd, 2024, Honorable Mayor Daniel Bis.
Good afternoon. My name is Jaime Avila, eight-and-a-half-year employee for Evanston. Started as a recycling route driver, and through hard work and dedication, I earned a position as a crew leader in the department. Coming in as an entry-level worker, I utilized my opportunities to learn and acquire knowledge needed to get the position. I am also facing scrutiny through the slanderers campaign. Thus the reason why you're here to support. I was raised with the mindset that if you want something, you work hard and achieve your goals. I feel as of recent, the hiring process has been changed time and time again. One position is one thing, the next position is another, while the blame game is getting tossed around like a hot potato. It is not fair to employees who are new, who are either new hires or employees putting in work to elevate themselves. In my opinion, the hiring process should not be changed on a person-to-person situation, as records show. We are here to demand that the city rectifies this and offers full transparency and puts these policies on paper immediately, as there are many new positions getting filled. And if they hear that there is no room for advancement, the city might lose out on great employees based on the fact that they cannot advance in their careers.
Thank you very much. Obviously, we don't respond to public comment, but I do want to say these are incredibly serious and important concerns and, in some cases, allegations, and they will be treated in that way as the city moves forward and works through this. So we really appreciate you bringing this forward and look forward to working with you. Thank you. By the way, thank you for your service to the city. The next speaker is Rebecca Mendoza, who will be followed by Elizabeth Jimenez, and then Oscar Morales.
Good afternoon, everyone. Buenos dias a todos. My name is Rebecca Mendoza, longtime Evanston resident. I hail from Mexico City, Mexico. And I wanted to first take some time to acknowledge this beautiful land that we all share. It is beautiful, and it's one of the reasons why I'm still here. So I just wanted to acknowledge it today because Evanston is just, it's a beautiful city located next to beautiful Lake Michigan, part of the largest system of fresh water. So I think it's something that we really need to consider, how we honor the land. Being here, I'm here in my capacity as the executive director of Evanston Latinos tonight, and I wanted to share with you a little bit about what we've been doing for a year. We started in 2020. Our Latino community was the hardest hit by COVID, and primarily through their finances. And so we've been working over the last year to develop our economics and allow people to stay here by developing businesses. And tonight, you'll hear from some of the businesses that we are working to support. It's been really tough to find a kitchen here in Evanston, and it's been even tougher to develop business. But we've done it, and in a short period of time, we've been really, really successful. And I wanted to take the time to thank the city and the people at the city that have helped I wanted to take the time to thank the city and the people at the city that have helped us to get to where we are. So I wanted to just say thank you. You probably don't get too many of us that come, but I wanted to thank Paul Zalmazak for his support. I wanted to thank Ellen Golden for her incredible time that she spent with us in making sure that our permits are spot on. I wanted to thank Katie Bowden, and also Mike Rivera, who's also been really helpful. And I think as our community continues to grow, I want to ask you to allocate the necessary resources to ensure that our Latino community thrives here in Evanston. Thank you so much again for your service, for your time. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month and Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Elizabeth Jimenez, who will be followed by Oscar Morales, and then Danielle Sani.
Hola, buenas noches a todos. Perdón si no hablo en inglés. No hablo el perfecto inglés. Tengo aquí en Estados Unidos 23 años. Me encanta esta ciudad. He vivido mucho, no sé, tengo en Evanston, tengo cerca de 20 años. Yo es la primera vez que me acerco a la ciudad.
¿Puedo traducir por usted si quiere? ¿Le puedo ayudar? ¿Quieres que le ayude?
Sí, sí gusta.
I'm just gonna help translate. Disculpe, ¿puede empezar?
Okay. Bueno, mi inglés no es muy bueno.
My English is not that good.
Tengo 23 años viviendo en Estados Unidos.
I've been living in the United States for 23 years.
La mayoría de tiempo he estado viviendo aquí en Evanston.
The majority of the time, I've been living here in Evanston.
Mis hijos han crecido aquí.
My children have grown up here.
No, nacieron aquí, solo tengo cuatro y solo uno nació aquí.
I have four children, and only one of them was born here.
Todos ellos ahora son adultos.
They are all now adults.
Y siempre hemos tenido el sueño de que se nos vea, que se nos escuche.
We've always had the dream that people recognize us and hear us.
Seguimos en ese, en esta, no, no es lucha, sino en ese sueño.
We still continue to fight for our dream.
A mí me encantaría que hubiera una cocina compartida aquí, ya que hemos andado buscando mucho por mucho tiempo el hacer un negocio de comida, pero por el hecho de no haber una cocina compartida es muy difícil.
We would love to have a shared kitchen in this city. We've been looking for a long time, but we haven't been able to find one that fulfills our needs, and we would hope that we will get support for this dream.
Yo pensé que en esta ciudad lo tenían porque fui a buscarlo a la ciudad de Chicago.
I thought that they had this in the city because they did look for it in the city of Chicago.
Y en Chicago lo hay, pero honestamente las rentas son muy caras.
Chicago has it, but honestly, the rents are very high.
Yo creo que para los negocios pequeños debería de haber más ayuda, debería de haber, que nosotros contemos en la ciudad, que nos escuchen, porque realmente es frustrante no encontrar un espacio. Hemos buscado, bueno, yo en lo personal he buscado muchas cocinas durante, no sé, cinco años, y no la había encontrado. Ahorita que me uní aquí a Evanston, porque yo no conocía Evanston Latinos, y descubrimos una en Highland Park, que siento que 40 minutos a veces es, me es muy, muy, como se dice, el tiempo es mucho para ir y venir y hacer mi negocio.
I'm gonna try to summarize all of that. She said that, you know, they've been looking here for a long time. They looked at Highland Park, but that location is very far, and it is her hope that they will get support, especially small business owners that are trying to have a shared kitchen, so they can have their business and develop their business and make their dream come true.
Yo espero que sea el tiempo que se nos que escuche. Gracias.
And I hope that you give us the time in here, what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Oscar Morales, and then Danielle Sani, and then Mitchell Harrison.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Oscar Morales, and I love Evanston. I've been living here for over a decade. My wife and I decided to raise our children here because of everything this city has to offer. Through the years, I've noticed, you know, that the city is doing really well, it's perfect, but the Latino community, the Hispanic community, is kind of hidden. And I think there's lack of economic opportunities for them. The project that Evanston Latinos has is very beautiful, because it's not giving away money. It's teaching people how to work and how to, you know, build a business from the ground. And for me, it's beautiful. Reminds me of a proverb in the Bible that says, "If you give a man a fish, you'll feed him for a day; but if you teach him how to fish, you'll feed him forever." Since I became part of the Evanston Latinos group, I've been inspired, but also we are facing a lot of challenges. As she said, the kitchen we're renting is all the way in Highland Park, and it takes over half an hour just to get there and then to come back. And the logistics of, you know, moving our products to the city of Evanston is kind of complicated sometimes. It would be really nice if the city allocated resources to help this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Danielle Sani, who will be followed by Mitchell Harrison, and then Michael Lor.
Good evening, City Council members, staff, and Mayor Biss. My name is Danielle Sani, and I am a Skevenstonian. This address also includes the Village of Skokie and beyond as well. Over a decade ago, I had the privilege of volunteering in Southern Africa to support the public health response to HIV/AIDS. During my service, I faced the harsh reality of xenophobia. In fact, a survivor of a xenophobic attack urged me to leave for my own safety. Nevertheless, I remain committed to working with the local community, especially to make a difference for orphans and vulnerable children. Returning home after that experience was incredibly challenging. I didn't fully understand the importance of personal wellness or how trauma can manifest in various ways. Unfortunately, my actions and words may have been open to misinterpretation, which I now realize can lead to misinformation, a burdensome challenge for everyone involved. Therefore, I want to take a moment to sincerely apologize to my childhood friend, who stood by me during my most vulnerable time, and to anyone else who may have been affected by this lack of clarity. I am truly grateful for the opportunities I had in this community before my international service, and I appreciate those who welcomed me back and expressed genuine concern for my well-being. If community stakeholders would like to discuss further, please feel free to reach out. I welcome the opportunity for open dialogue. Through this journey, I've learned that context is crucial in every situation, and with time, wounds can heal for growth and resilience. Thank you for this platform. I wish everyone a happy holiday season.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mitchell Harrison, who will be followed by Michael Lor, and then Rosio Mansero. Is Mitchell Lor here? Sorry, Mitchell Harrison, I apologize. If not, then we'll move ahead with Michael Lor, who will be followed by Rosio Mansero, and then Nazaria De Jesus. All right, Rosio.
Claro que sí. Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Rosio Mansera, y vengo del Distrito Nueve.
Good afternoon. My name is Rosio Mansera, and I come from District Nine.
El día de hoy vengo a apoyar a Rebecca Mendoza y Evanston Latinos.
Today, I'm here to support Rebecca Mendoza and Evanston Latinos.
Abogando por un espacio abierto para emprendedores en Evanston, para las cocinas comerciales.
Advocating on behalf of the people that are requesting for a shared kitchen right here in the city of Evanston.
La intención de prestar las cocinas que se encuentran en el Robert Crown, in Fleet Jordan, in Levy Center, in Jean Morrison.
The intention of the spaces that were provided at the Robert Crown, Fleet Jordan, and Morrison Center.
Me gustaría que así como la ciudad tomará muy en cuenta que le abriera el uso de más espacios para las cocinas.
I would really like for the city to take into consideration the importance of opening up the shared kitchens for the people.
Darán más oportunidades a nuevos emprendedores y a la misma ciudad.
It gives more opportunities, not only for the city, but also for its entrepreneurs.
Si tenemos las cocinas, nos da la parte la más preciada ciudad y hacer uso de las cocinas.
If we are provided the kitchen, we will definitely use them.
Así como habrían un maravilloso animal shelter de 6.3 millones con unas subvenciones del Condado de Cook.
Just like you open an amazing animal shelter for $6.3 million with the help of Cook County.
Habrían una cocina comunitaria para todos los residentes de Evanston.
We should open up a shared kitchen for all of the residents of Evanston.
También me gustaría seguir en contacto. Esto es, lo voy a agregar para el comité del presupuesto.
I also want to add this as part of the budget to present to the Budget Committee to be taken into consideration.
Que lo volvieran a considerar el año que viene es muy importante para la comunidad, y miramos la participación de todos los residentes.
It's very important to include this in the upcoming budget presentation, because it's something that's very important for residents.
Tuve la dicha y la participación en los delegados de presupuesto.
I had the opportunity to participate in the conversations around the budget.
Y también me gustaría que tomaran en cuenta el estender el programa piloto de 500 dólares.
And I would also like for you to consider extending the guaranteed income pilot program of $500.
De cero a cinco años alrededor de todos los distritos de Evanston.
From zero to five years to all of the districts, but to all of the wards in Evanston.
Ya que todavía hay alrededor de 50 espacios disponibles, y ya no hay más aplicantes en el Distrito 65.
Because there are currently 50 spaces, and there are no more applicants in District 65.
Muchas gracias y buenas noches.
Thank you, and have a good evening. Gracias.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Nazaria De Jesus, who will be followed by Nancy Srinan, and then Sari Kaddison Shapiro.
Hola, muy buenas tardes a todo el council, Stephanie Mendoza, y a nuestro mayor.
Good evening to all of our council members, my name is Stephanie, and to Clerk Stephanie Mendoza.
Y el mayor.
Oh, and to the mayor as well. Sorry, I need coffee.
Estoy aquí apoyando a Evanston Latinos. Vengo con Stephanie Mendoza.
I am here supporting Evanston Latinos. I'm here on the invitation of Stephanie Mendoza.
Para que nos apoyen con abrir una cocina comunitaria.
So you can support us to open up a shared kitchen.
Porque aquí no tenemos una cocina comunitaria y tenemos que ir a cocinar hasta Highland Park, y no se me hace justo que Evanston teniendo unas cocinas tan hermosas, no las quiera rentar.
It is not fair that Evanston having some beautiful shared kitchens that we're not able to rent it, and currently we have to drive all the way to Highland Park to utilize their shared kitchen over there.
So me gustaría que nos apoyaran con eso, por favor, y muchas gracias. Feliz noche.
I would like for you all to support us with this. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Nancy Srinan, who will be followed by Sari Kaddison Shapiro, and then Sharon Chornish.
Good evening, members of the City Council. Nancy was not able to make it because of an emergency and asked me to speak in her place, so I'll be very brief. You should have copies of the letter from the NAACP from 2019 available at your desk. I won't have to go through reading that. And secondly, more important, to see that we are having a report come back from staff, back to the same issue that we argued over six and seven years ago, about keeping Harley Clark open to the community and not to become a boutique private hotel that will limit access to the majority of citizens to one of the few personal areas that is still available for taxpayers of this city. I find it difficult sometimes to understand. We've had a referendum, we've been here years, and why can you not listen to the citizens who elected every one of you up there and ignore our demands over the years? It's amazing to me how you can be so tone deaf and then come to us with a report and a recommendation for building a hotel that you denied before. This is insidious. So consider our concerns from the past, and please, do not do anything, not make any kind of arrangement that would limit access to Harley Clark for the majority of Evanstonians. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sari Kaddison Shapiro, who will be followed by Sharon Chornish, and then Ray Friedman.
Some questions. Envision Evanston 2045, is that a real thing, or was it a joke?
Ask your questions. I'll write some of them down and try to get them answered.
I was told that it was a joke, in which case, you know, I don't get it. But I believe it was originally called Project 2045, and then the name was changed because Project, it sounded a lot like Project 2025, which was written by the Heritage Foundation. And I wondered if that was the case with Envision, with Project 2045. I once asked my alderman if there was a plan to make Evanston a much bigger city than had ever been imagined, and there was kind of silence about that. And online, I saw a thing about the 10 richest suburbs of Chicago, a list. There's always lists online. And they forgot about Lake Forest. But Evanston was billed as an up-and-coming city, and we've been here for such a long time. And I kind of liked the description of Evanston better that was in the New York Times once. Uh-oh, is my time up? I don't know what to do.
Well, thank you very much. One option would be to send an email to all of council, and there's ways to continue this dialogue, but public comment is simply to make a comment, and your time is expired. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sharon Chornish, who will be followed by Ray Friedman.
Hi, I'm Sharon Chornish. I've lived in Ninth Ward for over 45 years. And living here so long, I've been getting these few emails and messages recently that made me sit up and think, it's happening again. I mean, I thought we had resolved what we were going to do with Harley Clark, what we wanted. And now it looks to me like someone's going to try and slip this boutique hotel underneath, you know, a quick vote tonight. I'm really disturbed by this, and maybe I've got misinformation. But I really, please, take into consideration what the people want, which is clearly, and I agree with Carlos, this has been an outstanding issue for some time, and I see some of you not wanting to make eye contact. I'm suspicious as to what the story is here. I really honestly think that the citizens of Evanston, the community, the general public want to have Harley Clark as our place. And really, it's a gem. Don't let it slip away from us. I plead with you, I implore you, please, please consider something else. Of the plans that were out there, that Evanston Community, Lake House and Gardens, why isn't that being considered? I mean, that looks to me like top of the list as far as benefiting our community. Why do we want to give this away to somebody so they can invest? So thank you for listening, and please.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Ray Friedman, Second Ward. I agree with the lady who just spoke, and with Carlos, of course. About six years ago, we all signed petitions and got the Harley Clark on a referendum. About six years ago, we all signed petitions and got the Harley Clark on a referendum to keep Harley Clark open for residents. And I don't understand why, first of all, why there's no discussion with the public. I mean, once again, we're faced with a dilemma of lack of communication or no communication with the residents at all. What happened to transparency and accountability? Did we have any discussion with residents on 909 Davis? Not that I know of. Especially after you were found guilty in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Looks like the lease should be null and void. And we would still be obligated to pay eight million dollars if you canceled that lease with 909 Davis. And now we're going ahead with 909 Davis with no discussion with the residents whatsoever. Same thing with Harley Clark. Don't understand. How about conversation with City Hall, the City Hall? We're leaving City Hall. Do we have any discussion? Now you're talking about having discussion next month or the month after? After you already decided what to do with Harley Clark, with City Hall? What happened to the residents who are paying for this? This is taxpayer money going two and a half million dollars a year to pay for 909 Davis? What's wrong with City Hall right here? I don't get it. So, you know what? You need to involve the residents, as I've said before. People keep asking, why do I say the same thing over and over and over again? Because you're not listening. Pay attention to the residents, have the discussion with the residents and then make your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That concludes the portion of public comment of people who signed up in person to speak in person. So now we move to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Bruce Ennenbach, who will be followed by Jane McCarthy and then Kendra Parzen.
Council members, my name is Bruce Ennenbach, Ward Wonderful. We used to have a deliberative and participative process for projects that affect us all. Projects would go through the Land Use Commission and such before reaching the council and before reaching the council and after a thorough and expert review and deliberation by the various commissions, often including quite expert citizen input. Here we are being asked to go ahead and negotiate a lease with a chosen bidder. One chosen by our staff. And this negotiation is before any expert commission or citizen review. We once more have put the cart before the horse, just like Civic Center debacle and the Northwestern Stadium failure as well. It's handed down from the Politburo. This is how things are done in China, not in Evanston. The council should turn down this proposal and go back to the proper drawing board. Additionally, the chosen one is the wrong one. What is proposed here is an exclusive upper crust and private use facility which will primarily exclude the general public who own it. The owner-up appropriately responded to the expressed wants and desires of the public for a public facility and should be given priority. Much like the public was unfortunately ignored on the Civic Center project, it is hoped that they will not again be ignored here. And what's the hurry? We've been messing around with this thing for many years. There's no need for a special order of business for this. We have all the time in the world to do it properly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jane McCarthy, who will be followed by Kendra Parzen and then Yolanda Vanderlan.
Hi, I'm Jane McCarthy, thirty-year resident of the Seventh Ward. Evanston Community Lake House and Gardens was created over a decade ago by community volunteers. We submitted a proposal in regards to the Harley Clark RFP in March of 2018. This was accepted by the city, but then the lease the city wrote was not approved. As volunteers committing thousands of hours, we've submitted that proposal and two more in April of 2019 and this past spring. We volunteer because we care about building community spaces. We care about preserving history on the lake and public access. We care about what the referendum revealed the citizens want and we can accomplish this project. Unfortunately, it seems the city will be selecting a group that cares about profit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kendra Parzen, who will be followed by Yolanda Vanderlan and then Sheila Sullivan.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Parzen. I am advocacy manager for Landmarks Illinois. For nearly ten years, Landmarks Illinois has advocated along Evanstonians to save and repurpose Harley Clark. When we were contacted by city staff in early 2023 with the news that Artis Book House would exit its lease, we were ready to spring into action to help find another user. We were happy to support staff in preparation of both the RFI and RFP, sharing our expertise in crafting documents that lead to successful outcomes for historic buildings. Our objective throughout this process has been to demonstrate that the reuse of this building is still entirely possible despite its long vacancy and to provide options for Evanston that offer a financially feasible path for its rehabilitation without public dollars while still maintaining a meaningful level of public access. This is a high bar. Thus, we are happy that the RFP process has resulted in four proposals, all of which rely on long-term lease and leave the property in public ownership. Evanston's expert staff have selected Celadon's responses, their recommended path forward, following careful review and consistent with Evanston's typical approach to RFPs. We commend the city for responding to calls for increased transparency by taking the atypical step of releasing the RFP responses to the public. In the years my organization has advocated for Harley Clark, Evanstonians have made it abundantly clear they believe this building should continue to stand along Evanston's lakefront as a community asset. As we've seen many times over, the best avenue for a building's preservation is use. Harley Clark has been vacant for too long. It's time to give it a renewed future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Yolanda Vanderlan, who will be followed by Sheila Sullivan.
Good evening, council and mayor. Yes, I'm Yolanda Vanderlan. I'm a resident of the Ninth Ward and I'm here as a citizen in support of the Evanston Community Lake House and Gardens proposal for Harley Clark, the people's house. This past weekend when I spoke with my elder person about designating Harley Clark as a special order of business, I learned that this would prioritize discussions about its future and that three proposals would be presented this evening. However, after looking at today's council agenda and reading an article in today's roundtable, I noticed that there's already a recommendation to start discussions with Celadon. Given that Harley Clark was only brought back into public discussion at the end of September, I'm curious about how today's recommendation fits in with opportunities for public comment and overall transparency. I'd also like to understand the reasons behind the sudden push for a decision after months or years of inaction. Upon reviewing the Celadon proposal, it seems their primary focus is on developing restaurants, a boutique hotel, event space and a high-end retail destination. The community aspects such as an ice cream parlor and cafe associated with a locally owned company, public access to Jen's Jensen Gardens and community gatherings when financially feasible appear to be more like add-ons to address Evanston's desire for access. I'm glad to see the interest in wedding and special event spaces along our beautiful lakefront and in Jen's Jensen Gardens. However, I'm concerned about how this might affect public access. In contrast, Evanston Community Lake House proposal includes many additional elements and their proposal appears to be fully community-centered and aligns with the sentiments expressed during Evanston's 2018 vote to preserve Harley Clark. Thank you for considering this consideration.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sheila Sullivan.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I've lived in Evanston for over forty years in the Third Ward. I'm concerned about Harley Clark. It's been an incredibly long and convoluted process to arrive at the current status. But yet you put the future of the mansion up for vote tonight without true input, inequitable input from the community. The city staff made their recommendations on what the future of this space will be without input from even the council members. They've already named an awardee for lease of the property for commercial use, basically not public use. But plans for using public land and buildings must include input from the public. So I really urge you to slow down the process and make a plan for the groups to present their proposals for Harley Clark with the public present. Give advance notice for people to attend, like when we had sessions in the parasol room back in 2015. I don't think anything ever came of it, but it was a good effort. Make the public process transparent so the public is available to weigh in and get questions and concerns answered. And share the input and data with the community. This is important because this is the last public building on the lakefront that's owned by all of us. So there's an overwhelming public interest and concern in how the building is used. Because once the decision is made, the future of Harley Clark is going to be essentially permanent, at least in our lifetimes. So please make sure you get it right. Right now it doesn't seem to be right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the in-person portion of public comment. We now move to the online public comment. Sebastian Knalls.
Good evening, city council. I don't think I'm able to show my screen, but tonight I am speaking on behalf of Community Alliance for Better Government regarding how early Clark. As many of you know, it has been a long journey regarding this building. CABG is asking each one of you to think about why it's important to ensure that plans for using public land and public buildings needs to include input from the public, especially those who historically get left out of the conversation. Please consider what would equity look like on the Evanston lakefront, including our publicly owned building Harley Clark. CABG is requesting the following from city council. Make a plan for the groups to present their proposals for Harley Clark in advance with the public. Ensure the public process is transparent and there's ability for us to weigh in and get questions and concerns addressed in a suitable timeframe and then sharing data with the community based on the input you received. This is important because we are all owners of this building. This is the only public building on Evanston's lakefront. Year after year when Harley Clark was discussed, there has been overwhelming public interest in this building and the land surrounding it. We have had a referendum, community meetings and a lakefront master plan to help guide us. Once the decision is made, the future will be memorialized with a four-year lease. Let's make sure we get it right with the public's interest and access at the forefront. I'd like to leave you with this quote from Reimagining the Civic Commons. Encouraging the use of public spaces begins with an intentional invitation for people of all backgrounds to believe they belong in public spaces. They must first experience a welcome. In order to spark a deeper civic engagement and provide a socioeconomic mixing, public spaces must reinforce a sense of membership for everyone. Thank you for this time this evening.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for the evening. We now move to special orders of business. Does someone have a motion relative to item SP one?
Mr. Mayor, I will second item SP one, which is presentation of the 2025 proposal.
Councilmember Reed moves that we discuss the FY 2025 proposed budget. Councilmember Nusma seconds. I think we have a presentation from staff at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a brief statement I'm going to address about the fiscal 2025 budget that I'm happy to turn it over to Hitesh and Clayton, the budget team, for their presentation. I just want to thank the mayor and the council members who were meeting with us earlier this year to discuss the fiscal 2025 budget and provide very valuable feedback. As highlighted in our budget transmital letter, we have a substantial general fund reserve balance and about eleven million dollars in revenue from the Ryan Field project. Despite an inflationary environment, we held new operating requests flat in the proposed budget. We have proposed only a handful of new positions and all but two requests either have offsetting revenues or are outside the general fund. Significant looming challenges exist for the fiscal '26 budget process. Our strong guidance is that we address as much of the structural deficit as possible this year to set us up for success in next year's budget planning process. Staff has provided a list of over thirty revenue or expense reduction ideas and we urge the council to consider at least some of these ideas now rather than wait another year. I want to thank the dozens of staff members who worked hard on this budget proposal, especially CFO Desai, Budget Manager Black, Financial Analyst Van Dorp. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Hitesh and Clayton and the budget team for their presentation. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, mayor, members of the city council. We have a kind of brief presentation which we did last week to the Finance and Budget Committee to go over our proposed 2025 budget. These are the kind of main topics. I would cover the first few slides and then I would give it to Clayton Black to go into the details in terms of revenues and expenses. And at the end, we will answer any questions related to the budget. So these are the main topics, changes to the budget presentation. We have a couple of, I think, the changes in line with some of the other cities doing and in line with the GFO, Government Finance Officers Association. And we'll touch on that later on. Overall budget, where we stand. General Fund 24 projections, obviously we did that to the city council a couple of months, I think, ago or the last month in September. And it is like more, kind of a little bit revised, yeah, not much has changed. Twenty twenty-five highlights and the future projections down the road in the next three years. Key budget topics, property tax levy, obviously, yeah, that's the key one. It's still the flat, I think, fourth year in a row where we have, yeah, except the library portion, but the city portion of the tax levy remains flat. Fee increases, mainly we will talk about this, yeah, on the water side, public safety pensions. That contribution has gone up compared to last year, it has gone up by around four point six million dollar. So the total nine point six million contribution coming out of the general fund to the police and fire collectively. Some of the new positions, I think city manager touched on that, pretty much kind of cost new sterile, except the one. Menu of options, I think the city council and the council, when we met them earlier this year, they talked about giving certain options, whether it's a revenue increase or the expense reduction. So we have kind of posted those menu of options too. Capital improvement program, obviously, yeah, Laura would cover that as a part of the second item. And the budget calendar, what's next, you know? We have a budget hearing on 28th, then in the November we have truth and taxation hearing. And obviously in the next month we would have a lot of ward meetings focused on the budget and the town hall too. So a lot of budget discussion in the next four to six weeks. Next one. Is it, let's see if I can do it from here. Okay, changes to the budget presentation. Out of three, the two, the main ones, the treatment of interfund transfers, they have been double counted and the revenues and expenses and so obviously inflates that. And the good example is like we transfer the funds from general fund to the police pension. And then police pension spends the money towards the retiree pension, so there's an expense twice. And there are a couple of other transfers too. So obviously we looked at it, some of the cities were doing, what is our GFO, is best practice kind of, you know? And again, there's nothing right or wrong what we were doing or what we are going to do. It's just how we, yeah, present. Use of fund balance recorded in the year it is received. And the third one is appropriation of funds. Only appropriating funds where they are controlled by the city and not separate boards. And most importantly, public safety pension funds, which are like twenty-nine million dollar levy. And so obviously that's controlled by the pension boards. City council doesn't control that expense side. So we saw quite a few cities, you know, they don't include the police and fire pension budget as a separate fiduciary fund. The numbers are still part of general fund because it's required under their The numbers are still part of general fund because it's required under their accounting rules. So we show the tax levy as a general fund revenue, and then we show the transfers out. But we don't show separate fiduciary funds called police pension and fire pension. And again, same thing here. What we had done or what we were doing, was it right or wrong? Nothing right or wrong, it's just kind of, yeah, trying to make this process better, more transparent. Overall budget for the 2025, $342 million excluding those operating transfers, you know, under the new. And the 24 budget was around $355 million excluding those transfers. And there's an expansion of those roughly $13.4 million water intake project kind of, you know? Most of the work's done, so very little to be spent on the next year. ARPA funds, obviously, a big spend, yeah, going down. Capital projects going down, but adding $16 million. Salaries and wages, obviously, under the union contracts, we are adding. And then the other $3.3 million are the reductions. So that's the $13.4 million reduction. Overall budget, Clayton, you want to take it over from here?
Sure thing. So when you look at our budget and how it's changed since 2021, you can see it's clearly gone up in the last five years. There's a handful of things that we can point to to explain that increase. You can see our 2021 adopted budget was $270 million. As Hitesh said, the proposed budget in front of you is $398 million, including transfers. Obviously, when you exclude those transfers and make sure you don't double count, it's quite a bit less than that. But here are some of the key reasons why we've seen this increase in spending. Two items are the water intake project and ARPA. Both of these things were not included in our 2021 budget. So you can see the pink bar and the light blue bar attributing to those two things that we didn't budget for in 2021. Salaries and benefits, we obviously had the large increases in the 2023 budget following collective bargaining. So you can see salaries and benefits have gone up by the amount in the green bar. So that's contributing to the growth as well. Our capital program, Laura will talk about this. The CIP that you have in the proposed budget is the all-in CIP. All projects that were identified by staff as necessary and up for consideration. I know Laura's item later on this evening presents sort of a slimmed-down version of that compared to what you have in the budget. So, but regardless, we've certainly seen growth in capital spending, and that's the yellow bar up there. And then, as Hitesh said, the city's contribution to public safety pensions. In 2021, we were only on track to fund them at 90% by 2040. This budget keeps us on track for 100% funding by 2040. But it comes at a significant cost to the general fund and the general fund reserves. And so you can see the dark blue bar there is the increase in the contribution to public safety pensions. So when you put it on a pie chart, kind of the same data, but you can see the big pieces of this are salary and benefits and the capital program, followed by the ARPA spending and the water intake project. Inflation, obviously, you can't go without talking a little bit about inflation and the impact that it's had on some of our contractual services and other costs. So that's the yellow bar. And then we didn't have a sustainability fund in 2021. We didn't have nearly as robust of a reparations program in 2021. Our affordable housing fund wasn't benefiting from additional Northwestern revenue. So these are all things too that have resulted in some budget growth, and we're tying that to that light blue color that you see up there. As Hitesh mentioned, we did present these last month. These are our general fund projections for 2024. Not much has changed from when I was up here essentially one month ago and talked about how revenues were tracking. Where you see double green, those are revenues that are doing really, really well compared to budget. Where you see double red, those are revenues that are doing pretty poorly compared to budget. One revenue really stands out is building permits. As I mentioned last month, the Finance and Budget Committee recommended that those revenues stay in the general fund and be used to help avoid property tax increases, to help cover our increased pension obligations, all the needs that are in the general fund, leaving that money there to help us essentially buy another year of avoiding a property tax increase. And so you can see that was budgeted $4 million with that revenue. It could be as high as $16 million. Couple revenues that are doing pretty poorly. One is personal property replacement tax, PPRT. This is one of those revenues where we received, you can see, back in 2022, I believe it was, a little more than $5.5 million. And we're on track to receive just $2.5 million in that this year. So it is something we're keeping an eye on, along with real estate transfer taxes. Certainly, we've seen interest rates go up. We've seen that impact our housing sales, and so we've seen a pretty significant decrease in real estate transfer taxes compared to budget as well. So you can see with those projections in mind, not much has changed from what we had last month. There are two transfers here that were approved by the Finance and Budget Committee last week. And so that would be three unbudgeted expenses you see there. The purchase of the Little Beans property earlier this year, a transfer for the tower truck, and a transfer to the Special Assessment Fund. So all in, we're looking to finish the year with a general fund fund balance between $45 million and $52.3 million. So a very, very healthy fund balance, driven by really two things. $12 million of that is Northwestern Stadium permit revenue, and about $5.5 to $7.5 of that is staff vacancy savings. So we budgeted a 4% vacancy savings. We're actually staying closer to an 8% vacancy savings, so we're saving quite a bit of money on our vacant positions across the city. So if we were fully staffed and we didn't receive the Ryan Field permit revenue, you could take $20 million off of that projected fund balance. However, both of those things have happened, and so we do think that we'll finish the year in a really, really strong position, enabling us to kind of put the budget that you have in front of you today. So continuing with revenues, this shows where we budgeted revenues based on our projections this year. So you can see, for the most part, we're kind of staying within our range of where we expect revenues to finish this year. There's a couple, we've started to see sales taxes and home rental sales taxes really start to level out after several months of growth the last couple of years. And so the last couple of months, we've actually seen them come in lower than last year, the same month. So we're budgeting these a little cautiously because we've started to see them level off after a couple of years of very rapid growth. Outside of revenues within this budget, you can see that we've, the required annual contribution for public safety pensions increases by $4 million to $29.6 million. So prior to full funding of public safety pensions, the last year that we were on track from 90%, the contribution was $20 million. Last year, the contribution was $25.6 million. And now we're looking at a $29.6 million contribution to public safety pensions against the levy of $20 million, which means that $9.6 million difference comes largely out of general fund reserves. And we expect that contribution level to not go down. So that's something that the city is going to have to figure out how we make that contribution year over year. The $9.6 million is fortunately projected to be in reserves this year. Will it be moving forward? We'll have to keep an eye on that. Wage increases, the budget continues to include all contractual and non-union wage increases that were agreed to. Manager Stowe mentioned a couple of new positions at the beginning of the meeting. There's only three in the general fund, and two of those are offset by eliminating consulting, contractual services, as well as some additional revenue. And finally, operating expenses. So this is everything that's non-transfer related, non-personnel. Staff worked really hard with departments this year to contain this growth as much as possible. And we're very happy to say that operating expenses, so this is consulting, printing, advertising, all in is about $18 million in the general fund. That is going up by just 0.1% or $19,000. So we really took a look at where there's pockets of money that aren't being used, not being spent, but they're being budgeted. And we tried to use that to help account for any new requests as they came up. So we worked really, really hard to keep this growth as flat as possible. So how do we balance the budget this year? This walks through a few of the levers that we pulled in order to present a balanced general fund budget. One, I'm going to skip the general fund fund balance for now because it was kind of the last thing that we used to fill the gap. You can see we used Northwestern Good Neighbor revenue. So this budget includes the $3 million contribution from Northwestern. $1 million of that going to affordable housing, $500,000 of that going to sustainability, leaving $1.5 million to be used by the city at its discretion. Last year, that was used to offset the need for a property tax levy increase, and this year's budget uses that in the same manner, putting it in the general fund. Given where we're at with the vacancy savings, we, in consultation with Manager Stowe, discussed moving this up to a 6% vacancy rate. Just based on what we're actually seeing this year, we expect to finish around an 8% savings in our staff budgets. So we felt comfortable moving that to 6%. The transfer to the Equipment Replacement Fund, so for the second year in a row, the budget relies on ARPA investment income. So we're continuing to sit on this large cash balance of ARPA funding. It's generating interest to the tune of about $1.5 million in ARPA interest this year. As with last year's budget, we're proposing to use that for vehicle purchases. That's something that otherwise the general fund would have to take on, so we're able to defer that for at least one more year. You can see the additional required pension contributions above and beyond the tax levy, followed by some operating requests. The one position that's not offset by revenues or cutting expenses is that manager field services position in Public Works, which we can talk about later and answer any questions you may have. That left us with a $12.5 million hole that we've covered with general fund fund balance. When we talked earlier this year, a majority of the City Council felt pretty strongly we wanted to avoid a property tax increase as long as the reserves were available to do so. And so this proposed budget follows that and uses a general fund fund balance in order to be balanced. You can see, we find ourselves in a very good position at the end of this year, thanks in large part to the $12 million in Northwestern Stadium permit revenue and the additional staff savings. But unfortunately, absent some of these one-time influxes of revenue or surprise savings, there are concerns about working with this sizable of a structural deficit within the general fund. You can see, the $52 million is sort of the best-case scenario I presented earlier. If we see the $12.5 million draw on fund balance, that brings us down to $39 million. Absent any other changes and a flat property tax levy, that would have us looking at going below the reserve level in 2026. So again, something, we find ourselves in a good position this year to be able to pass a budget like this, but a lot of concerns with taking that approach. And that's why we proposed this menu of options that Hitesh alluded to, that we'll talk a little bit about later. Proposing some revenue ideas we've heard from members of the City Council were discussed internally to address at least some portion of this deficit as part of this budget. Property tax levy, so this shows our tax levy and how it's changed from 2023 to 2025. You can see, the city portion of the levy has remained very, very flat. We've done some slight changes within some of the individual levies here in order to maintain a flat levy. The general fund tax levy, we've increased by about $400,000. The Human Services Fund levy, so this is a fund that has about $5 million in budgeted expenses. And the only revenue for this fund really is just this property tax levy. It's the only thing we use to fund our Human Services Fund. And you can see it's built up a sizable reserve, but we've seen a lot of increases in expenses within this fund. We've added the CARES team, that's part of this fund now. So you can see the $3.6 million levy, we've been able to increase it with some reductions in some of the other levies. But some concerns here, very similar to the general fund. And this one's maybe even more so important because it relies so heavily on this property tax levy. You can see the two pension fund levies held flat. The debt service levy held flat even though we issued bonds this year. The debt service fund is sitting on a fund balance that allows us to be able to hold it flat, but that's only a one-year thing. So it's built up enough reserves to be able to cover the debt service and the bonds we issued this year. But definitely some concerns about how we're able to do that moving forward. This shows what the tax levy would look like if the reserves weren't available to cover the expenses within these funds. So you can see there are five levies that are leaning into reserves in order to continue to provide the programs and services and meet our pension and debt service obligations. So the general fund levy, the Human Services Fund levy, both which I just mentioned, the debt service levy, the $14.1 million is our actual unabated debt service requirement for next year. And you can see those are the actual police and fire pension requirements for next year. Were reserves not available in the general fund to cover that? And you can see, were those reserves not available and we wanted to move forward, we would be looking at about a 30% increase to the city's portion of property tax levy. It's a $14 million increase to the property tax levy. So you'd be looking at either that or some other combination of reductions to expenses or increases in other revenues in order to pay for the things that are included within this budget. Just a reminder, we have a few more slides on property taxes, even though they're not proposed for increase. We actually need to update this slide because, given the holding of the levy the last four years, we are now just 16% of the property tax bill in the city of Evanston. The library is just 3%, and Cook County and other taxing districts goes up to 14%. So for every dollar you pay in property taxes in Evanston, the city receives just 16 cents now. A couple of slides on property taxes in general. Evanston's property tax rate, earlier this year, the Finance and Budget Committee agreed to using the seven communities as comparable communities, based on their size and structure and services they provide. And so you can see, we've been using these throughout the year with the Finance and Budget Committee to show some comparisons in property taxes, overall spending per capita. And you can see Evanston has the lowest property tax rate of all of these communities. And the property tax rate on a $500,000, or the bill that you pay on a $500,000 home in Evanston is quite a bit less than the same value home in these other communities. Now granted, your $500,000 home in Evanston may look a little different than your $500,000 home in Arlington Heights or Bloomington, but there's a couple of these comps where the average home value is actually very, very similar to Evanston. So Park Ridge, I think we saw maybe a couple of the others where their median home value is actually higher than what Evanston's is. So let's skip over that one. This is another graph showing our property tax levy over the past 10, 12 years. You can see, holding the levy flat over the last five years. The dark blue bar shows the amount of the property tax levy that we have available to use for general operations. You can see the dark blue at the bottom is essentially the exact same as what the dark blue is today, meaning we have the exact same amount of money today for general operations from the property taxes we did 12 years ago. The overall levy's gone up slightly with a couple of big jumps in the middle, but really, most of that growth's happening within the public safety pension obligations, while most of the other levies have been held. Most of the other levies have been held completely flat since 2013. And this shows the percent of general fund expenses paid for with property taxes since 2013. You can see in 2013, 20% of our general fund operations, police, fire, public works, you name it, was paid for with the property taxes. Today, this budget, just 7.8% of property taxes being used to pay for general fund expenses. Moving on to other fee adjustments included in this budget, you can see there's really just these three outside, and no property tax increase. So really, these are the only changes to rates and fees that are included in the proposed budget. A 23.3% increase to water rates, offset by a 13.5% decrease to sewer rates. Results in an increase of about $5 a month for the average Evanston water sewer customer. Daryl King is here, and he can provide more detail on that if there's questions on this topic. But essentially, covering the cost of additional water main replacement, lead service line replacement, et cetera. And then a 7.5% increase to solid waste rates. Those were already approved as part of last year's ordinance. So these are included in the budget as well. It's about $22.50 a year for folks with a 95-gallon cart. Continuing just a little bit more on public safety pensions, as I said, this budget fully funds public safety pensions with $9.6 million coming from sources other than the property tax levy. You can see, this graph shows the increase in pension contributions since 2022, and we were at 90%. You can see the property tax levy is actually less than what it was in 2022, but the amount coming from other funding sources going from $605,000 up to $9.6 million in this timeframe. The $4 million increase covered by reserves, as long as those reserves are available to cover this contribution. Some additional slides on public safety pensions and how those are calculated. I'm going to move over to the new position slide briefly, so I don't know. There's six positions included in this proposed budget, four of them offset by grant revenues. So we've got the grants in the Sustainability Fund covering the cost of that position. The Health and Human Services Department has a grant covering the cost of a part-time ombudsman position in the Human Services Fund. Two positions in community development and one position in Public Works in the general fund. And then there's the one position in the water fund that has a hiring date of September 1st. So we've actually included it, but we're planning to defer recruiting for the position until later in the year as part of the budget. But essentially, it's a GIS technician intended to assist with lead service line replacements and the costs associated with that. Don't have time probably tonight to go deep into this menu of options, but I know the Finance and Budget Committee is interested in doing this at our next meeting later this month, and certainly open to any feedback that the City Council has on this list. But as Hitesh mentioned, we earlier this year heard from the City Council that you wanted some ideas as to how to address this deficit and when would we give you the budget, give you more options, some pathways, some ideas, some concepts that you can consider in order to reduce that structural deficit. So we do have that published online, a list of 38 ideas, revenue ideas that came from staff, as simple as a couple of ideas from community development to just... staff, as simple as a couple of ideas from community development to just examine permit fees, an increase by 5%, parks and rec, looking at existing permit fees, just many of the ideas that we've heard from other members of the city council as well are on this list. And so open to any and all feedback and happy to entertain any questions on those through budget memos or at these meetings. That is essentially it, and I'll open the floor to questions. This is our calendar looking forward, so we do have ward meetings scheduled with all nine ward members, joint meetings on October 30th, November 6th, November 7th. Got a handful of discussions at Finance and Budget Committee, additional the two public hearings here with City Council on October 28th and November 4th, culminating with an introduction of tax levy ordinances on November 11th, another Finance and Budget Committee meeting on November 12th with a targeted adoption date in late November. So with that happened, happy to open the floor, answer any questions. Do have actually one more slide. In summary, the proposed budget includes use of 12.5 million in general fund reserves to balance the general fund, and includes a flat city property tax levy for a fourth consecutive year, increase to water fees offset by reduction of sewer fees. That should be increased to solid waste fees. It continues to fully fund our public safety pensions. It assumes a 6% vacancy rate. The budget you have in front of you includes the full unprioritized CIP. More to come on that as part of the next special order business. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. The most fun thing about my job that no one else gets to see is the lights coming on and off again, the game theory of the light timing. It's great. Before I start calling on folks, I just want to say a few quick things. First of all, I, I'm sorry, I requested a change in the way in which we do this process, and I think Luke told me the first meeting about the 2025 budget happened in early January, or at least the first half of January of 2024. I know that it might have been a lot to sit down with all the different council members in advance of preparation for the budget, but I really do appreciate that, and I think it made a difference in us getting to this moment with something that council kind of is read in on and kind of prepared to discuss and shepherd to completion. So I know it's a lot on the entire budget and city team, but I really appreciate it, and I do think it helped a great deal. So thank you very much. I also just want to echo what Luke said before the presentation from the budget team, which is, we have a structural, well, I'll be more blunt, we have a structural deficit. That's just a fact. That's a true thing about how numbers work, and it's going to have to get dealt with eventually, and the longer we wait, the worse it's going to be. Now, we will be better off if we begin doing that necessary, hard, and sometimes painful work now. And I appreciate you giving a large menu of options. I think it's good for us to be as creative as possible about what we do to take on this challenge, but it's not a problem that's going to solve itself, it's not a problem that's going to be solved by appealing to kind of magic fairy dust and just finding, oh, what a fortunate thing that there is that $12 million line item of abuse and waste and fraud in the budget that we're going to cut out now and fix everything, instead of we're going to have to make a whole bunch of hard choices. And those choices will be just that much harder next year if we kick the can down the road one more year. So with that, Councilmember Kelly, followed by Reed, followed by Nusma.
Thank you. Thank you, Clayton. So we didn't, I don't think we discussed debt here so much, and I think that also adds a significant cost when we're paying to service our debt. And I think we're approaching half a billion if you take the fire, the public safety pension debt into account. So I think that's very important when we talk about what our, when we talk about the significant cost of fully funding the pensions this year with all the actuarial factors that come into play this year, it's going to be considerably more, but it would be, we'd be paying so much more in interest and debt on that. I think now, even of that 29 million, more than half of it is just the interest on that large debt that we have. So I think it's really important that we're real clear, you know, if we can get some real clear numbers that include our public safety pension debt, our GOBON debt, our IEPA loans, the whole package and where our debt stands, because that is a significant cost, paying the interest on debt. So I would just ask that we're really, we can get that, you know, for the 29th at Finance and Budget. And so on the page where you discussed our healthy sort of unassigned fund balance projected year-end at 52. So that, is that, so that would include every area where we could have surplus? I mean, does that include like interest, or does interest fall into revenue?
Yeah, the interest projections are accounted for within that revenue line. So we know interest has come in better than budget this year, and so that is part of the math feeding into that low high projection for revenues. It's a smaller number, so I didn't highlight it as much as I did like PPRT and sales taxes and whatnot, but it's being estimated and projected in that line.
Okay, because I saw that we, I think we estimated projected 825,000 across all funds in, according to, I was just looking at your last monthly report in August, 825,000 for interest, but yet we're already at the, just at the end of August, we were exceeding four, almost, we're almost at 5 million in interest across all funds.
And that's across all funds too, so like 1.5 million of that's in the ARPA fund, and so I highlighted that we're using that for the vehicles next year. Another portion that's in water or sewer, we just issued the bonds and CIP, so they are sitting on a nice amount of cash that can be invested too. So it's not necessarily in the general fund.
So it's, okay, so in terms of, so it's not necessarily that additional, which will probably, if it was already almost 5 million at the end of August, the, you know, additional interest that we're earning, I'm guessing that in four more months, we're talking another million or so. So that's a lot of extra revenue generated just in the investments and the interest that we're making than what we projected. So can you, in the motor fuel tax, I know we projected 15,000, we're at the end of August, we were already at, just in interest, we were already at 225,000 in interest in motor fuel tax. What happens to that? Can the motor fuel tax interest, that surplus?
I think the motor fuel tax interest is restricted, and you have to use it in accordance with motor fuel tax state rules.
So we just generated an extra 225,000 that stays in there.
It stays in that fund that we can use for purposes outlined by the state.
Because that's a hu, I mean, we really generated a ton of interest more than what we budgeted this year. And so I think it's, I mean, we raised our taxes on our gas, and I'm just, I just think it's important to note that, millions and millions and millions more than what we had budgeted for. And then, so I think it's important to note that, that the total amount of extra interest that the city earned compared to what we budgeted altogether, because I'm guessing it's going to exceed $6 million or $7 million more than what we.
We can, we can do a budget memo on that outlining where it is and whether it's restricted based on the fund in which it's being generated. That's helpful.
I think that's it for now. And then the debt, also, if you could discuss that. And then for the real estate, oh, the last one, the transfer tax stamps, is that the total amount there? Is that, is that, that's everything that we?
This line is just general fund. So there's a separate million being generated in real estate transfer taxes. The first million goes to reparations. Everything after that is showing up here on this table.
Okay, so the real estate transfer tax, that's just the amount that we put into the general fund from there? And will we see real estate transfer tax? I mean, shouldn't we say like, have some annotation there that there's more than what is just there?
Potentially, but it's, the city council's passed the ordinance to set it aside to reparations. This table is attempting to show where our general fund is projected to finish at the end of the year, so we're focusing only on those general fund revenues.
Okay, are there other lines there where there's funds that aren't, like some are there, but they're also in another category? Or is it only that?
Looking at those revenues, that is the only example other than property taxes, where obviously property taxes go into some other funds too. Real estate transfer taxes is the only one of these listed that's split.
That's not all there.
It's not all here.
Okay.
And we do mention in our monthly report, on a monthly basis, how much total real estate transfer tax has been generated.
Okay, and I would just ask, when we're looking at like how we're going to, you know, fund our pensions, that that should be considered non-discretionary and just like repairs, our parks, all these should just be part of our regular budgets and we should do, I would ask that we do a really better job or take a harder look at the council, not so much staff, at looking at what is discretionary, so that we really do tend to things like our, so we don't continue, so I'm so glad we're stopping, you know, the increased debt on our pensions now, but so that we continue on that track and we take care of our parks and do all those things and really look at what is actually discretionary, where can, where do we really not need to spend, you know, the extra millions of dollars rather than, I think that's what we need to look at first. So that's all. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Nusma, followed by Safredon.
Thank you. Maybe one of the primary offenders for the game theory there earlier. So one, I want to thank the budget team for their work here, and I want to, and please correct me with updated numbers if I say anything wrong, but I first want to share what I think is the good news that this council has done and with the support of staff. Thus far, we've rolled off about $30 million in bond debt, correct?
Right around there, yes.
At this point, yes. So $30 million we've rolled off in bond debt. We haven't gone back to the taxpayers for an increase in property taxes this term. We've made investments that have not been made historically in our parks, in our public safety pensions, in people through our reparations program, in sustainability. And again, we've done this without raising the property tax levy. And part of that is due to our ability, due to the funds that we were granted with ARPA, and I think this council used the vast majority of those funds quite responsibly and to help us meet those goals. But, so I think that's the good news. One of the things that I hear people say over and over, and even some of my colleagues here on the dais, is that we need to cut expenses. But I never hear, at least in a substantial way, maybe I'll see 75,000, $50,000 here and there, but I've never seen a substantial recommendation for how we cut expenses, which, if that's what folks want, I'm really curious to see ideas and hear it. I've thrown one out there as far as cutting expenses. I think it's about time in the next few years for us to evaluate the way that we collect trash. It sounds kind of out of the norm, at least here in America, at least here in Illinois, but you look at other countries, you look at other jurisdictions across the United States, particularly rural ones, and not everyone sends a trash collector to everyone's house to pick up the trash that they themselves brought to their house. In a number of European countries, there are centralized stations within neighborhoods where folks who brought the trash to their house themselves then take the trash themselves to a more centralized location. We could save millions of dollars by doing this. My recollection is that our trash collection services cost us $7 million, is that correct, annually? And then you tack on the infrastructure that goes along with that, you probably get that number up to $10 million a year. So I think by changing the way we collect trash, you know, we could save four-plus million dollars easily in the long run by doing this, certainly some initial investment upfront. What do we bring in annually with the solid waste fees?
We can do a more detailed number on that. So the number on expenses is 7 million. On revenues, residential refuse revenue is about 3.5 to 4 million dollars.
So it's a.
About $4 million from residential refuse collection.
Yeah, so it's a 3 to 4 million dollar subsidy that we provide for trash collection. Again, substantial savings could be made there by changing the way that we collect trash, and I think it may be even be healthier for folks to get those extra steps in by walking their trash down further, a little bit further down the street.
I'll note there are some other revenues, I'm sorry to cut you off. There are a couple others, about maybe 5 million or so, but again, we can do a memo on it if you're interested.
Certainly, please. Some of the, one of the changes that was proposed is to the water fund and sewer, and our sewer fund. I understand that we are, obviously the state put a mandate on us that is difficult. We're on lead service lines, that is work that needs to be done, but our sewer lines are important too. And I fear that we are reducing our revenue on sewer lines and thereby increasing the chance that we will have sewer line failures, and this means that folks' basements are flooding, that there's all kinds of issues that are happening in their homes, and we're doing it right. We want to make sure we're making investments in clean water, safe drinking water, but I don't want to do that at the expense of ensuring that our sewer lines are taken care of. I don't know if I have a recommendation yet on that, because we also want to keep costs down for residents, but we also don't want to decrease the investments that we're making in our communities for our sewer lines. The other side is increasing revenue. This, I'm hard pressed, I don't know if any of my other colleagues have proposed new revenue ideas, and I will wrap up here, but we, I think I've been the only one to propose new revenue, and we need to increase revenue. We need to potentially cut expenses, but I'm not seeing where it's coming from. So to me, that means we need to increase revenue. I'll just throw a few out there. Third-party delivery fee, stormwater fees, increasing the bag tax, which has been successful for us, our surface lot permits, delivery fleet tax, these are things that can increase revenue. There are a couple more, but with this, those alone combined with a few others would be over a million dollars annually in revenue, and that revenue would be not only burdened, the burden would be spread out not only to our residents here in Evanston, but to folks who utilize our services here from Chicago and Willmet and other places. So I really think we need to focus on equity and shifting the burden from Evanston residents to other folks, and so I'll end there. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Safredon, followed by Harikaris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be expeditious here. I want to say thank you to staff. I like the procedure we're following this year where there was discussion much earlier in the year, and so I think this budget season will be a little bit less fraught than in previous years, so I appreciate that. I want to just express my thanks for limiting the operational requests to only a 0.1% increase. And we have a really, really tight budget here, and the fact that we've been able to keep our property tax levy flat for, you know, depending on how you count it, essentially six years in a row, when during that period of time, inflation has been significantly higher than it historically has been over the last 20 to 30 years. I think that's, it's been great, but it's setting ourselves up for some very difficult decisions. So if you could go to page 14 on that presentation, and here's what I mean by difficult decisions, but for our robust fund balance, we'd be looked, that we're drawing down on, we'd have to increase our levy by 30% to keep doing the work that we need to do. And so, you know, yay for us, we've got a fund balance this year, looks like we're going to have one next year, but as you showed, you know, so starkly in the other slide, that fund balance isn't going to be here three years from now. So we are going to have to either increase revenues significantly or cut costs significantly, not just by trimming here and there, but by, you know, using an axe rather than a scalpel. We still don't have enough money for all of our CIP needs, and we're going to talk about CIP next, so I'll, you know, reserve some comment on that, but I'm specifically concerned about parks that have been under-invested. Lead service lines, thanks to the change in federal regulation, we are now on an expedited timeline. We had been planning on replacing lead service lines over 20 years, had a funding policy kind of geared in that direction. Now it's either going to be 10 or maybe 18. Now it's either going to be 10 or maybe 16 years. So not right now. But I want to talk about some alternative funding paradigms so that we are not really hurting the water ratepayers, you know, very acutely over a shorter period of time. Turning to revenue options, by my count, there were 39 suggestions from staff. My quick take of those 39 options, nine were, would get my strong support. 13 were a maybe, 15 were a probably not, and two were a definitely not. So I won't go through them all right now. I'll share that feedback with staff separately, just to be mindful of everyone's time. And then a couple of questions right now about the headcount. You mentioned an ombudsman position. If you could elaborate what that entails as well as the council administrative assistance is something that exists in this budget. And I'm not sure what's proposed for next year.
Good day, members of the city council. Ike Ogbo, Director, Health and Human Services Department. I'll address the question about the ombudsman. The City of Evanston Health and Human Services Department, as you know, is a sort of fine health department. We are pretty much under the regulation of the state in administering the ombudsman program. Given the number of beds that we have in Evanston and having our unique program, we are mandated to have a certain number of ombudsmen in Evanston.
That answers my, it's long-term care ombudsman that we're talking about. Okay. I get that. I understand that. Thank you. It's not a constituent services ombudsman that I could have help me out with pothole requests and garbage can requests.
This is for long-term care.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Absolutely.
And then the administrative assistance for the city council.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. We've been reviewing in-house internally to determine if there is existing capacity on staff to be able to absorb those duties. And so we'll, we'll be making a decision in the next couple of weeks whether we can achieve the responsibilities of that job description in-house as opposed to requiring an additional FTE that was previously proved.
Great. Thank you. I could go on, but I will end it there for now.
Councilmember Safredan, followed by Harikaris.
Thanks. Clayton, thank you for your work. I appreciate that. As we go through this process, we're going to talk about various revenue increases and reductions that can happen throughout the budget. Whatever people come up with needs to be able to get the requisite number of votes. So I'd like to just start with two that probably have a decent likelihood of success. In terms of recapturing credit card processing fees, there's, this is listed here as a $500,000 possible recapture. Is there a way, and this may not, if you're not the right person, just tell me. But is there a way to do that while providing people an option to pay in a way that would allow them to avoid the convenience fee? And in all the proposed settings where we would pass the credit card processing fees along to the payer?
We do offer alternatives to credit cards, I believe, as, at least for all the programs in this, in the collector's office that I'm aware of, people have alternative options on how they pay. So they can avoid the fee if they choose.
Okay. So that $500,000 number is pretty solid?
Yeah, we pay about a million a year in credit card fees. About a half a million of that is in the parking fund related to parking. The other half a million is in the general fund related to parks and rec services, home real taxes, water, water bills. So it's about a half million in parking and a half million across everything else. So I think it might be in the menu twice, one way of helping parking and one way of helping the general fund.
Okay. But you, and again, if you're not the right person, but you don't foresee there being a huge cost to implementing that potential budget savings?
We, we have some steps on our end that we would need to take if the city council agreed with it. We would need to do some things on our end in order to implement it.
Okay. But you don't think it would cost us $498,000?
It would not cost us $498,000.
Got it. Okay. And then the other one is in the menu, you know, it talks about enforcing late payment for wheel tax. Are there other instances where we're owed money and we aren't collecting it in a timely way? In the past, there's been an issue with parking tickets where, you know, you'd have somebody lived here for a while, ringing up a lot of parking tickets and we would, if they, if they were gone, we'd stop trying to collect it. Do we have any low hanging fruit like that that you're aware of?
So we have the parking tickets, yes, which are unpaid. In the past, I didn't know, we have heard from the council member to kind of, we don't send kind of pretty much to the collection agency, you know, putting the undue burden on any residents because then it becomes illegal. So we try, like we send out a couple of letters and all that if we can collect. Even we use the collection agency for the ambulance outstanding dues. Obviously for water outstanding, we have the water shut-off things. And for parking boots and all that, right, we have the boot option. So, but we do have tickets. But in the past, yeah, I mean, we could collect more if we have a tit into the kind of policy that yes, we can send it to the collection agency and start collecting money, whether it's the Evanston residents or the non-residents.
I mean, I, I want to be mindful of the quality of life issues that are related to things like that. But there, and I don't know the answer. I'll request a budget by my, but there are probably a lot of people who owe us money who are outside of the reach of the barnacle, who aren't Evanston residents. But for whatever reason, during their time in Evanston incurred a lot of fees for us to not collect with a structural deficit where we're, one of the things on the table is to increase property taxes. I think that's something that we need to consider. And I think, you know, to the mayor's point, I mean, this is structural, this budget, which again, like nicely done. But it is buttressed by one-time revenue and reserves, and that's not a sustainable way to do things. So I think as we go through proposed reductions and revenue increases, we should start with the lowest impact, least controversial ones and work our way through. So I would just submit that the credit card processing fee and increased collection of fines that have been incurred are two pretty low-impact ways. And it'll get harder as we get to the top of the pyramid. But it would seem like those are pretty non-controversial, easy ways to start chipping away at this.
I mean, I agree. And even we are exploring one more option, which is called local debt recovery through the state government. But again, this is against the income tax refund. When you file the Illinois state return, and if we have submitted the file, they would deduct out of those things. But again, we are exploring that how many people, you know, still in Illinois filing the return and entitled for a refund bigger than our outstanding dues. So
So that's more of a, that's a more difficult calculation than just figuring out the credit card transaction fee. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Harikaris, followed by Ravel.
I'd also like to reiterate thanks to staff for the process we went through this year. I think it's been a lot smoother and we've gotten to, you know, a place where I think we have less work later in the process than we have had in years prior. I will reiterate what councilmember Safredan has just said about the credit card fees. That's like the easiest way to pass along some of, some of the costs and close this deficit window. I will chime in and also say that I also feel like this year we have to do some revenue increases in order to close that structural gap. I, we spoke about, I have a referral to waive permit fees for senior, income-qualified seniors. Something we delayed in human services because of potential impact on the budget. I would be in support of community development, reviewing and increasing the permit fee structure. From what I understand, it hasn't been looked at and raised in a long time. And maybe rolling in some of these reliefs for seniors, permit waives, waivers in that, during that process. We also, you know, I had an interesting suggestion from a resident talking about parking downtown and asking if there was some way to, if you've paid your wheel tax to potentially waive the first 15 minutes, you have 15 minutes free parking, maybe. And when talking to staff, that might make sense with the parking increase downtown. We raised, I don't know what people's appetite for raising parking fees would be. But if that, that would be a potential revenue source, I would be willing to look into if we had a way to make it a little bit easier on folks who do pay their wheel tax. But I agree, we have to start with the, the easy ones and try to close this gap.
Councilmember Ravel.
Excuse me. I'll echo my colleagues' compliments to our team for all the hard work on preparing the budget documents for us. I, I also want to recommend for everyone to read the budget request from staff memo because it provides a really interesting, I think, behind-the-scenes look at the many initiatives that staff is working on that don't necessarily come to council. It tells us, staff is working on a lot of different ways to improve service delivery. And anyway, I just, I recommend that to everyone to read. I, I guess I have a question. I don't know if it's mayor or the, or staff. So we have a whole list, two and a half pages of potential revenue ideas and budget cuts. And so should we be individually sending them to staff? How, how will staff then know whether there's a significant groundswell for one or, one or another? Yeah, Clayton?
Well, I'll certainly let Manager Stowe touch, chime in. But yeah, if you want to send them to us, I mean, we would obviously need a majority of council to send ideas to us and give us some feedback on which of those 39 ideas or something not on the list they like. So we can continue throughout the coming weeks of kind of packaging it into something that maybe makes sense. So I don't know, Manager Stowe, you have anything to add?
Yeah, that's exactly correct. I would just say that the sooner that we can get some consensus building on, on some of the 39 items on that list would be great. Seems like there's consensus building, like for example, on the credit card fees. But if we can do some of that tonight and then two weeks again, two weeks from tonight again, that'd be great.
Okay. Because I do, I do think several of the revenue generating ideas you have suggested, some of the permit fees, et cetera, that, that we could raise that have not been raised in a long time. And I'm just going to go on record as an outlier here. I do think in the, given the magnitude of the structural deficit facing us and this really huge capital improvement challenges that are ahead of us, police and fire headquarters, civic center, et cetera, and, and the parks that we need to be investing in, we should not be chipping away at our, at our reserves. So I, I would go on record as saying, start now with a small increase in our property tax. So we can, it doesn't such a huge shock when we have to really deal with it coming in the next year or two. I guess that's probably my main, my main idea. Thank you.
So at this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time. We'll go back to second opportunities, beginning with the person whose time has not expired. Councilmember Nusma with a minute and a quarter left.
Thank you. I don't need that all. I just, I'll second or third the increase in the, or recovering the credit card fees. Those were two of my nine strong yeses. To that list, I will also add increasing the fees for movie permits. Not super high-dollar amount, but I think we have some room to go up there. So thanks.
So at this time, there are still two people who have spoken before who are requesting to speak again. Just for everyone's situational awareness, they're both out of time. Obviously, we're talking about the budget, so I'll call on them. But would ask them to both try to keep their remarks contained with that in mind, beginning with Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So I agree with the credit card fees and collecting outstanding fines. I think we have to be really careful with increasing fees and that's just another form of taxing. So I think it just, we are facing an issue of affordability in the city. So credit card fees and, and, and the fines, yes. And then I just had a question of clarification when Councilmember Reed mentioned 30 million rolling off. That was, that was as of the last two years when we didn't issue debt, correct? But now we've issued 33 more. So it's, so it, so it had, okay.
Every year, we kind of pay off around 10 to 12 million in principal.
Right. So we haven't reduced our debt. We've increased it by a couple million since we, since we incurred more debt this year, 33 million more. So I just want to make that clear. I was very happy. As of last year, we had reduced our debt.
But just to, like overall, like since we last issued, not considering '24, in '21 when we issued the bonds, we rolled off like 10 to 11 in '21, then again, '22, '23, and this year. So we are kind of rolling off roughly 42 million or so. And I think we added, I think, 33 million into the bond. Yeah.
Okay. So I just want to clarify that. And then, so with the inflated budget that you discussed earlier, how, you know, I know we were, our expenses were inflated by about 107, but that it was not, you know, that, that was okay. But what I also understood is that we adjust our, our reserve is based on our budgeted, on our adopted budget and not on our, as you confirmed before for me, not on our actual budget. So a way to impact that structural deficit would be to, to budget our reserve based on our actual budgets, to have more of an idea. Because when we budget a reserve based on if it's 100 million too high, that's a lot of extra reserve money that doesn't appropriately reflect our real budget.
So general fund, like right now, we are in the budget process for '25. So when you say that what would be the reserve, we don't know the '24 numbers yet. And it would be like sometime in February, March even, you know? We would have some preliminary idea that was, so that's why we say, okay, what is our budgeted general fund expenditure for '25? And calculate 16.66% based on that number.
Right. Right. So inflating, artificially inflating our reserve as well, our needed reserve. So I would just ask that we really do a better job of relying on our previous year's actual budget so that we don't continue to inflate our budgets and inflate the reserve that we think we need to have. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I'm not going to argue the point about the $30 million roll-off. I, I do think that, you know, since it has been our policy to add about, you know, several, the 10 to 12 million dollars in debt per year, I'd still say that we've rolled off what would have been $30 million in debt. But I, I hear you. One thing I want to, and one thing I want to be sure is, I join Councilmember Harikaris in support for participatory budgeting to be in this year's budget. I want to highlight that now, and I think we need to get that in this year's budget. We saw folks come up to the podium earlier and highlight the myriad benefits of participatory budgeting. And so I would encourage us to include that in this year's budget. Also, the vacancy rate, I have a concern with us looking at a 6% vacancy rate because I think it encourages us to not fill those vacancies. Particularly, I'd love to look at which of those vacancies are potentially revenue-producing and make sure we fill those. But I'd, I'd actually like to see that placeholder come down from the 6% to maybe the 4% that we had again this year. Again, it doesn't change anything. If we can't fill the positions over the year, then we still have the savings. But at least we have budgeted for those positions to be filled and hopefully encourage the city manager and the staff to fill those positions because residents need those services or, or we just need to take those positions out of the budget in the first place. I want to respond to a comment that my colleague said about reserves. Again, when we have reserves that are 20, 30 million dollars above our, when we have excess reserves that are 20, 30 million dollars above our reserve policy, that is money that has been taken out of our community, that residents don't have in their pockets to pay bills, to, you know, earn interest, whatever the heck they want to do with that money. And the city is hoarding it and giving it to the banks. And so I don't think that is a positive thing, that we have tens of millions of dollars in excess reserves. I think our reserve policy is good. We need to keep that. But certainly above that, it should actually be something that we should be concerned about when we have exorbitant excess reserves. So I think we need to change our thinking around that. And then lastly, with the credit card fees, I'm, I'm fine with recouping the credit card fees. But again, those are fees that our residents tend to pay, right? For, you know, most of these services. And so when we look at, you know, 400, was it 400,000, 500,000, $500,000 in credit card fees? card fees versus raising the bag tax, which, yes, residents pay that, but they can avoid it by bringing a bag. And then, so we're going to raise fees on credit card, which I, again, I support, but not on things like the bag tax, because we believe that it's, you know, maybe politically untenable. We're actually doing the wrong thing, because, one, folks can avoid the bag tax. Folks can, a lot of folks outside of Evanston come into Evanston and shop at our stores. And there's an environmental impact to this. And so we need to really, as we're looking at our new revenues, look at it holistically and with equity in mind and with our sustainability goals in mind and all of the other things that we care about. We don't want to make folks pay more to send their kid to camp and not make folks pay more to pollute our environment, right? And so I think we really have to make sure that we're, you know, thinking deeply about these things and not just going for the easiest levers to pull, seemingly, when those levers could be taking more money out of folks' pocket in a manner that is, one, potentially unavoidable, and, two, you know, less equitable and not truly based on impact that they are having, negative impact that they're having on the community. Again, like, things like lowering parking rates or not increasing parking rates. We have serious infrastructure costs that are associated with maintaining our roads, maintaining these service lots. Those are the kind of things that we need to be charging residents additional and non-residents particularly additional monies for, so we can close this budget gap, not things like increasing the cost of paying for day camp for your kid. So thank you.
With a minute 45 left, Councilmember Saffron.
Sure. And Clayton, don't get up yet, because this might be a Director Thompson question. She's not here. When we talk about the potential revenue increases for charging more for programs, what are we measuring? How are we establishing what is the correct rate to charge? Do you know, I mean, the number, there's a number here, but, I mean, are we measuring that against what other committees charge for similar programs? Are we looking at ability to pay? And again, if it's more appropriate for a later, oh, hey, Matt, sorry, dude. I mean, if it's if it's more appropriate for me to request a budget memo, I'm happy to do it. But I think, like, with the credit card fee thing, just as an example, we're looking for places where we're out of step. And so when we look at what potential capacity there would be for raising fees, how are we measuring that?
City Manager Stowe, Mayor Piss, City Clerk Mendoza, Council, Matt Poole, Deputy Director, Parks Recreation. So we're basing the the how much we're how much we're charging for residents based off of the direct costs that it costs us to run particular programs. And so depending on the program or the 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 cost to run that program would be what would determine whether we were to increase it by 10% or by 5%.
Okay.
So more expensive would be a lower rate.
Okay. And again, I can ask, I can request a memo or you can give a more, but if you know something, are there spots where you see us charging significantly less than what the cost to provide this service is?
Depends on, yes, there are there are places where we could recover some more costs based on what we're charging. And a lot of those things reside around rental rates and, you know, things of the nature. We would not promote trying to charge more for summer camp.
I mean, yeah, it becomes a policy question. We're not trying to, I mean, we subsidize parks programming because that's what a community does. But, you know, I think as it relates to monthly park, things things where we're a market participant and we're not charging what it costs to cover that are things that are worthy of examination. And so our custom memo, and I appreciate, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I just wasn't sure, like, where the number that was in the budget memo came from.
So the number in the budget memo comes from our, like, we took a look at all of our, what we charge depending on the program and or the rental costs, and then split that between a 5% and a 10%, which led to the memo of average on a 7% increase for our operation programs.
Okay. Thank you, man. I appreciate it.
Well, thanks very much to all for both a really helpful presentation and an excellent discussion. I would just kind of highlight the discussion that occurred in response to Councilmember Ravel's question. There's a bunch of ideas in the memo. You know, I think Councilmember Nusma had already kind of indicated he sort of has answers to his own views, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down, not sure. I think if everyone in council can at least generate some kind of initial instinctive reactions to these ideas and get those in the hands of staff relatively quickly, we'll have a sense of where there's momentum and where there are opportunities for us to make some inroads.
Yeah, point of information. Can I encourage? I mean, I think everyone's going to do that, but maybe it'd be helpful if staff just sent out a poll.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
I mean, just did you just literally want to put those 34 ideas into? I don't know, I'm not going to say words anymore. But it's it's not hard to generate a Google survey that just does this. I mean, one of the great things about city council is that it takes a relatively low level of arithmetic competence to divide by 10. So the the outcomes will be around numbers.
Is there a motion relative to item SP2?
I'll move item SP2, proposed 2025 capital improvement project discussion.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves that we discuss the proposed 2025 capital improvement program. And Councilmember Nusma, seconds. And I believe we have a presentation here as well.
Yes, thank you, members of the council. My name is Laura Biggs, and I am the city engineer. So tonight, I wanted to walk you through the process we used to develop the capital program and what some of our challenges are that we are working to address in this year's capital. So just here is the rough schedule. I'm sure everybody's familiar with this, but I just wanted to point out that we begin the process in May and that as part of it, we do go ahead and we talked to a number of boards and commissions to get feedback on the program. So our internal process, May through July, is really involved. And we have over 40 staff members that participate in developing the capital program. Who are those staff members? Really, we're talking about primarily the maintenance staff as well as the user departments. So we typically see Parks and Rec staff, city manager's office staff, the administrative services staff, which includes IT and facilities, library, and of course, public works, where both engineering are housed and our public services bureau. So it is really quite a large endeavor. So many meetings that are happening and so many people involved. What are we looking at when we put together the program? And this is true for all of those 40 staff members that are involved, which is really looking, starting with last year CIP, what did we get done? What didn't we get done? Looking at the five, the next year on the five-year CIP to determine what is reasonable to pursue and what we need to modify. But in particular, I would say, these next few bullets, the ongoing maintenance challenges, the requests and concerns we receive through the 3-1-1 system, and the requests and concerns that come from CMO. Often, those are alderman requests that are filtered through the city manager's office to us. So that is where the user departments and the maintenance staff are truly invaluable, because a lot of things about, wow, this park, we're having a serious issue with this piece of equipment, is not something that the engineering staff necessarily knows. We really need to have that piece of information come from the maintenance group. They're also aware of where the community is really feeling that lack, as are our Parks and Rec department. So when we talk about it being a joint effort, it really is primarily the ideas are coming from these, the groups of the maintenance staff and the user departments, the operations staff. We also are looking at our adopted plans, like our streetlight master plan, the CARP plan, our ADA transition plan, as well as legal requirements. And the number one legal requirement that really impacts our CIP is LED service line regulations, which have a pretty intense rollout phase for us over the next 23 years. So those are primarily what we are looking at. And I just want to say thank you to all the staff that helped work on this, because it's really quite a large group of people. I'm just lucky enough to get to stand here, but most of the work is actually put together by others. And then in terms of our external process, we go to the Parks and Recreation Board, the ADA Advisory Committee, the Environment Board, and our Finance and Budget Committee. ADA, we have a transition plan, and we are ramping up our ADA improvements in general. The Environment Board to discuss CARP issues, the Parks and Recreation Board, and the Finance and Budget Committee, a little more self-explanatory. And the feedback, we do that to get a given opportunity for feedback, but also to let those boards and commissions know what's on the radar and if they have particular interests or something they would like to see changed, then that's the opportunity that we can do it prior to the adoption of the final CIP. So this year's capital improvement program is 86 and a half million dollars as proposed. It's divided into the same categories that you would typically see. We do include the library in this year's capital program, which is usually managed separately through the library program. Due to some staffing issues at the library department, they have a roof project that really is pretty urgent to get done. And so the Capital Bureau of Capital Planning is taking over that project for this year. But you can see that we have street resurfacing, transportation, parks miscellaneous, involves our, some of our environmental sustainability type projects that don't really fit neatly into one category, as well as public art, our facilities, water treatment, and library. This is actually a pretty big reduction since last year. Last year, we were around 111 million. And a big piece of that reduction has to do with the intake project, which we do have some work still to do on, but is starting to slow down a little bit. In terms of our funding, the original, wow, the text is small. The original, the thing that we're always concerned about is our GO bonds, which I think says 23.8 million dollars. This also is a reduction from when we first introduced the capital program last year's budget. We had a number of large projects in this year's budget, and we are continuing with new large projects in last year's budget. But some of these, like the Animal Shelter and Ecology Center, will be starting to wrap up as we go into 2025. And then the rest of the funds are really related to specific assets, or they are tied to specific geographies, like community development block grant or tax increment financing. The only thing that is really all free and clear, we can use it however we feel, are the GO bonds. And so how that comes into play in our capital program is that they end up being the primary support for Parks and Facilities project. Water plant has water fund, street resurfacing and transportation projects, we get a lot of motor fuel tax, we get a lot of federal grants, get a tremendous number of federal grants for our larger streetscape projects. But that stuff is just not available in Parks and Facilities. Parks gets an, we do have OSLAD grants, which happen maybe every, once every other year. Facilities really has almost nothing that assists us with paying for it. And so when we talk about the GO bond debt, and particularly like wanting to hold it constant over previous years, that is definitely a laudable goal, and I'm in no way trying to criticize that goal. But that goal was set by the GO bond that we sold 20 years ago. And if we sold $10 million in GO debt 20 years ago, that has the buying power of about $5.6 million today. So it really is something that, long term, we need to figure out how we want to fund Parks and Facilities projects, if we really want to make significant inroads into kind of the hole that we have for those types of things. Last year, I spoke of a number of challenges, and actually, there's really good reason to be encouraged on all of these things. We talked about LED service line replacement. We are required already, as soon as they pass the budget or pass the regulations for the state of Illinois in 21, we already in 2022 started to implement LED service line regulations. But the big push is starting. We're, right now, what we're dealing with is we're getting a lot of, not a lot, but some grant opportunities and low-interest loan opportunities, which we're taking advantage. So we're really increasing our LSRL program. In fact, it's about $9 million in 2025. But some of that money, in fact, much of that money is money that will be reimbursable through low-interest loans or grants. And then the legacy parks, we had 11 as identified last year. We actually completed or in the process right now of completing the renovation of two of them, which is really exciting. And we have two more on the horizon for 2025. And then our legacy facilities, where we had six challenging facilities, two of them we are wrapping up construction on now or early next year. Two, through the city council support, we have developed plans for that we will be rolling out over the next several years. And really, it's just the two civic center and police fire headquarters, which we are going to be doing some public engagement on coming up. And then we hope to wrap up that one as well by the end of the year. So some of our new CIP challenges, because the world is always dynamic, one thing we're really noticing a lot of, these are smaller, by the way, but still hard to get your hands around, the special assessment alley improvements. We have a number of alleys that are unimproved, meaning that they're gravel, there's no drainage system built into them. Our primary process of improving alleys is through a 50/50 cost share program with residents that's administered by the special assessments. And the city has, over time, mostly been pretty constant about budgeting $500,000 per year, which generally allows us to improve one or two alleys through special assessment. Unfortunately, over time, over the last nine years, the demand has gone up, and the wait list to get onto a special assessment alley program has only increased. So now we are at around 86 people on our waitlist. When they call and we say, okay, you will get a petition in seven to nine years, most likely, that is not a good customer service interaction that we have. And so knowing this is an issue, the staff wants to work at developing, getting a better handle on this and try to come up with more of a plan. The, we will do that in 2025. Meanwhile, you'll note from the finance or from the general budget presentation that finances transferred $1 million out of the general fund to start trying to address this, which should allow us to bring four to six alleys off of that waitlist. Sidewalk needs in the downtown business district, in the 80s and 90s, the Evanston went all in on using bricklayer sidewalks in all of our business districts. But those have proven to be very difficult to maintain and create an uneven surface. So over the past 15, 20 years, we've been removing all of the paper block sidewalks from our business districts, but we still have quite a number that remain in the downtown. And so we want to get a three- to five-year plan to remove all of those, the uneven surfaces. We get a tremendous number of complaints, concerns that it's a safety issue for some. And so to that end, we are budgeting additional money each year to really try to remove, get through those downtown business district sidewalks. Then Fountain Square, we actually previously discussed. The one thing I wanted to add, we are planning on moving forward with the replacement. Right now, we're trying to reach out to some fountain repair companies and talk to some engineering firms, just to make sure we understand what our best methodology is for moving forward with that replacement next year. And then one of our challenges that we've been doing, and this is somewhat complex and is not meant to be an indictment on public engagement. I mean, one of the great things about Evanston is how engaged our public is in the administration and running of the city, how things get developed. And we have really huge successes, like Independence and Laramore Park under construction now, where really, the community came in, the community identified the need for being able to support the business district with improvements at Independence Park, and they came up with options for what, how they thought would best work. That was a great process and really shows the strength and intelligence of the community that we have. But that process does take a lot of resources. And there's been a lot of discussion about how our neighboring park districts don't necessarily spend the same kind of dollars we do on park improvements, and particularly in consulting services. And a lot of that really is driven by the public engagement process. So I think one of our challenges this past year was that we really looked at, how do we reduce consultants? And what we found is that just results in us not really getting the needed work done. So we want to look at how we can strategically use consultants to best leverage the staff that we have and really create the best work that we can developing the projects that we want to. So that unfortunately is not necessarily the So that unfortunately is not necessarily the ideal thing. But it is, I think, the way that what we're seeing of the community demand, unless we are directed otherwise, that is how we would choose to proceed so that we can truly support what the community and the city council are trying to accomplish. So prioritization, we, we provided a list, like a global list of proposed capital needs that were developed by our maintenance and operations staff and all the ways we discussed earlier in this presentation. And wanting to simplify this, because I think the city council is pretty aware of the process at this point. We talked about it a lot in the last couple of years. We, we wanted to piggyback on what we've already learned from working with the city council, developing budgets. And so to that end, we sort of divided projects into three buckets. One is projects that are all restarted. At no point has the council ever said, let's stop a project that's already ongoing. It's really important that we not waste resources by doing that. So we just made a list of all the projects that have already started prior to January first, twenty twenty-one, or twenty twenty-five, excuse me. Then projects that are meeting the criteria we've used in the past for prioritizing. So that is, again, based on feedback we've gotten in the past from city councils to some of the best ways to identify needed projects. And then the third are the remaining projects that don't meet those criteria, but meet specifics, community goals or needs. And so we did the list for projects already ongoing. It's about seven point six million dollars, I believe, in GO bonds. The pri- criteria we use for the second bucket, additional prioritized projects, are the same that we've used in past years. Those projects, we're doing an annual investment, immediate life safety regulatory requirements, significant non-GO but fund, you know, significant non-debt issuance. And then our building envelope projects, because they generally are necessary to prevent ongoing building damage. And then the legacy infrastructure that we've talked about is one that we've gotten a lot of support from the council in trying to deal with these challenging project, challenging infrastructure issues. So there is a separate third list of other potential priority projects. One of the challenges to this list is that all of these projects meet a pretty significant need. And so they wouldn't be in the capital program if they were not on the list. So I'm not advocating that we don't do these projects, but they are the projects that we have to think seriously on if we're going to include them. And then looking at our funding by those categories, our ongoing, I'm sorry, I misstated. The ongoing projects, it's about seven point one million dollars in GO bond issuance. The new priority projects, ones that have not yet started, but would begin in twenty twenty-five and would, but meet the priority criteria that we've used in the past, add another eleven point nine-ish million dollars in GO bond debt. And then other potential projects are the additional four point eight. And you can see that there's also other dollar values associated with the non-GO bond debt that are driving the overall cost of the program. But in general, most of the scrutiny in the past has been on those GO bond debt funded projects. So next steps, I'm very interested in hearing any feedback that the city council might provide. That could include removing projects, you know, maybe the applying, blanket applying of criteria has captured something that's really just not as valuable to the community that we feel like it could wait or whatever, that, or taking those projects that didn't really make it into the prioritized list and moving them in the other direction and making sure those things are covered. I'm happy to hear feedback either way or anything else. But assuming that feedback comes either tonight or in the very near future, what the staff will do, be them work with the city manager's office to filter through that feedback and develop a final complete CIP less than what is probably included in the budget, that has removed some of those projects off those lists. And then we'll make that available to city council. So, so that they understand that prior to adopting the budget. So that is my presentation at this point. I'm happy to hear feedback or if it is, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Council member Saffronin, followed by Hatakatis, followed by Reed, followed by Kelly, followed by Nusma.
Thank you, thank you, Laura. I appreciate your clarification of the public engagement piece. It sounds like the, the issue isn't so much public engagement as kind of haphazard, inconsistent, off-schedule public engagement. Is there a way to streamline that, to make it more cost efficient and get feedback earlier, you think? And one of the consequences of us not investing in parks, for example, regularly is that when your park hasn't been invested in for thirty years, you have a lot of pent-up ideas and you want to tell people. And like ideally, i- if we can get into a rhythm of doing these more routinely, it will get less pent-up demand. But is there a way that you can think of that would be efficient, not hold up the process, but still allow for public engagement? And I, you know, when it comes to a park, it's like you've got the immediate residents, you've got various boards and commissions that may have things to say. You have park users who are not necessarily immediate residents, but like in the case of James Park, everybody has something to say because it's a community park. Is there a framework you can think of that would allow for a community engagement, but not lead to the increased costs that you outlined?
Well, that's a great question. And to some extent, we tried to do that this year a little bit. But where we, what we find is that when people start having emotions, totally valid emotions, and they want to have more interaction, that it has been the preference of the city council members involved to promote more interaction. And sometimes that, if the consultant is involved particularly, then we have to pay them. That's how it works. So that's where we're seeing some of this. I do think that public engagement is important. In particular, we have those huge park renovations, which Cartwright, for example, will be happening this year. There's a lot of needs that really need to be investigated. Versus if you're resurfacing courts, I mean, we actually, the only public engagement we would do at all is really to go to Parks and Rec Board and say, here's the courts we plan to resurface. It's more like a decision of like, it's, these courts have reached their time. So in those cases, we're not doing it. And the parks projects all sort of run a range there. But I mean, certainly we can set target goals, you know, if we all want to agree that, well, for things that are just changing out playground equipment, we're going to restrict it to one, we can do that. But anytime we start planning to do more than one public engage, or public engagement, it really exceeds the ability of the staff to manage it because it takes so much time.
And like, when you say public engagement, do you mean a meeting? Or do you mean like a process? Because I think part of it is we can gather information from people. You know, and I've talked to Luke about this, like in terms of, I mean, people can give input, not on a finite date, but over a period. And then we would have more meaningful engagement, but we wouldn't be having multiple meetings, redundant meetings. You know, because we're not being like, okay, now let's move on to the slide. What color should that be? I mean, like, we're, we're pretty much saying, this is what we're going to do. Does anybody have any reason why this is a bad idea? And I'll just tell you, like, particularly with Cartwright, like, it's a unique park in the sense that it's used by a lot of senior citizens because of Westminster Place being right there. So it's really important that the walking paths be smooth and that there be benches at what is probably more of a close interval than would be recommended by a consultant who didn't realize that. Although it's not a secret, like Westminster Place is right there. But, you know, there's also the issue with the walking path is the pseudo sidewalk for one side of the street there. I mean, there's a lot of things that could come from community engagement, but there aren't like niche, I never thought of that things. And I think if we had a longer engagement period with a more consolidated engagement process, we could get the, like, valuable feedback and avoid some of the delays that you're pointing out are kind of productive to getting the stuff done.
I think it's important to, to make, to really make a distinction between a park like Cartwright, like McCollough was, like Independence was, where some of these, I mean, these are neighborhood parks. But when we go in, because so much has deteriorated, it's going to be a very big change. There's no way around that. Like, the whole park is going to change. Even if we put it back exactly the way it was before, it's going to look wildly different. And when the city is investing that kind of money, I think it is really important to make sure that we bring the residents along with us and provide them what meets their needs. I mean, children, the number of children and their ages change, the, you know, life evolves and the uses evolve. And I think that is really critical when we're putting in that kind of money, to put in the extra money to do the right public engagement. But when we're talking about smaller investments, it's not going to be such a dramatic change. And so I think being able to just get simple feedback, meetings are more expensive than surveys in general, although it's not an absolute. So yeah, we can look at maybe other ways of getting some of the feedback. But I, I don't think the goal is ever to disenfranchise the residents. And it's, you know, we feel strongly that it's, it's their money, but also it's their neighborhood. And we never want to be doing something that's going to be a harm. So it's important to get their feedback.
Yeah, gotcha. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it, Laura. I don't have anything else, but thank you.
Council member Hatakatis, followed by Reed, followed by Kelly, followed by Nusma.
So in the short time I've been up here, I've, the backlog of work we have to do on our facilities and buildings and parks, it's, I was not unaware, I was not aware of it before, sitting up here and getting these reports. And it's something I've been kind of thinking of, like, how do you solve this problem? It's like a big hole we're like digging ourselves out of. One thing I think we heard from, you know, a community group that has shown how to do community engagement and really gets great ideas from the community and I think could help us in this. And that's the participatory budgeting folks with Open Democracy. We've been, I've spoken with a bunch of my colleagues up here. And I think, you know, we're trying to find a way to bring them back into the fold. And I think having them help us prioritize and figure out some of the CIP challenges and, and prioritizing and voting on and figuring out where to start with some of these, I think would be incredibly helpful. Another thing that I, I think we run into a lot is, you know, we have, just from my experience, and very early on in, in the skate park project, you know, we had, we have a process where we have a design phase and then a bid phase, and those are separate. I feel that's really appropriate for big projects. But if we have, you know, some smaller parks, you know, we could maybe do a design build. I know Ellie Chevick from the Parks Board, I spoke to her about that. That might be a way to save some costs when we're looking at the smaller of their legacy parks. I know there's a lot of pot lots and, you know, like pocket parks and especially like in the eighth and the ninth ward, that I think, you know, we, if we streamline the process, you know, maybe we save ten to fifteen percent, but compounded over the twenty-some parks we're going to have to address, I think that'd be impactful. But I'd have, for me, I just think we, we should have PB involved. And I think that could solve the community engagement piece. And another small thing, a plug for, if we're redoing these sidewalks downtown, if we could please get rid of the paver strips that we're leaving. I think, I know people like the look of that, but you know, I, I think that just, those eventually fail as well. And that might be a way to save a little bit of money, probably not much, but.
So to answer to both of your points, one, I actually did meet with the PB group this morning. And we are investigating ways to incorporate participatory budgeting within the capital program. Although, to some extent, I do think it will be limited if additional money is not budgeted dedicated to PB. That's going to generally be true. Because we are trying to deal with some serious needs that, if we're being honest, we really shouldn't be setting it up for a vote. We should just be, we're reacting too much to things that are failing. But I think there is a place for it, and I'm really excited to work with the group of people. I think it's going to be a really wonderful experience. The, the strip is a standard that we've been going to. I don't know what to say about that, other than to say that it is actually found, the foundation of it is concrete underneath, so it's not going to move. There's, there's holes drilled in many cases, so the water could infiltrate down, but it's, it's solid. So we should not experience the same shifting that we're experiencing where they're all paper block.
Thanks, thanks for that information.
Council member Kelly, followed by Nusma, followed by Reed.
Thank you. Can, can we get for our next one, a list separated out of the ongoing projects versus the new ones? Just to have an idea of costs associated. You gave, that's nice. I like the chart you gave up there of the amount, but actually by project, it would be good to see.
The lists are in, they are attached to the memo. There's a list, first packet is the list of ongoing projects that started prior to January first, twenty twenty-five. And then there's a second list of the prioritized ones. And then a third list of ones that didn't meet the priority criteria.
Okay, great, thank you. That's in here, right?
Yes.
My apologies, sorry about that. Great. And then in terms of like the Parks and Rec Board, I mean, I was really glad to hear how involved they want to be. And it just seems to me, and I'm not going to cite specifics, I've shared some of them with Luke Stowe, but I think there are, I've seen a number of cases where consultants have done some designs that, where I walked, you know, and checked out a park, it was blatant liability issue with some of the arrangements on the park. And I think had that gone to Parks and Rec, some of these designs, I'm sure at least half of the members would have said, whoa, don't do that. And so I do think there's cost savings, in fact, by bringing some of the designs and plans forward to our Parks and Rec Board to let them vet it. I, you know, I can think of a couple of instances where, you know, our consultants just really missed the mark. So, and we're probably going to have to redo some of those designs. So I think it really is valuable and will save taxpayers money if we do rely on these groups that, where we have experts and people who are passionate about that specific area and who are really focused just on that. I think it's, will give us a better product and save us money in the long run.
But if we do that, to understand that is an additional public engagement that will cost the city consulting fees. So it will increase our consulting services if we want to do that.
Well, then I would say, I don't know, to get that feedback, to proceed in a wrong path. And there's something that's wrong going on here. If we can't, if we're, you know, we're planning a design for a park and we're missing the mark, our consultant is, but we don't want to bring it, we don't want anybody on Parks and Rec to check it out because they might catch a mistake and then it's going to cost us more money. There's just, something's not working right. So.
So I'm sorry, I just want to make a point that the Parks and Rec Board is invited to all the public meetings and their participation is welcomed. What we're trying to do is control some of the costs. And because these parks are in a neighborhood, we, we have always taken the stand that the neighborhood should drive what it is. Not, not me, I'm not driving what's in the scope, not city council members in general, unless it's their ward and they're at the neighborhood meeting. So we've always tried to keep the decisions at the neighborhood level.
Right, but I think the Parks and Rec Board is posted on the calendar. It's, OMA noticed. I think that this is the place where people know they go and show up. I've been, one night, I went, this was years and years and years ago. By chance, someone said, hey, can you go to a meeting about Noise Park? And so I just happened to go down there and they were about to, they were discussing putting literally a road through Noise Park to accommodate emergency vehicles. And I just happened to show up because a neighbor told me. Now, that's not, but if you had a group that was dedicated to Parks and Rec, there's some assurance that you have people there who have really, are giving up their time and their focus and their expertise on this area. I shouldn't have to worry about every, you know, thing that might impact my neighborhood. If I'm not there, something might go awry. It's nice to know that we have these groups, that's these boards, committees and commissions, that are there to really represent the community and really do their best to ensure that, that we're moving forward in an appropriate and responsible way with tax dollars and on projects. I, I think that in the end, we save money, we deliver a much better product. It seems a little bit strange to me that we can't say, okay, here's a design that's proposed, that staff can't bring it to Parks and Rec and say, give us your feedback. And they say, no, that won't work. And you go back to the consultant and say, sorry, they don't, consultants don't need to be there. I mean, I just, it seems. it just seems very opaque and a very circuitous, not even circuitous, because we're not even getting there. We're, we're avoiding delivering the best product possible by just saying that we can't engage with these boards, committees and commissions and that, you know, it just has to be with these neighborhood groups that aren't noticed on the calendar necessarily. It just doesn't seem like a transparent democratic process, what you're suggesting.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Reed, followed by Revel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to lead with an issue of interest to not only the fourth ward, but adjacent wards. The, the dog area in Gray Park, which was approved for the 2024 budget, didn't happen because of human resource issues. I'd really like to see that completed in 2025. I talked to Councilmember Hadakatis. Since the ninth ward is right across the street, I hope I have his support. It's also very close to the second ward and the third ward. Councilmembers Winn and Harris aren't here tonight, but they have been supportive of this in the past. So hopefully we can get that done sooner rather than later. I think the key line in this memo that stands out to me is the needs far outweigh available funding. So we need to address that by looking for additional sources of funding. This gets back to our previous discussion. But also be very mindful about the money we do have and spending that as effectively as possible. So I want to talk about public engagement a little bit. My perspective on public engagement when it comes to parks is largely based on the Larimer Park example, fourth ward park, one of the legacy parks that, you know, desperately needed some work and it's getting that work now. We did three really good community meetings for that park. Two at Nichols School, one onsite at the park. Each one of those meetings involves at least three staff members and at least two or three consultants. And it was, it was an awesome process and we came up with a good product. If we are looking for ways to spend money more efficiently, I think there is a way to pare down that expense. And we could probably get the same outcome without engaging consultants in exactly that same manner for that same number of, of community meetings. So whether that's a combination of, of online surveys to help get neighborhood input, engaging with the participatory budgeting team to help them organize some community input. I think there's a way we can get the input we need, which is really important, without spending so much money to get it. So I've offered some ideas, other folks have, have other ideas. So I think the objective is to spend less money on consultants and you know, still figure out a way to get the input we need. I'll leave it there for now.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Revel.
Thank you. I want to talk about a few things. Parks have been talked about quite a bit tonight, so I'm not going to repeat anything other folks said, but I think I agree with most of what folks are saying here. One, one caveat maybe, and we discussed this with, or it came up during a previous conversation with Director Thompson. One of the things that I think will help us bring down the cost of our parks and and then make equipment replacement more efficient. It's not the most beautiful thing for a community, but you know, some of that kind of, if some of our parks just look the same and have the same equipment and, you know, not every park is unique. I know that's not the greatest thing for the community here, but if we can just take, if we can buy a bunch of jungle gym systems that look similar and we can just pull them out and put them in a park when they need to be replaced and buy them essentially in bulk. I, I think there are some savings there. Not every park has to be that way, but I think some parks maybe make sense for that. So that's one. And maybe that's something the PB group could talk about. But as the representative of the eighth ward, I want to understand, so we have a number of, so one thing I want to highlight that has happened in the eighth ward that residents have brought to me is folks feel as though in certain parks, certain amenities were taken out to keep certain folks from, to, to make certain parks less attractive to certain folks. And I'll be frank, folks are concerned that certain parks had the basketball courts removed in order to make the park less appealing for young folks of color. And so I, I do, as we're looking at eighth ward parks and parks all over the city, going forward. And this might be a useful process with PB again, but you know, I think we need to be thinking about what services, what resources, what recreation we provide at, at our parks and make sure that we are providing the full panoply of what folks want to see at our parks, including basketball courts, including skate parks and other things that are limited in our city. Speaking of that, I've also had folks reaching out about pickleball courts. So if I can just get a brief, and I'm sorry if I missed it during the, the presentation, I've seen these, I'm on financing budgets. This is about the third crack at this, but where are we with pickleball courts?
I will defer that to our Parks and Rec representative.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. Matt Poole, Deputy Director, Parks Recreation. We are in the process of exploring two sites now that we are in the plan of.
One being James Park and, right?
At Leahy Park, yes.
Say it again?
Leahy.
And James Park?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And is that included in the CIP for this year?
It was.
So that is one of those items that falls on the, doesn't meet another priority and so would need to be moved back in, which based on the amount of feedback we always get on pickleball courts, I'm assuming that we would move that back in to be included in the CIP.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, again, just based on the feedback that I've gotten, I think it certainly seems like a priority. So I, I don't think it's the most expensive thing in the world. I mean, yeah, so.
But Parks and Rec Department has been doing a tremendous amount of research into this and community engagement. And so right now it's just labeled, the line item is just labeled pickleball court improvements because we're sort of waiting to hear what the final feedback is from Parks and Rec.
Okay, thank you. And maybe this can be offline, but I'll ask it here. I'd love to get an update on where the Clyde Brummel Tot Lot is in the park and the, the need to, to maintain the park. So I'd love to see where they are. Next, I want to go to alleys very quickly. As former clerk, who, and I'm sure Clerk Mendoza knows this from serving on the Board of Local Improvements, we are not funding our alleys anywhere near where we need to be to, for alley replacement. Previous councils have made some improvements on that system or by allowing folks to pay 100% of the cost and be bumped up. I don't know if anyone's taken advantage of that yet.
But it is allowed.
Yeah. And yeah, so what is the, what do we allocate, what is the proposal for this year for alley improvements?
I don't believe that I have that listed anywhere on this, on this thing. It is, it is around $500,000 for the typical general allocation bond, as well as, I believe, around $600,000, $650,000 from CDBG funds, which, in which the city goes into CDBG areas, works with the Ward Almen to pick alleys, and then those are fully funded through the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Which is difficult because
Yes.
A limited, only a limited part of the city is within that.
They are. And we're actually, I mean, in a true success story, we're actually worked our way through most of the list of unimproved alleys in CDBG areas.
Yeah, I think the eighth ward might have been one of the last ones that we, we did.
I mean, that's actually a really great story there that the city, because that took decades to get done. And the city has consistently made a commitment to do that. So one of the benefits of alley improvement is that it protects the property because the water, that stormwater that lands in the alley doesn't just sheet flow to the lowest elevation property on the block and then pool in that person's backyard. It actually is collected and managed. And so in that way, it really is one of the major benefits that it reduces property damage to private properties.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm getting from residents all the time. And not only that, just the dust and dirt flying up on garages.
Dust and dirt, wear and tear on vehicles, whether it's private vehicles or the city's garbage trucks, sanitation vehicles, which are pretty expensive vehicles to experiencing wear and tear. So yes.
And still on alleys, I'm, I'm really interested in whether there's additional allocation needed to improve the aggregate that we use to, when an alley is unimproved to, you know, act as the Band-Aid temporarily.
So for aggregate, we're actually using recycled millings. So when we resurface a street, we mill off the top surface, do a bunch of things and then resurface. Well, that millings creates an aggregate of different sized asphalt, rocks, rocks. And so we use that to do our alley grading. So we do not purchase gravel for alley grading. We use recycled millings.
And, but that poses some challenges, correct? It's not the best material to use for, I mean, it's the cheapest.
Well, it's cheapest because it's relatively free. And it, and it is carp friendly in that it's taking a product and recycling it to another use. But no, it doesn't compact as well as if we use specific gravel. This decision though was made so long ago to go this route that there would be a pretty big implication if we, to the budget, if we were to start purchasing gravel.
With those, with it being carp compliant and with it being free, that's a pretty good argument that I can take back to the residents who are complaining about the aggregate. I will close very quickly. Last thing I want to ask about is sewers. We, so Mr. King came to the eighth ward meeting. We've had a lot of flooding in particular areas of the eighth ward. And we know that our sewers, sewer lines are maybe just as old as our water lines and we have maybe 120 year old sewer lines. Of course, they're carrying different material and one, we really care about the way it comes into the house, the other, you know, once it leaves, a little bit less so. But I just want to hear a bit about our sewers and what kind of investment, we, we know the investment we need to make for water lines. I haven't heard a lot about sewer lines and I think because of what it's carrying and because of the direction that it's going, we, I, I just think it's critically important that we're maintaining that too. So I just want to hear a bit about that.
Certainly. So in the 1990s, 2000s time period, the city made a substantial investment around $210 million. It was spent over 10 different projects to build a new relief overflow sewer. Prior to that, we would get basement backups everywhere all the time. The relief overflow sewer has really cut down on that tremendously. And the implications of that are that we also restrict what can go into the catch basins that go into the combined sewer. So that water ponds on the street a lot when it rains, sometimes entering people's property, which is not ideal. So to that end, we did the relief overflow sewer, solved a lot of basement backup issues, but it did not replace the combined sewer. And the combined sewer is pretty old. So for about 25 years, the city has been lining the combined sewer. And we look at projects that are, we look at the sewer on streets where we're going to be doing resurfacing or when people have a specific complaint, we televise those sewers, we find sewers that are cracked and then we line the sewers. We found that if we put a vibratory roller on them to compact a street, that, that tends to make the sewer fail if there's cracks in it. So we've been going along lining sewers now for quite some time and we are doing 1 to 2% of the system per year. We also have some really large diameter sewers that are brick or clay tile. And we calculated maybe 10 years ago that 15 years ago would take about $15 million to line all of those sewers as well. And we're about two thirds of the way through that process.
Just point of information. So we're, we're doing 1 to 2% per, per year. What do we need to be doing or what is optimal? And then I got residents who are calling me about the sewers flooding now. I, I can't tell them that in 1997, we.
Oh, that's fair. There are different reasons why they're getting basement backups. And so in many cases, it's related to the private line where tree roots have infiltrated or the line has collapsed because it's really old. So we try to work with residents to assist. And the city does have a program that caps the cost of them replacing their private sewer line if they need to do that. But if there are flooding areas, those are generally tracked by our our Water Production Bureau that manages the sewer system. So I should stop talking and let Daryl answer these questions.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, members of City Council, Clerk Mendoza, Darryl King, Water Production Bureau Chief. So we, we average roughly, let's see, two, two and a half, three miles of sewer rehabilitation that we do each year. As Laura Biggs said, we line sections of sewer, we replace sections of sewer, we line manhole, manholes, we, we line those. We clean catch basins, we apply root treatments to keep, to help control roots that can grow into sewers. And those would be the sewer mains. There are instances where roots grow from the sewer laterals into the sewer mains. And so that's an activity that the homeowner has to maintain their, their private sewer. And, and so that's currently what our program is. We have about 225, 250 miles of sewer main, most of which is combined sewer. And, and so that's our current program for sewer rehabilitations and activities.
There's just one part of my question that didn't get answered. So what, we're, we're doing the roughly three miles per year. What optimally should we be doing? If we were, really if, if capital improvements was one of our goals, as it should have been, what would we be doing per, per year? And if you don't have an answer for that now?
Yeah, we would have to look at it and see if, you know, if, if 3% or 2% gets us to where we need to be or, or if that's something, that's a evaluation we did on the water side. And, you know, we could do something similar on the sewer side to see if we're able to achieve renewals over a period of time. But at the same time, maintain the sewer fund as, as, as we have been doing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Revel.
So first of all, to the alley improvement program, in my first year on council, I remember asking, couldn't we increase the amount of, you know, the number of alleys we're able to fund? And that, that idea didn't go very far at that point, but I'm delighted to see that we're going to move forward with that now. I, I, I'm sure all my colleagues will attest to the fact that we hear from residents about, can't, can't we fix my alley? So this is going to be well, well received, I think. To the community engagement question, I mean, so Independence Park in the seventh ward, similarly to Councilmember Nusma, we had the community engagement process extensively a year ago, three different meetings. Trying to think about a way to cut, is, would there have been a way to maybe make one of those? Like the second meeting could have been a survey or something. There might have been a way to cut it back, but but definitely we needed the residents who were familiar with that park and, and the importance of the park to the Central Street Business District to be able to provide that on the spot understanding of the park compared to some, another body doing that. To Councilmember Reed's suggestion about, you know, buying, buying equipment in bulk. I would say the vast amount of the redesign of Independence Park was, was not equipment. It was really, it's looking at the layout. It's, so anyway, then I, I wouldn't imagine probably a lot of the equipment that's going into Independence Park is very similar to what's going into other parks. But anyway. And then finally, it's, this is my, my broken record. So we're looking, so, well, I guess first a question, Laura. So you, you, you're asking us, right now the proposed CIP is 86 something million. is 86 something million dollars. And you're asking us to suggest how we would cut it back. So like by a third, by what, what are you, what is our goal here in terms of reduction?
I have not given you a target.
Okay.
Ideally, if we move projects from that last list back into the CIP, we would find savings within the CIP to offset that moving around so that we would keep the geo bond issue definitely under 20 and as much as under 20 as that we can, I think is the goal that is in my head. But we haven't actually set a target. It's something we talked about with Finance and Budget Committee. And I think that that's something they're looking at, but we haven't really said anything specific. And the last few years have just been so strange since the pandemic. The city received a huge influx of cash through ARPA, which changed things. We had massive staffing issues, which really reduced what we could do in a lot of ways. But meanwhile, construction prices just went crazy with inflation. So it's been a lot of just trying to keep up with what's happening today versus being able to get to better planning. But I think at this point, we're seeing that inflation still higher than we would like, but it's settled down. And we can start looking at a more settled way of doing the budgeting. So to that, we're trying to work with our Finance and Budget Committee for long term. But for this year, I think trying to keep it to 15 to 20 million dollars for the geo bond issuance, which is much higher than we've done. It does include some of our legacy projects, though, which honestly, it's always going to be a struggle to fit those projects within our regular budgets.
Right, yeah. So I, I took a look at the five-year CIP. And so this year, for 2025, you're projecting 400,000 towards the Police and Fire Headquarters. Then 26, we're saying 6,200,000, 27 is 30 million, and 20, 2028 is 25 million. And in 2028 is when we're going to start working on the Civic Center with another 30 million. So we've got just really gigantic challenges ahead, which is, which is why I want us to not worry about, I don't want us to stop worrying about our structural deficit. It's, I guess, my, my point.
Parks are, they're a big problem, they're a big challenge. I don't want to call them a problem. It's also an opportunity to do things like the skate park, which change to meet modern day needs. But, you know, that challenge is probably somewhere around, if we invested 30 million dollars, which is way more than we're investing and probably more than we can afford. But if we did that, we could resolve a lot of our parks issues right there. But, and that is kind of a manageable number. We periodically get influxes like Northwestern University or ARPA. We're probably not going to see an ARPA again, but money does come into the city where we could figure something out. But the facilities challenges at 200 million, that is not something that fits within our current budgets in any. I, I honestly think that's a problem that really has to be looked at by the Finance and Budget Committee because that's not something I could present an easy solution for.
Right. It's not a challenge any of us have ever had to solve before, right?
No, no, it is very large.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
At this time, no one's asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Newsome with 2:10 left.
Thanks. Just really quick, I forgot to mention earlier, with regards to the public engagement process, I would like to hear what the Parks and Rec Board would recommend. Maybe different processes for major repairs compared to minor repairs. So, yeah, if that takes a referral, I'd be happy to make a referral, but I'd appreciate their input on that particular topic. Thanks.
All right, thanks. And now with one minute left, Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So the chart that I was, I guess I was hoping to see, but maybe, and maybe I'm just misreading this, so I apologize. A little jet lagged here. So the ongoing, the ongoing projects. So all the money, all the funds that's, that are listed in this chart are for this year, correct?
No, there are projects that were started this year or prior, and it is money for next year's budget.
I mean, for next year.
Projects moving.
But we don't know how much has been allocated, from this chart, I can't tell, right, how much has already been allocated?
No.
Is that right?
Wouldn't be able to see in that chart.
Okay, so that would be great, just to, just to have an idea of expenses, you know, for each of these, what the allocation was, because this is all, I assume, additional, additional funding on top of the previous allocation, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be great if we could get that number in there. Thank you.
With 2 minutes and 10 seconds left, Councilmember Hadekakis.
Since we're talking about alleys, Councilmember Reed brought up the possibility of using gravel. From what I heard from Director Cano, that would be 8,000 to, or potential, no.
I didn't mention using gravel. I just said, thinking about the aggregate.
Yes, yeah. But that it would be a cost of anywhere from a few thousand to 10,000, tens of thousands of dollars per alley. The alley thing is something else I've been thinking about. I had a good meeting with MWRD, and they have a green infrastructure grant program, which I've asked City Manager Stowe to have staff look into applying for permeable alley grants. And I also learned that the permeable parking that we have on Main Street, that is, was halfway, half paid for by MWRD. So that's, we've partnered with them before, and hopefully that's something I think we should keep investigating, other funding sources since we are short on cash, and we have to be looking under every rock to find more opportunities.
Thank you very much. Thanks so much to the team. And I just remind folks, you know, especially to the extent that you want to see changes or adjustments in direction, please make sure you communicate those with staff ASAP. Okay, this brings us now to item SP3, but I'm not going to request a motion at this time. This is the issue of the Harley-Clark related RFP. As I think folks know, there were, I believe, if I have this right, there were four responses to the RFP, of which three were deemed responsive. In the past, when councils addressed this issue, respondents to the RFP have had the opportunity to present to council, and so we wanted to continue with that precedent. My understanding is that of the three responsive submissions, submittals, one of the three is not interested in participating in this part of the process, but the other two, I believe, are both here this evening. So they've each been given 15 minutes. Additionally, in an effort to make sure that we simultaneously are optimizing for the goals of responsiveness to council's questions and also uniformity of the experience for the different proposals, council had the opportunity to send questions in writing. Those questions were transmitted to both proposers, I believe, before the weekend. So responses to those, those questions, I can only presume will be incorporated in these presentations. After the presentation, I'll ask staff to make a quick presentation, and then at that point, I'll entertain a motion from the council. So for the first 15-minute presentation, I'd like to invite Evanston Lake House and Gardens to the podium.
Are we cut off at 15 minutes? Just?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. My name is Patrick Donnelly. I'm with Evanston Lake House and Gardens. Thank you, Mayor Bis. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, City Council. Do we have a presentation that we can put up?
Don't worry, your clock's not moving.
And then do we just say next slide, or do we hit just like that? My name is Patrick Donnelly. I work in film and television. I do budgeting and finance, and I produce TV commercials. I do a lot of accounting and a lot of budgeting, and I have since I was 25. Tonight, also, John Kennedy is going to be speaking. He's been the CEO of two businesses or three? Three businesses. And Richard Murray, who has moved a billion dollars building 23 charter schools. So he definitely knows the financial arm of our presentation. What we're looking at right here is Harley-Clark. If we can go to the next slide? The right fit. The biggest question about Harley-Clark has always been, and maybe the problem, is that it is in the middle of a city park. There, in the summertime especially, has always been the issue. So there are summer camps running around the mansion. The lighthouse is right there, and there's 34,000 visitors who go there in the summer. If you do the math on that, that's like 300 or 400 people a day and maybe a couple thousand on the weekend. Just so you know, the scale of what's over there. Parking lot is full from 9:00 AM. I walk my dog over there quite a bit, maybe every day. So what goes into Harley-Clark, we believe should be the right fit. And the reason I'm saying that is because we built our entire proposal around a community center in the park. Our whole proposal was built to reflect what we think that park and what residents want. If we go to the next slide? What residents want is not a guess. We did a referendum a few years ago. The city did a referendum. 82% of the votes said that they wanted a community center. And then there were three city meetings where hundreds of people came, at least three aldermen were there. They listed out what they wanted, and the top answers were they wanted a cafe over there. They wanted a lakeside patio. They wanted seasonal events. They wanted interesting programs, which all sounds like just something to do over there. They want to see the mansion preserved. They don't want to see it changed that much. But number one was they wanted public access. Could we go to the next slide? Now I'll show you what the benefits for your residents of your own ward are. And I can't hit on them all because we're so short on time, but the entire house is event space. But because we're not running that many events, we actually, we're, in the summer, we slow down. So because we're not running that many events, there's 300, 300 other days a year where the house can completely open up and there's stuff to do. The entire first floor is designed as an artist gallery. We'll partner up with local artists, galleries, and businesses. We know there are some in your wards. We've spoken to a bunch. We know we can fill this up and make it look really beautiful. It also draws attention to your local artists, businesses, and galleries. If we can go to the next slide? Also on the first floor is a conservatory. We're really into the historic preservation of Harley-Clark. There were two water fountains that used to be there in, in that conservatory. There's a galley kitchen. There's a ballroom. We'd like to do historic tours, but we really care about what goes, happens in Harley-Clark. We don't want to blow out walls. We don't want to turn it into a giant event facility. We want to do historic tours and say, this is how the building needs to be. Next slide? Summertime, I mentioned, we slow down. Because there's so many visitors, we did the math on how much revenue we need to create, and we learned that the cafe can really open up when we slow down. That's what residents wanted most. If we can go to the next slide? So what we, what a big chunk of our plan is, is we are catering to summer visitors. Mayor Morton actually suggested this patio. So we drew it up. If you can see, there's French doors, one, two, three, four sets of French doors where the house opens up. People can go inside and explore. They can hang out on the patio. They're not going to be pushed away, the Episcopal Church, the yoga classes, all the things that happen right beyond on that lawn all summer long. We're not pushing those people away. If you go to the next slide? There's rooms to explore. I can't touch on this for too long because I'm almost out of time, but we're doing a bookroom galley on the second floor in the north side, a big bookroom. And we're doing a museum gallery on the south wing. This gives people something to do. We don't make a lot of money from this, but we partner up with book clubs and groups. We've already identified a bunch, three in Evanston. There's also museums that we've reached out and spoken to. A couple of big ones in Chicago said that they would be interested in this, using a satellite space. And we can change these year to year, just like they do down in the Chicago Museum. So there's always something interesting to do. It's not the same old place. Next slide? We, our whole plan is to scale. That's the ballroom, by the way. The whole plan is to scale. We have a small staff. We have a realistic rehab cost of 8 million, which means that we can really do a return on our investment. The building is not in operation 24 hours a day. We don't have hotel rooms there. It can slow down. The plan doesn't compete with park activity, and there's limited events in the summer. If we go to the next slide? People also wanted seasonal activity. We can make a big chunk of money, $200,000, just from the seasonal activity. Winter Holiday Fest for Christmas and Hanukkah, Haunted House, a spring local art craft weekend. There's, we have a whole list of these. But just so you know, they make money. The very top one, Evanston Art Center did a winter craft expo. They made 75 grand. That's all, we were coached by five houses how to pull this off, how our revenue should operate, and, and then how to reinvest back into the house. Next slide? Finally, I would just like to say, let's keep Harley-Clark for Evanston at all costs. For the residents at all costs. We're not a private business. We're just trying to turn this into a community center. And we want to give people access to this place, and we don't want to make it super busy. We're running, you know, the houses that we, that Kochea said do 25 weddings. If you do 50, you're crazy. It's going to beat up the house. If you do 100, that's insanity. They said 25 weddings. Create your business plan to something like that, and you'll be super successful, and they coach us through. The idea that we would do 50 weddings there is, is, is not what we're talking about. We're doing 25 small events and weddings.
Okay, next, next one too. So I'm the operations guy. Next one, please. Before we got started again on putting an RFP response together, we set out and said we need some guiding principles as to what we want to have happen here. The key thing was maximizing benefits. Residents should be able to walk in to the building at any time. We want to provide sufficient income, but we're not in the business of making money for anybody. We're in the business of providing that money that we do have to make back into operations and to pay for the, partially pay for the renovations. Richard will talk about how we fully pay for the renovations. The key thing here is we want to minimize the impact, especially during the summer. I mean, and the neighbors. I mean, if, if, we don't want to have weddings during the summer if we can help it. Why? Because 40,000 people go down there. And running shuttle buses back and forth to wherever you want to park is going to be disruptive in the middle of the afternoon. Next slide? So this, oh, go back. There you go. So most of these, these are the basic income-producing areas. We do have some private events and professional meetings. We found through research that there is a lack of a place for professional meetings, 15 to 30 people, Northwestern professors, you know, companies in Evanston and surrounding area. We can make money by renting out our facility there. Those two are about 50% of our operating money. Maximum private event, 80 people, not 170. The cafe is there. It's going to be initially started from a three-month during the summer, and then we'll see how we can build from there. Community income events, Patrick talked a little bit about that. Studio rental, Noye Center has a waiting list for artists in Evanston that want to spend $800 a month for a room to do their work. We've got seven or eight rooms, another income source. Next? So, you know, these are our income, expenses, and net. I'm not holding my breath to make money on year one, but we're not going to lose money. And the key thing is, over time, we grow this, not only to pay for some of the investment, but also to churn it back into programs for the community. This is not a for-profit operation. We listened to the, to the council. In fact, next slide? Council, back in January, the question was asked, how much commercial? The question was asked, how much commercialization should go on here? And I won't read all of you, but many of you are listed here as to what you wanted to see in a new tenant. And it certainly isn't a money-making operation.
Good evening. Next slide, please. I'm Richard Murray. I'm here to talk about the finance a little bit, about how all of this works. Four years ago, when you had the previous RFP, I partnered with the Evanston Conservancy. We came in a very close second to, to the book house. This time, I decided however, to partner with Evanston Community Lake House and Gardens for three reasons. One is it's community-based. The program here is clearly community-based. Second reason, this, this team has, has members on it who've been committed to preserving this space for up to 12 years. And the third reason is there are members of this team who know more about Harley Clark than anybody. They know about its history, about its architecture, about its place in the community. Next slide, please? This is, let me just start with the simple costs of, of the project. There's nothing unusual about this hard cost, soft cost contingency sort of thing. What I want to draw your attention to is the total project cost, eight and a half million dollars. There are two things to that. Number one is that is sufficient funding in a budget to renovate historic, historic property of this size. It's just a little over 18,000 square feet. It's really not that big. The second thing about it is it's very strategic. In order to keep this as a community-based project, we had to be very careful not to bring in any extra costs, which then would lead to additional debt, which would then push toward more commercial uses. Next slide, please? And so where does the money come from? So there's the eight and a half million and this is unusual. The previous slide is pretty typical. This one is not. We had two financial strategies here. One was to maximize the use of the historic tax benefits that are available here. Harley Clark has a lot of history. It has tax benefits that we wanted to make the most use of as possible. The second thing we wanted to do was to minimize the amount of debt on this, but thereby lowering the, the overall risk of this thing. Next slide, please? And so here are the tax benefits and you'll see that green line across there was the same from the previous slide. That's the equity investment of $6 million. We've got three different tax benefits, the federal tax credits, the state tax credits, and a preservation easement donation to provide that. And what you see here, what's most important about this is the potential and how close that comes to covering the equity investment. It doesn't, it's not the same amount. And it depends on the circumstances of each investor for their tax consequences. Next slide, please? And so here we've broken out investors into five different groups. On the left, you can see an investor who's getting cash only out of the deal over 10 years. And they're, they're not getting any tax advantages. So that's a 7.1% return over 10 years using a conventional 10-year IRR. On the far right is sort of the trifecta of, of an investor who can take all of the tax advantages in Illinois, federal, the conservation easement, et cetera. And they wind up with a return of about 13%. So what you can see from this is that the investors, this is not a high-risk project. We've kept the cost down. We've kept the debt down. These investors are going to get a fair and reasonable rate of return regardless of which category they're in. Next slide, please? And so let me wrap this up. I'm going to just barely make it here before you beat me. Listen, I, you know, this is not rocket science. It's, it's some work to do to get this thing done. But, you know, one of the advantages of being an old man, which I am, is experience. And I looked back to the first historic restoration project I developed. It was a Louis Sullivan building from the 19th century. And I had to laugh because it was 38 years ago. We can do this. It can be done. What we're proposing is very modest. It's very realistic. It's community-based. We can definitely get this thing done. And that's, that's really what I was up here to, to tell you. I don't think there's anything else here other than to ask you to hope that you will consider all the factors in an open process. That you'll look at the uses, you'll look at the community benefits. You'll look at the numbers. You'll look at the likelihood of success and then you will come to a decision in an open process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We actually have to pause for a moment for YouTube stream related reasons, I believe, which I think is always the way of saying we've gone on for a long time already. So we'll stand at E for just a moment. All right, the council will resume. So at this time, I would like to invite the other applicant, the Celadon Group, to make their presentation. That's a fair point. Could I request all members of council to return to the chamber, please, to ensure that we maintain quorum? All right, we'll continue to stand at E as well. The, the brief break continues. I think a few council members had to head to the restroom. We'll resume momentarily.
While we're waiting, I was asked by staff to hand out the written responses. Do you mind if I do that now?
Yes, please. Just for the audience's information, we have in front of us already written responses from Evanston Community Lake House and Gardens. And so now we'll have written responses from the other applicant as well. At this time, we have a quorum present in the chamber and I would invite the Celadon Group to begin, to begin their presentation.
Thank you. My name's Scott Henry. I am the president of Celadon Construction Corporation, or 501(c)(3). I'm really here at the urging of Landmarks Illinois. When the previous developer was unable to move forward, Landmarks had a very real concern that the next step for Harley Clark would be the wrecking ball. They asked me to take a look at the project to see if there was, if there was a way for me to utilize previous approaches that I've, I've used successfully to find a way forward for Harley Clark. Now I am, I'm an affordable housing developer. I've done all kinds of development in commercial housing, but, or commercial uses. But I'm really an affordable housing developer specializing with adaptive, historic adaptive reuse projects. But I think I'm probably an ideal person to tackle this project. For example, incorporating the community into all of my projects is in my DNA. So it's super important for everything I do, including Harley Clark. I think the concerns that some have raised about the exclusivity of our project, once folks really understand what it is that we're doing, respectfully, they'll probably come to the conclusion that their concerns are not founded. Additionally, when you have a guy like me, that's an affordable housing developer, you get somebody that is familiar with the complicated multiple capital, sources of capital, that would be present in an affordable housing project. Many sources of which are related to historic buildings and would apply to Harley Clark. So I've taken a look at, at this project and sources and we think that we've come up with a really good solution that addresses what Landmarks set us out to do. We believe we'll be able to activate this building, do a thoughtful and credible restoration that'll set the building so that it can last the next 100 years. I passed out written responses to the questions that were circulated on Friday. I'm not going to cover many of them. Frankly, our RFP addresses most, if not all of them, but I do want to highlight a few things. We've built our entire business around certainty. All of our projects, that's number one priority. For the project like this, as we work our way towards a decision as to whether or not we're going to be selected, we want to make sure that we have a development team selected, a community partners identified, a general contractor onboard. To the extent that there's a historic tax credits are a central factor in this project, we would want to engage SHPO and the National Park Service to make sure that the project is indeed eligible for historic credits. We have done all of that. All of our arrangements with our partners have been negotiated and documented. They're all in the RFP. The approval from National Park Service and SHPO is in the RFP indicating that our approach, our scope with our team would allow for the Harley Clark project to be eligible for historic tax credits. So what that has done is, is we have determined after all of our homework and analysis that this project to do a credible renovation, the project will cost about $29 million. Now about a little over 10 of that is going to be from the sale of historic tax credits. That money does not have to be paid back. The investors get their return through the tax benefits. I'm going to put, be putting in $4 million of my own money and the rest will be provided by a lender. Why would a lender want to invest that much money in a project like this? Well, they believe in our vision. They like our vision, but they also like certainty. So they underwrote the deal. They underwrote the project financing. They underwrote my development team, my background, my balance sheet. And they like the fact that our construction numbers are based on a construction start to, starting mid to late next year. They know that this process is going to take time. They know it's going to take time to get a building permit. So what they, they like about our approach is that we've built in inflationary factors. We have wage rate increases for our subs built into the numbers. The number that we're showing you in our RFP response is a very real number that will be good through the time we actually start construction. They also like the fact that we have built in deep reserves into our budget. So inevitably, you know, we live in an economic cycle. When things are good, everybody's doing well. When things are bad, sometimes revenues can suffer. So we can draw on those reserves to make sure that we're still paying our bills and our debt service and so forth. But they also like the fact that I'm signing a operation, operational deficit guarantee and a construction completion guarantee backed up by my balance sheet that they have underwritten and approved. So that really means if there are problems and there are capital calls, they know that I will fund those deficits and I won't walk away. So that brings me to this point where I can offer you certainty. I can look at you in the eye and if you tell me that Celadon is selected, this project won't be a pipe dream. It won't be a maybe. This project will be built. And that is great and that excites me. But the real magic happens once the project's finished. And that's what Clarence Weaver and Charles Smith are going to talk about. But before we bring them up, Lisa Falmouth wanted to be here, but she had a conflict and she prepared a personal testimony. So I'm hoping staff can play this short video.
Hi everyone. My name is Lisa Fairmouth Weber and I'm here at Lighthouse Beach behind the beautiful Harley Clark mansion. I'm so excited that Celadon is being considered to restore this mansion. And they've assured me that they're going to continue to allow us to offer no-cost, low-cost, accessible mindfulness-based stress reduction programs for the community, which we've been doing since COVID, including the ancient practice of yoga, forest bathing, earthing, and mindfulness-based stress reduction program. So I really hope you, you go forward with this opportunity for the community to enjoy this beautiful architecture and see it restored. Thank you.
And with that, Clarence, you have the floor.
Oh, good evening. First off, I'm excited to be here on behalf of CNW. As many of you know, you know, first I just got to say hello to Mayor Biss, City Manager, and Mendoza. Much appreciated for seeing you guys here and a council member, the leadership that we've seen today. To be able to observe how you guys run the city is phenomenal. To hear the reports back and the movement and the questions and the Q and A represent the city that my wife and I have been a part of since 1986. Extremely pleased to be a resident and active in the community. As you all, you all know, or some may not know, Wendy and I have been operating CNW Market and Ice Cream Parlor, CNW Foundation, as well as CNW Ventures. Prior to that, we have both experienced 40 years of corporate experience. Myself dealing with corporate IT work, dealing in global markets. My wife being very active in the healthcare industry, 40 years as well. And the last 13 years dealing with international students at Northwestern University. So when we partnered with Celado Partners, we felt that we did our due diligence. We felt that this operation, this effort and partnering with them was very important to us. Literally with the business that we have, we've been approached by a few individuals in many situations, but there never was a good fit. And when I had an opportunity to speak with Scott and Scott and his son came into our restaurant, there was a feeling that was different. There was something that we felt matched up with what we wanted to do as far as expansion. We felt staying in place and building out what we're doing was the best thing that we could do. But this opportunity to do something in Harley Clark was phenomenal. We attended the tour. We walked the property, walked the space. And we felt the vision that was being placed upon us was something that we felt would be very beneficial to the community. So we felt not just lending our services and our business that we bring, but our expertise as well. We feel that the community will be well represented. We feel that what we bring to the table as far as advising and partnering with this team is something that will be beneficial in the Harley Clark space. We already provide our services to many of the individuals in that community. We feel that by coming together with our offerings and what the collective offering of this group brings will provide something in that space that hasn't been offered before. We think that it's a great window to bring jobs to that space. We also feel that using the space in a lot of different ways will be defined and continue to be defined based on the needs. As I mentioned, based on my IT background, you never ever build a system without really understanding the needs of the community or your customer base. And once you go into design and development and testing and all of that, you really make sure that everything that's done step by step is in alignment with what you believe in professionally and personally. And literally everything that I've heard and I've seen with this group and with the opportunity to be a partner with this group is something that Wendy and I value and we are heads head on right into making this happen. So we feel that there's new and existing customers that can come into this space. And the beauty that exists in that space, there's some folks that haven't seen it. And now this opportunity will give many other people that opportunity that hasn't existed before. So CNW, we're not just here on paper. We, I heard someone say, by bringing in a local group is a nice add-on, but that's not the point. We're a value-added. We're a value-added partner, and we bring a lot to the table, to a group that already brings a lot to the table. So that's my part, and we hope that you guys proceed. Thank you.
My name is Charles Smith. I've been up here many times talking about the Harley-Clark mansion and grounds, so hopefully I won't have to come back for a long time after this. But I'm here today because I've worked hard for many years to see this magnificent structure and this historic landscape come to life, be restored, and maintained. Jen's Jensen Gardens has earned a place in this project through our hard work. To start, I think we should all celebrate this day. Lots of people have shown dedication to what they believe is in the best interest of the community, including those who saw demolition as the best option. But I think that we should feel gratified and proud that through all of the work of many city council members, in addition to the ones who are here today, have persisted and moved it a little bit at a time forward to get to this point. It has been a very painful and long process, but I believe that Celadon proposal that ranked highest in the selection process is far and away better than anything I could have imagined. And will be done in just a few years at the most. This proposal, Celadon's proposal, justifies all the hard work and trouble and angst that we've gone through all these last five, six, seven years. We have been in this position before. Past proposals have wanted Jen's Jensen Gardens in Evanston to work for them without supporting our program to restore and manage the landscape. Please mow our grass for free was kind of the intent. Jen's Jensen Gardens has continued to plant and to care for the landscape regardless of the turmoil that was around us. A lease was tried with a group with no history in building or development. A give us a lease and we will find the money plan. But managing a $10 million building project, creating programming to fill a large building, and, like I said, raise $10 million for the necessary rehab turned out to be way beyond the abilities of a well-meaning organization with a good idea. So I don't think we should try that again.
And I hate to cut you off, but it's important that I give each group the same amount of time, and so I have to ask you to conclude your remarks.
Yeah, I will. Celadon will restore the mansion inside and out, beyond, far beyond the capabilities of the other candidates. My organization, Jen's Jensen Gardens in Evanston, the Celadon proposal will fund to rehab the coach house and the grounds to the same high standard that they proposed to rehab the mansion. Most importantly, we will finally have a home for Evanston's dedicated natural stewards, a facility at the coach house to encourage and support the development of a new generation of habitat stewards, as well as support the existing stewards. I hope a vote to support the Celadon proposal is a vote to renew an important community asset, strengthen our support for habitat stewards, and put these years of uncertainty behind us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sterling, I believe you have a few brief remarks.
I do, thank you. Mayor Biss, City Manager Stowe, Clerk Mendoza, members of the city council. I'll try to be as brief as possible. I was told five minutes. I'm a better writer than I am a speaker, so I have some prepared remarks, and I'll do my best in front of you. As all of you know, we've been discussing this project and this property and collecting feedback about its future for over a decade. Following the decision to opt out of the previous lease agreement by the Artist Book House, the future of the Harley-Clark mansion was uncertain and at high risk. Given the history of this process over that past decade, it is unknown whether this process can continue to absorb future missteps and false starts. How the city responded to that moment was critically important. Foremost, it was necessary to instill confidence in approach and affirm the city's position that this property represents a significant opportunity for renewed life and vibrancy. It was also essential to examine best practices capable of mitigating risk for the city, attracting highly qualified and viable proposals, and to clarify what the public's interests were in the property that would be non-negotiable. Some of the steps that were taken over this period of time include adopting an adaptive use code that allows additional flexibility and potential use for these types of proposals. The Preservation Commission revised the property's statement of significance, providing additional clarity on the property's character-defining features. They also submitted a letter to the city council advocating for the adaptive use of this structure. Acknowledging the role that income-producing and active uses have in increasing financial viability and providing access to essential tax credit opportunities, asking for realistically scaled nonprofit uses instead of exclusively nonprofit uses, ensuring that beach access, beach operations, public parking, and access to the lighthouse, fog signal buildings, and neighboring park to the north would be maintained for the public in perpetuity. To market and test these approaches, the city first released a non-competitive request for expressions of interest. I think this was kind of a novel idea for this body at the time. What we received were 10 responses of varying scales and approaches, responses that would subsequently talk amongst each other, coalesce, and come back as stronger, more viable proposals, and that's exactly what happened. Every single one of the 10 responses in some way, shape, or form submitted as an RFP instead of submitting on their own. During review of these submissions, we also tested that approach with the city council, and we received feedback that included that financial viability and the capacity to complete the project expeditiously was a priority. There was a willingness on this council to accept income-producing and active uses so long as they were balanced with realistically scaled nonprofit uses, public access, and public programming and events. Purely commercial enterprises would not be considered. There was a desire to keep the use program largely within the existing volumes of the mansion and coach house and to seek approaches that minimized alterations to the property's grounds. Sale of the property, even with associated easements that would protect public interests, was discouraged. All of this helped craft a more viable RFP framework with the following key objectives: to rehabilitate and preserve the property, to place it back into productive use, to maintain meaningful but not exclusive public access and programming, and to create vibrant use opportunities that build upon the site's cultural and architectural significance. We received four responses to the RFP, three of which were considered responsive and finalists, two of which presented for you tonight. This process, the city's procurement process, the evaluation committee, myself, and the community development department recommend that the city council award the RFP and enter lease negotiations with the most responsive proposal, Celadon Construction Corporation and its associated partners. The development team's capacity, expertise, and body of previous work mitigates risk, instills confidence, and creates a compelling and predictable vision for the property and the quality of its rehabilitation. The proposal has extremely high financial viability, an acute understanding for the property's capital needs, and the proposed uses build upon the site's significance. The entirety of the nearly $30 million project is completed at no cost to the public, has a clear and expedited timeline for completion, does not require fundraising, generates significant revenues for the city, and offers more prescriptive uses conducive to use of shuttle service and valet, avoiding adverse impacts to the existing parking and use of the beach and park. The proposal offers complementary and diverse publicly accessible and private uses that both cater to a wide array of users, income levels, and age groups, breathing new life into one of the city's most significant properties. The proposed uses minimize competition and overlap with other community and for-profit uses across the city, leveraging its location and artistic value as a unique destination. The proposed income generated in events and uses which justify and allow a return on the investment and the property's capital needs do not require that the mansion be operated for private events for more than a few days per week, meaning parts of the ground floor, the third floor ballroom, and the mansion's grounds will be available for public activities and events for the balance of the week. Celadon is committed to working with the city and other community organizations to co-create and propose the specifics of that framework, including a series of regularly-scheduled public events and activities to be held on the grounds and within the mansion itself. Celadon has proactively engaged longtime users of the mansion's grounds and is committed to continuing those opportunities, as well as acknowledging and working with the city to ensure current city programming on the property continues to the benefit of the public. To summarize, this proposal represents the most viable opportunity for successful rehabilitation of the property in over a decade, showing that public and private interests in the property do not have to be mutually exclusive. The mansion in its current state does not serve the community and has not for over a decade. What it does do in its current state is represent an opportunity for renewed life and vibrancy. Although the proposal contains for-profit uses within its existing volume, such as the ability for community members to rent professional meeting and smaller event space, grab a drink with colleagues or friends, enjoy an ice cream with your children, celebrate special occasions over a meal on the lakefront, or offer a one-of-a-kind hoteling option for visiting guests, this proposal also maintains beach use and access, maintains the public parking lot for the public, maintains public access to the adjacent park and lighthouse, recognizes and commits to working with the city to retain existing programming opportunities, and offers significant new opportunity for public access, events, and programming within a fully restored structure and its grounds at no expense to the city. I know that there were also some very specific questions that were given to me. Would you like me to address those as they come up or read responses now? There were five, I believe.
I think if you have prepared responses, go ahead and read them now.
So I received the following questions from the city council. What role have or will the land use commission, preservation commission, and the parks and rec board play in Harley-Clark's plans? I talked a little bit about the preservation commission's advocacy and assistance in this approach and framework. They were engaged early, and they helped with that approach. The land use commission and parks and recreation board have not been engaged as part of the procurement process. That's not atypical, although we did consult with parks and recreation staff when developing the REI and RFP language. Preservation and land use would have responsibilities under the subsequent entitlement processes as this would move forward as recommending bodies. I fully expect the parks and recreation department to be involved in lease negotiations to ensure that their programmatic interests are maintained in the property. Second question, will Harley-Clark have to pay property tax under a long-term lease? How much property tax revenue can we expect? Leaseholders are responsible for paying the real estate taxes on property they lease from an entity, the local government in this case, that is otherwise tax-exempt. The city would have to submit the lease agreement to the assessor's office. They would create a tax parcel and assess what that tax would be. We looked at comparable properties during this process, myself and the Economic Development Division, to look at estimated property tax value. What we landed at was about $150,000 a year, but I'm really hesitant to say that with any kind of certainty. There's a lot of variables involved in making that decision. What I can say for reference, the Celadon proposal, they've anticipated and built into their financing about $1 million in total taxes per year, so that includes hotel tax, liquor tax, sales tax, property tax. The higher tax benefit is not the property tax benefit. What versions of building and energy codes would apply? These answers came from the Building Division, the 2021 International Building Code, the 2020 National Energy Code, the Illinois Energy Conservation Code, the Illinois Plumbing Code, and the Illinois Accessibility Code. It was also noted that the following codes will be presented to the city council before the end of the year, so there's potential that these would apply depending on when they submit for permit. But the 2021 International Existing Building Code and the Illinois Stretch Energy Code. There's two more, three more, sorry. Is the existing utility infrastructure sufficient for proposed uses, water, sewer, electric? There wasn't as much clarity in this question. I didn't know if it was on from the building to the street or within the street. But updating utility infrastructure from the mansion and coach house to the street is expected and needed. It's necessary, and it's built into their estimates. Concerns over infrastructure capacity at the street on the city's end, it hasn't come up prior. Would the city lose any control or authority under a preservation easement? The simple answer is yes, but I don't want that to, I'm a strong advocate of preservation easements. I think they're a wonderful tool for basically a private form of historic preservation. They are held in perpetuity, and they're held by whoever that easement is donated to. So depending on the structure of the easement, it can cover just exterior, it can cover interior, it can cover single elevations of a building, it could cover the grounds. If someone would want to alter that, they would need to seek approval from whoever controls that easement. Those standards really mirror our own preservation ordinance standards. They're basically the same. There's many properties in Evanston who have, they're both historic, they go through our preservation process. They also have preservation easements that are held by Landmarks Illinois that go through simultaneous approval processes. And the last one, how would we handle the existing lease with Jen's Jensen Garden if they can't come to an arrangement with the selected project team? I was told that Jen's Jensen Garden, they have a license agreement. It gives them the right to be on the property. If you have really specific questions about this, I would ask you to direct them to Corporation Council, because it's a little outside of my expertise, how it would happen if they can't come to an agreement. But they could withdraw, by understanding is they can withdraw from that license agreement and enter into the agreement that's proposed, which is being a sub-lease to Celadon Group. And before we open for broader discussion and questions, which I'm very excited about, I just want to underscore that tonight the council is deciding what organization to enter into negotiations with. There's a lot of detail to be unpacked, both through those negotiations as well as the subsequent entitlement process, and both of those would travel back to this body for approval at a later date.
Before I call on people for questions, would anyone care to make a motion relative to item SP 3?
I'll move item SP 3, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a lease agreement with Celadon Construction Corporation, NFP, for the adaptive use and rehabilitation of 2603 Sheridan Road, the Harley-Clark mansion and its ground, RFP 2407.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of item SP 3, authorizing the city managers to negotiate a lease agreement with Celadon Construction Corporation as just described. Councilmember Hadda Kadi, second. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I am happy to be here. I think we're finally at a place where hopefully we'll be able to settle this. I do have a few questions. I mean, I support the Celadon proposal. Got the opportunity to meet with staff and get, and all of us did, had an opportunity to meet with staff and get a full briefing on this, and so I've heard the presentations. I appreciate the presentations from both groups, but I'm also a representative of my residents, and I've got kind of titans of the eighth ward on both sides of this. And so I do have some questions for the Celadon Group. Is that, that came from a resident, that's a new question related to the motion that's made here.
So let me ask the Corporation Council to speak to this.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council, Alex Trugge, Corporation Council.
I will redirect my question to staff then.
Thank you.
And maybe staff can get the answer to this. So one of the concerns is that, and I don't know who's best to answer this, but that potentially Celadon Group has refused to let the community see that they are planning 10 hotel rooms, four elevators, 35 full-time staff, and 100 to 150 weddings per year, as well as a speakeasy, a cigar bar, and the sale of alcohol, specifically bourbon. So is that, can someone address those concerns? Is there a plan to add four elevators?
Maybe we take them one, what are the concerns?
So I'll start with one, 10 hotel rooms. So is that...
There are 10 hotel rooms proposed. That's in the existing volume of the building. There's been some equivalencies with the Pritzker proposal, which I think orders of magnitude, that was 60, maybe 70 hotel rooms.
Thank you. Are they planning to add four elevators?
Off the top of my head, I felt like it was three. Some of that is just accessibility needs and also compartmentalization of uses within the building, so having direct access, ADA access to the hotel versus all the way to the third floor and the ballroom and so forth. Yeah.
I will say, I did not see, I maybe did... I will say, I did not see a, I maybe did not see a head shake to four elevators. 35 full-time staff?
I think that sounds correct.
Okay. And is the plan to have 100 to 150 weddings per year?
I believe it says one to two per week, so that would be around 100.
Yeah, okay. Is there going to be a speakeasy?
There's a, I called it a bar in my, but yes, in the basement, that's in the basement, which was previously the billiards room.
And a cigar bar?
No, I believe that they entertained that earlier and didn't move forward with it.
Okay.
Yep.
And alcohol sales, will that happen onsite?
Within the bar.
Within the bar, yeah, of course. Okay. So thank you for that. I think there's maybe some concerns about those issues not being forthcoming. I'll say the proposal makes a lot of sense to me, the Celadon proposal, you know, the fact that it is, it is the most baked proposal that I think this council has seen maybe since the Pritzker proposal, which was, I mean, certainly the, Ms. Pritzker had the, certainly the funds to make this happen, but that wasn't the public use that folks wanted to see, and so I think that this is the most baked proposal that has the funding in place. I heard the applicant say that they're putting up $4 million of their own money, there's about $10 million in tax credits. I'm curious to staff, how certain are we that they will be eligible for these tax credits? It seems as though they will be, but.
So the federal rehabilitation tax credit, that's non-competitive, so essentially that's, it's a two-part application. One is you're proving that it's eligible, that it's a certified historic property, which this is, and they have that approval letter in the RFP. The second step is the National Park Service and the state Historic Preservation Office will review the plans and ensure that they meet the Secretary Interior standards, so I'm not concerned at all that they'll be able to access that. The way the state program works is that is a competitive program. It works on a priority level, there's five priorities. Their proposal meets four of the five priorities, and I think they have an excellent chance at receiving that as well.
Okay. And so then there's left, so that's roughly 14 million, and I believe the proposal's 22, can you, what's the number again, their total?
So 2029 is the large number, but that also includes reserves as well.
So then there's an additional, you know, 12, 13, 14 million dollars in investments, and if there's, not that the private market or investors are always right, we've seen them lose a lot of money, but to me, it seems that folks don't readily throw away that much money. So does the other proposal, the Lake House and Gardens proposal, have the funding built in as firmly as this proposal? I didn't hear it from there, I didn't hear.
Yeah, so I think that the proposal is, it's, there are many ways to address rehabilitation, and we kind of talked through some of those models. I don't want to say that one is possible and the other is not possible. They carry varying forms of risk for the city, and I think that the Evanston Lake House and Garden Group has more inherent risk to their proposal than the Celadon proposal does. That doesn't mean that it's not viable.
Sure.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So, you know, I think both proposals are really exciting, and there's much that I like about both of them. I am concerned about the process. I do think that either proposal would be stronger had this not come before us as a special order of business, as so unfortunately other very impactful and important items have come before us during this term. I am concerned that I'm not hearing enough, I love, you know, I love the community aspects of both of these. Obviously, one is more community-oriented than the other. I love the, you know, hats off again to Charles Smith and Jen's Jensen Gardens, and a huge expression of gratitude is owed to them for all the work they've done without, you know, costing the city assent for many years to maintain those Jen's Jensen Gardens for us, and all the volunteers of that organization, thank you again for that, you deserve that thanks many times over for many years now. So that, that public aspect, I love that community aspect of this Celadon proposal. I do feel like what's missing, though, is, you know, it's unfortunate that our city, this has dragged on. I mean, I would think any city that's truly serving its residents, this should have been a, you know, a place for the community a long time ago, with the city investing in it. We invested two hockey rings, we invested in, you know, long-term leases, all kinds of other huge expenses that this, that people were not clamoring for, yet this people have been. And this is a, you know, our most coveted space in Evanston, our cherished lakefront, where some of our minorities have been moved away from in the past and everything else, and people worked very hard to have a referendum, and that referendum, you talk about community input, you had almost 23,000 people vote to say, please, keep this for us, keep this structure for us on the lake for access year-round. That's community input, 23,000 people telling you, please do this. Our city should have found a way a long time ago to do this. What a beautiful space. As a, you know, former high school teacher, I loved, I used to relish in the idea of some of my high school kids figuring out transportation to go to the lake from the middle of the winter and bring their books and do homework and study by the lakefront, right? Because we'd have community spaces for our students on the lakefront year-round. But we're, you know, but that's being omitted from this discussion, and I hope this Celadon proposal will come forward, not with, yeah, you know, you can reserve, maybe there'll be a few days here and there where you can get a public space and use it. I hope that we really can figure out a way with whichever proposal we move forward with to ensure that there's regular access, not that you have to go and buy a fancy dinner or go to some bourbon elite bar and buy, or even ice cream, but that you can actually go in and just enjoy the space. That's what the people voted for, and I was at those meetings on freezing nights right after the referendum came through in some 80, I don't know, 5% or what it was, you know, said, please keep this for public use, and people were happy because, you know, that's what the vote showed, and people gathered over 100 a night in the dead of winter in February, you know, people across the community of, you know, all different cultures and ethnic backgrounds came forward and they all talked together about what they wanted to see in that space. It wasn't a bourbon bar, I mean, it wasn't a boutique hotel, and I'm not going to say I'm against that, I'm not saying that, but I am saying that I think that even that, that would be far better had this not been presented in a, you know, ram-rotting this through again, Mayor Biss, as you've done with other proposals. And I just think this is the wrong way to do this, and I'd much rather see this go back and massaged, and whichever proposal comes forward, at least get those sort of assurances that, yes, we heard the community, we know that this has been, this is off limits to people for so long, to our, you know, working people, lower-income people, we're going to figure out a way to make sure, whether it's Celadon partnering with, maybe with Evanston Lake House and Gardens, something to make sure that we respect our community and what they said in that referendum. So I'm very concerned tonight, I'm also concerned, I have to say, because I think the public should know, you know, staff met with each of us before we'd even seen the proposals, and I felt awkward about this too, to tell us the recommendation that they wanted in, you know, private meetings, and even then I thought, well, I haven't even seen it yet, and you're persuading me to vote for this Celadon one, and again, I'm not saying I'm against it for, you know, for residents that do want to see that one. By the way, I have been inundated with emails, as we all have, against this process, very much pleading with us to ensure that this is a public space that's available to the public. But it made me uncomfortable that, that, you know, each one of us was sort of, you know, picked off and spoken with privately about why they, you know, staff was, senior management wanted this plan. I don't think it should have proceeded that way. I think we should have all, you know, like the previous ones, we should have proceeded in a much more transparent way. So all that said, I'm uncomfortable with the process. I think both plans are very exciting, but I also feel that what's being really heavily omitted is that community, community, that regular community access to this space, and I think that if we can figure out a way to let this go a little bit longer so that we can work this out, so that we come forward with a plan that respects our community, and I just want to, you know, I appreciate this letter that, I don't, was it Carlos that gave us from the NAACP that wrote back at the previous round saying, you know, we are supportive of the effort to ensure African-American and other minorities easy access and regular use of the public lakefront property. This must be a high priority as the city of Evanston and others move forward with plans for this development. Records show that residents in the fifth ward, predominantly African-American, voted overwhelmingly on the referendum in keeping of the beautiful historic lakefront mansion available for public use. The property and home have unlimited potential for serving as a public community center. So we fully anticipate that we will have a permanent presence in the mansion so that future generations will know that we strive for beloved community in the truest sense of the word. I mean, this hasn't come up, but I feel like a community space could be a beautiful shorefront location on the first floor there, that people could go in and visit and learn about the history of our African-American residents on the lakefront. I know Bennett Johnson's been very involved and can speak quite eloquently, I'm sorry he's not here this evening, about that history of our African-Americans on the lakefront. So I'm just really sorry that I feel like this is just being pushed through because someone has a lot of money, and that's great, we want to restore it, I'm all about preservation, so I'm excited about that, but we're omitting a really important part right now in this conversation, and I think if we can slow it down, that whichever, you know, way we go forward, it will be a better plan for the community if we can take a little more time. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Newsma.
First is to address the process question. This is the third time that the council is considering proposals that have come to us through an RFP process. I don't remember the exact dates, but 2018, 20, anyway, this is the third time, each of those has been, has come to us directly from, through the process, it hasn't gone to another committee first, and it's, and they've been special orders of business, so this, this is not, not really that, the way we're handling it tonight is not that different from the way we've handled the consideration we've given to RFPs in the past. One of the things that's really new this time around is this unique adaptive use zoning issue. So Cade, could you explain a little bit about how that works?
So this is true nationally, that one of the things that often leads to demolition of historic structures is how they are zoned, and that zoning being incompatible with a proper rehabilitation and adaptive use. That's most common for buildings of assembly, for churches that are zoned, single-family, for schools that are zoned, open space. It makes it very difficult to adapt them. This property is owned, open space, which is problematic because the uses are very limiting. That drove, I believe that drove a process previously that led to uses with much higher risk and much less financial viability. So what the adaptive use ordinance does is it, first, you have to demonstrate that you are doing this for the purposes of adapting or rehabilitating a historic structure. Second, it allows any combination of uses to be considered, but it goes through a very rigorous process. So in this case, where someone might just apply for a building permit and get approval, instead they get a recommendation from the preservation commission, they then get a recommendation from the land use commission, they come to planning and development committee, they come to city council, it's a very, a process that has a lot of control over it.
Right, and it's going to add some time for the, add time to the whole process, too. So in that whole process, is that, would conditions be added to the expectations, or would conditions be something that was negotiated during the lease agreement, or?
I would say that you could, you could apply conditions to that approval. There's a series of standards that they would need to be met. If you felt that those standards were only met with applied conditions, I think that would be appropriate.
Could you explain a little bit what the, some of the condition, the condition, well, for example, is it impact on the neighborhood and?
They're extremely similar to the special use standards, so they talk about impact to adjoining property owners, devaluing adjacent properties, the uses being compatible essentially.
Right, okay. So to find that the proposal was not going to have a negative impact, the discussion could be about requiring the valet parking system, for example?
Sure, for parking, or there's an example, you know, one of the concerns that I think has popped up is noise from associated uses. We included the standards, we asked for written responses to those same standards in the RFP. That's what drove some of the decision by Celadon for, you know, sound attenuation in the glazing of the windows, that type of use. So I think they're already considering those standards.
Great, okay, thank you. Well, as many people in the audience know, I've been engaged with members of Lake House and Gardens since my first year on the council back in 2016, when I chaired a new Harley-Clark Planning Committee. There have already been one or two before that. And over the years since, the group has been a consistent and visionary participant in the ever-evolving discussion about the future of this important landmark property. And there is much to admire in their proposal for its community event venue approach that reflects the input that was gathered when you had those big community meetings, I think, up in the parasol room. But that said, I really believe that the proposal from Celadon, a professional historic preservation developer with a demonstrated track record of successful rehabilitation and adaptive reuse projects, stands the greater chance of success. Celadon has received prestigious preservation awards after developing, you know, similar adaptive reuse projects. Their financing plan inspires confidence that it will actually result in a complete rehabilitation of the building and within a very reasonable timeframe. Celadon is going to enter, as we've heard tonight, into a sublease with Jen's Jensen Gardens in Evanston and provide the funding, the full funding for the restoration of the coach house, and that's going to create this lighthouse center for native habitat that's going to be a wonderful resource for the broader community. The mansion itself will be available for community gatherings on the ground floor and on the third floor. The ice cream shop for visitors to the lighthouse beach is going to be a great idea, too. It maintains public access to the lighthouse beach and to the adjacent park, which has always been a top priority for us, and it won't require any funding from the taxpayers. So there's, there's no one proposal for Harley-Clark that is going to, you know, meet everyone's expectations and wishes, but I think the Celadon proposal is the best option we have before us.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Haddikades.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Revel, for acknowledging that this process is virtually the same as we've done in the past, and also for, you know, the kind words about the Evanston Lake House group. I really appreciate everybody in the community that's been involved in this over the years, and it has been years, it's been 13 and a half years, looking at our timeline here, it was July of 2011 when whoever was on the city council back then, I don't think anybody at the dais tonight was on the council back then, when the city council directed staff to identify other possible uses. And so here we are, 13 and a half years later, and I am cautiously optimistic that we are at the end of this journey, or at least starting the last chapter. It was this council that in January of this year gave pretty clear direction to staff as to what we would be, what we would find acceptable in this round of, in this third round of proposals here. So shout out to Cade, and if you want to share the credit, please feel free to do so, but I'm going to direct it at you to say thank you for getting us to this point and opening up the possibility of the historic preservation tax credits. It's not something that we had considered before, and I think that is the key to the success that hopefully we are about to enjoy here. So thanks, Cade, and support staff as well. But it was in, in January of this year where we discussed this and we gave feedback to Cade, and based on that feedback, the RFP went out, and let me just read what the RFP says the primary goals of the city are. Number one, to rehabilitate and preserve the historic integrity of this building. Number two, to place the property back into productive use. Number three, maintain meaningful but not exclusive public access to the grounds, including programming. And number four, to create vibrant use opportunities. And then later on in the RFP, we went into a little bit more detail, and we said that we wanted to maintain meaningful public access to the grounds, the Jen's Jensen Gardens we wanted to maintain meaningful public access to the grounds, the Jensen's and grounds. We made it clear that strictly private use of the buildings would not be considered. We also said, although a mix of private sector income-producing uses and community-driven uses is preferred, solely nonprofit or community uses will also be considered so long as they can demonstrate financial viability. And then on the topic of financial viability, we said the, what we were looking for is some, somebody who could demonstrate adequate experience, capacity, and financial viability for both initial rehabilitation and ongoing operations, maintenance, and, and programming expenses. So I think Celadon is giving us exactly what we are looking for. They certainly have the strongest capital stack that we have seen in thirteen and a half years, if we maybe don't count the Pritzker proposal. I think there is a very low risk of this project failing to launch. And honestly, I was not on the council last time around. That was a concern I had as a community member at that time, that the Lake House and Gardens plan, which sounded great, was at risk of failing to launch because they were, you know, counting on raising money, which they were unable to do. I'm sorry, I misspoke, the, the bookhouse, artist bookhouse. Thank you for correcting me. And so the fact that Celadon is coming to us with a rehab budget that's almost three times higher than we've seen before, gives me the assurance that they're going to do this right, and I am in favor of moving forward with Celadon. I do want to take this opportunity to acknowledge that there is, this is the most active use, you know, that we have considered, you know, since the, the Pritzker proposal a decade ago. So I hope that in the course of negotiating the details, there will be appropriate protections in place for the neighbors and for the community members. I also want to make sure we can maintain public access to this property, and so maybe that means something like, you know, main, reserving the right to approve subleases that Celadon or their successors would offer to, to future potential partners. And, you know, the initial proposals for a 99-year lease, that's an awful long time. None of us are going to be around in 99 years. I would like to see that ideally come down to, you know, a handful of decades. I'm not sure exactly what might be reasonable, but, you know, something less than 99 years, if that's feasible.
Councilmember Herakides.
One thing that struck me when we received the proposals and I read through them was how thorough Celadon's proposal was. Going into the process, one of, so my, my personal feelings about the Harley Clark Mansion and the grounds, the thing that always made was the most special about the area was the Jensen Gardens and the outside access. I can probably count the number of times I've been inside the building on my, less than five, maybe. And to me, the most interesting thing was the landscape architecture and the grounds. And going into this process, I was concerned because often, we've seen in the past, that they're kind of competing agendas with the grounds and the building. And I was really impressed that Celadon Group was able to have an MOU and work with Charles and, and figure out what the plan was, and, you know, the, the plans for rehabilitating the coach house and, you know, having the programming there. That initially very much caught my eye and won me over. You know, just the thoroughness of their proposal, and it's always been, I think, an uphill struggle for folks to raise money to maintain and rehabilitate this, this landmark, and the Celadon Group just seems like a sure thing. So that's why it has my support, and look forward to hopefully getting people back in the building in a few years.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with a minute thirty left.
Speak for yourself about that hundred-years thing, that Tesla nanobites bots might be in our bodies allowing us to live at some point longer. But, so I, I want to understand a few things, because Councilmember Kelly raised some concerns, and to be fair, so one, how much time do I have left?
A minute and a half.
Minute and a half, okay, I'll go quick. So what is the process, Councilmember Kelly mentioned, going back and massaging this? To my understanding, that would mean just starting over with a new RFP. Am I wrong on that?
I don't think necessarily that you're wrong. I think it's, and maybe I'll lean on Corporation Council a little, but, you know, the procurement process is supposed to be objective, and that's why there's this, this removal from outside engagement. As soon as you have those kinds of influences, this becomes a purely political decision, and, and it kind of, it kind of taints the process, I think. And so that's, that's why you're more protective about the procurement process, is probably why Celadon wasn't as open with their proposal. It's, it has trade secrets in that proposal. It has a lot of information that's very sensitive to business operations. So I, I think you might be right. I don't know if that's what she's advocating for, but.
Council rugger? Or maybe first I'll ask Councilmember Kelly, is that what you're?
Yeah, I mean, I do recall it was different on the last round where presentations were made publicly, they were discussed, and then it came back and council voted on them. But, so there was more time, and it was out in the public for discussion, and for people to go back to their council members and weigh in from the presentations. So, you know, I, I know that somehow this procurement process is different, that part is different, but no, I just want to say so.
Are you, is your question being answered here?
No, I don't think so. My, my question is, when you say go back and massage this, what are you, are you saying that they'd amend their proposals?
Exactly. It would be to the, with an understanding of community interest.
Okay, that, that's helpful. So yes, going back and admitting the proposals, which my understanding is you can't do that once the RFP has been submitted. Am I wrong on that?
You are correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. So we'd have to start the RFP process over again, which, I mean, hey. You know, the first time I came to a council meeting was in 2011, and Harley Clark was being discussed, as well as the Talmadge Lights, so. What is, Jesus Christ, my handwriting. All right. Can folks, so Councilmember Kelly noted that, you know, that you enjoyed seeing students go to the Harley Clark. I've enjoyed going, not into the building, but outside the building. So with the Celadon proposal, will young folks in our community, will the black community that was brought up be able to openly go to the Harley Clark Mansion and sit there without having to buy ice cream or bourbon or whatever and enjoy the facility?
So I, I think there's kind of two aspects to this. So the grounds, I believe the majority of the grounds would be publicly accessible all the time unless there was a, a private event that was happening, a wedding that was happening on one of those spaces. The rest of your questions, I think that's the value of entering negotiations, and, and those can be part of this lease agreement, is what does that remaining bulk of time, those five days a week and within those spaces, interior next year? How do we co-create that in a way that, that fits your vision?
Yeah, to, to me, I'll, I'll agree with Councilmember Kelly that I do think it's important that the public has access to this building. Of course, it's a, you know, you're going to have private things going on there, but I do think, you know, certainly a few days a week, folks should be able to go and enjoy the building and sit there, and, yeah, so I'll add that. What is the, and I'll ask this last question, so what is missing, so in this process, and I guess this is directed to the one person who's shared concerns about that?
So what's missing is the presentations, on the public presentations, all of them, and then a lapse of time so that you can hear back from your constituents, and so that, you know, whether it's in the, it seems that, you know, if it can't be amended, a proposal, I mean, there's a lot missing from here. It's not clear even to me, really, how many weddings we're going to have, but that there'd be a lapse of time so that you could get feedback, and then you could also make, come back as a council member with due diligence, representing your constituents and residents, say, well, this and this and this either has to be in the, in the, the lease that you're drafting up, or maybe this one just isn't going to work based on what I've heard. But there's no, it's, it's brought to us, and that's it, and tonight we're going to vote, and I, I just don't think that this is respectful of our community, to our community.
That's helpful. So the one thing you think is missing is a lapse of time?
Correct.
Is that the only thing you think is missing?
I think these should have been, you know, would have been great if these had been available longer. I do, I think I credit Assistant City Manager Rugger, I think he's played a great role in trying to push more information out on this, so I appreciate that. But, but I think, yeah, that's the main piece. I would like to see.
That's helpful. So when is the next council meeting? The 21st? Can someone, 20th? Is there any reason, I mean, this is a special order of business. I've advocated in the past that we add a section of our agenda that's just new business so that doesn't have these special orders of business rules where it can't be held or table, or it could be table, but it can't be held. Is there any harm if we were to make this process perfect according to Councilmember Kelly and give a lapse in time? Is, is there any harm to us holding, tabling this for, until the 28th? I think we know where the council stands on this, but if we want to give community time for feedback, whoever can answer the question? I would ask the folks who proposed it directly, but I guess there's a wall.
I would just say that it's up to you. I mean, the proposals were made publicly accessible and available, and we have been talking about this process for about a year and a half. I imagine all of you have received pretty considerable feedback. I would be surprised if that feedback changed, but ultimately, that's your decision as a It's a good clarifying point, and it goes back to something I said previously, is there are many future opportunities for people to weigh in on this, both with the lease agreement itself and the entitlement process. There's a lot of opportunities to, to get feedback on this.
Thank you for that. Well, I'll just remind my colleague from North Evanston that you have the power to make a motion. Thank you.
At this time, the only person who's requesting to speak has gone well beyond their time, so I'd ask you to be cognizant of that and how you form your comments. Councilmember Kelly?
Okay, so one, I just wonder, so how many weddings, you're talking two weddings a week throughout the year, year-round? Is that right?
I believe it says one to two in the proposal.
So it'll probably be two based on that cost, I'm just guessing.
Max two.
So it'll be max two, so that means every weekend throughout the summer, when people aren't working, they want to go to the beach with their kids in the summer, that place is going to be wetted out, I'm going to guess.
I actually, I'm not sure, I don't think the intention is for that to spill outside of the volume of the building, except on very, except on very unique occasions where they're saying they're going to use this tented structure, which can be removed within 24 hours, is what they're looking at now.
So the tented structure would be up, though, probably every weekend in the back, so that would not be accessible.
I don't think that's true. I, I think it's, I don't think that it's up for every single wedding. I'm not sure that that's the intent, is that? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So it's only, it's only for much larger weddings that I don't think they anticipate happening with, with the kind of frequency.
Okay, so the tent will only be up on rare occasions, is that? I mean, I'm just trying to imagine what the grounds are going to be like for, again, the main thing is what are we getting out of this? We're giving this kind of rent-free, right, this place, and we can all say that's great, they're going to do it, but this is our building, so what are we going to get from it? That's the piece that's missing for me, and I think for many people, like, what are we going to exchange? It's rent-free, basically, or whatever it is. But beside, you know, restoring this building, the, the taxes that this, they would generate, they would generate anywhere. So I don't, I just, we have to know what we're getting as a public and as a community back from this, and it's not really clear. Right now, it sounds like there's going to be a lot of weddings, at least every week, and at least a couple, at least two, well, two for sure, it seems like, to meet that kind of investment. I just, I'm concerned that we are really getting a realistic idea as to what we are really, what's going to be happening in that neighborhood, and what that's going to mean for the community in terms of even access.
Is that a, is that a question for me?
I guess that's a question.
Okay, sure. Yeah, happy to answer it. I think there are some things that are very tangible benefits in the RFP that, that are known. One is rehabilitating the building. That's something that we have not achieved. The longer we don't achieve that, the higher the risk of that building being demolished. And I believe that strongly. The other thing is there are revenues that are generated from that, and they are significant. And then, to answer your other question, some of these nuanced portions about what you're getting back in terms of the public access, that's the opportunity in the lease negotiations to spell that out. What does that look like?
Okay, so how does that process look then? I mean, for, to, to ensure that sort of public access, or to make sure that's included in the lease, like where, how does that work? Just from like emailing back and forth to staff, or are we going to have another discussion about this before you bring us a lease? I mean, how, that's what I mean. I think we need one more session so that we can properly ensure that whatever lease, if we want to move forward with this, I mean, I don't, otherwise, you're going to draft a lease and bring it back to us, and then we're going to react to it, and... And also, I mean, the $29 million investment, that's not what's needed to provide community access. That's what's needed to make a fancy boutique hotel. So let's be clear on that, too. I mean, that's a lot of money to invest, three or four elevators. We don't need that for community access and to restore this building, so.
And then I did just want to follow up on your question about kind of the process. So the lease negotiations will happen, that'll travel back to city council, and you'll be able to make motions to modify what the, what that looks like, if, if you're not seeing that it meets your expectations.
So should we, in the interim, are we supposed to, I mean, like, we want to make sure that there's regular, I think we've heard, can we vote on that, that we have regular access, like, that the public can access it year-round? I mean, is that something that you all should know, know, that we want in there, or is that something that we have a majority support for that, or we, do we not care if the public is just kind of off-limits, except if you want to go buy something?
Let me just weigh in here for a second. Maybe your experience is different. I've never found it difficult to share my opinion with a city manager when he's making determinations about how to exercise his judgment. And so if this were to pass, that would trigger a negotiation process. Luke is not going to be in a underground bunker incommunicado for three months during that negotiation process. He'll be available to all of us. There's, there's a, it seems like there's an effort being made here to kind of fabricate the idea that there is an inadequacy of opportunity for input. There's in fact, an abundance of opportunity for input, and if there's any specific aspect of the lease negotiation that's of importance to folks up here, they should communicate that with Luke, and he'll internalize the sense of counsel he gets in his execution of his responsibilities, like he does all the time.
That's exactly what I asked, Daniel. I said, should we communicate back and forth? That was my question. I said, should we just write back and forth our, what we'd like to see in it? So there's no, no, it's not at all what you suggested. That was the first thing I, I asked.
There's still no one requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Revelle with a minute left.
Well, I would assume that the starting point for the lease negotiations are looking at what's in the proposal from Celadon, and it's very, if you look at this, there's a chart in the, in the proposal, and it talks about community activities four to five days a week. So I mean, there, I would be totally surprised if the lease came back to us and it didn't provide firmly for public access to, to the building on a, on a consistent basis.
I just don't see it in the proposal anywhere, so.
It's right, it's right there.
Describe it. I mean, we have, there's not a public space for regular public access.
There's, there's going to, there's going to be, when there's not a, a wedding or something, there's going to be space on the ground floor and space on the third floor for, for public gatherings, for, you know, those kinds of activities.
But there will be weekend, weddings every weekend, I'm just...
Well, there will be frequently weddings, yes, but no, no more than one or two a week.
Now to Councilmember Herakides with three minutes left. Now to Councilmember Hadda Katis with three minutes left.
I have a question for Cade, again. Could you share again what the expected revenues from the, from operation, the hotel operation and the potential, you said potential property tax was about $100,000?
Oh, we looked, so we looked at, we looked at comparable sizes of similar operations in Cook County. I don't have that list off the top of my head. What the, the median number was somewhere around $150,000. I'm, I'm not certain in that number at all, and I don't want you to think that that number is certain. And a lot of that is not up to us. That's up to the assessor's office to determine what the appropriate tax would be. The rest of the tax revenue that I was discussing is hotel tax, liquor tax, sales tax, and that projection. There were projections, and Paul's not here, that Economic Development put together, but I know that Celadon budgeted somewhere around $1 million for that.
Okay, so I just want people listening that we have a potential million-dollar windfall per year from a boutique hotel that we also will hopefully get four to five days, probably five days a week, of public access. And then, and we still have access to the grounds, like, this is something, like, I feel like this is a win-win situation. We're having our cake and we're eating it, too, right? So...
Wedding cake.
Wedding cake, yeah. So let's leave it at that.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron? Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Katis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the city manager is authorized to negotiate a lease agreement. And we will presumably hear back at a later time about the progress in that direction. This brings us to the consent agenda. We already remove item HS1 from the consent agenda because it was passed previously this evening. Are there other items that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
No. I moved the consent agenda minus HS1.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, but, yes. I mean, I'm not surprised if that's the outcome, but I want to give everyone the chance to just take a beat. Bless you.
There's a bunch that we have to unanimously approve, anyway.
All right, Councilmember Reed moves adoption of the consent agenda with the exception of item HS1. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron? Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Katis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is adopted. This brings us now to call of the wards. Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Special neighborhood meeting for residents nearby Gray Park and Albany Care tomorrow night. It's a Google meeting at 7:30. Email me if you want to be on that list. And then, fourth ward meeting is going to be Wednesday this week, 7 o'clock at Robert Crown. Featured guests will be our two new deputy city managers, Steve Ruger and Karina Sanchez.
Councilmember Saffron? Councilmember Revelle?
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
Eighth ward, fifth ward, and second ward budget meeting will happen November 6th. We'll also have our eighth ward meeting, instead of on the last Thursday of this month, it will be on the last Wednesday of this month, which is the 24th, I think, whatever the last Wednesday is of this month. And we will have Rob Beatty to discuss pickleball courts. We'll have Katie Bowden and the folks from the Economic Development Team to discuss the Callan Plaza. And we will also have other folks that will go out in the newsletter, so thank you.
Councilmember Hadda Katis?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Kelly?
No report.
Seeing nothing further on our agenda, the October 14th meeting of the city council stands adjourned.